Just give it a minute or two to let everyone come in from the waiting room. As a reminder, please mute yourself as you are admitted. Good afternoon, this is the hearing before the Cannabis Board for the City of Boston. Today is Thursday, November 12. As a reminder, today's hearing is being conducted pursuant to certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law that have temporarily been amended. This is what allows us to meet virtually. This hearing is being recorded and we posted to the City of Boston's website. Before we discuss some procedural matters, I will introduce Chairwoman Kathleen Joyce.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathleen Joyce, I'm Chair of the Licensing Board, and today I'm pleased to be joined by my fellow Commissioners Darlene Lombos, John Smith, Lisa Holmes, and Alejandra St. Jean. We have each been appointed by Mayor Walsh and charged with helping to advance equity, diversity, and opportunity in this cannabis industry. The mayor has demonstrated through these appointments that he's committed to setting a new national standard for equity in the cannabis industry. I just want to take a few minutes at the beginning of the hearing to remind everyone why the Boston Cannabis Board was put into place. We are a creation of an ordinance, a city council ordinance, and we have been appointed on March 4th, 2020 by the Executive Order. We're charged with making sure our actions match our values. We support equity, diversity, and local ownership in this new industry. The BCB aims to issue licenses in a way that ensures equity both in the distribution and among the qualified applicants, as well as to ensure that licenses are equitably cited throughout the city. We're committed to providing a clear, predictable, and transparent process for businesses seeking a license. The city's taking proactive steps to ensure equity in this industry. It's not just equity and diversity to whom these licenses are being issued, but equity and diversity in the geographic distribution throughout the city of Boston. These are two very important and distinct things. Other cities have encountered serious equity problems in both where the businesses are located and who owns them and profits from them. Boston is requiring all applicants to demonstrate how they prioritize diversity-inclusion in their operating plans. And that brings me to what I want to emphasize today. The Boston Cannabis Board reviews these applications and we score them and we evaluate them according to different criteria. Now I want to remind everyone today, that criteria is diversity-inclusion. That is 25% of the application. Your employment plan is 20% of the application. Community feedback and public support is very important. That is 20% of the application. It is not the entire application. Location, safety, and security is 20% of the application. Your parking and transportation plan is 15% of the application. The Boston Cannabis Board Commissioners, we evaluate each application according to those five criteria. Leslie, that's all I want to talk about at the top of the meeting, and back to you.
Thank you.
Before we begin, as a reminder, each application is reviewed and evaluated based on its individual merits. Applications are not compared to other applications in the same neighborhood. If the Board is considering an applicant with a buffer zone conflict, pursuant to the Board's rules and regulations, the Board applies a stricter scrutiny in evaluating whether that application is an appropriate time, place, and manner. Each presentation today will be given 10 minutes to present. You will be given a notification at the five-minute mark and the eight-minute mark by Project Manager Jasmine Nguyen, and you will be stopped at the 10-minute time limit. There will be no exceptions made. Testimony that will be accepted today will be testimony regarding the merits of each individual application. The Board will not accept testimony about other applications, pending applications, or the safety of cannabis as a substance. Cannabis has been legalized, and that is not something that we're going to be discussing today. Testimony will be limited to two minutes, and you will be muted if you go over the two-minute mark. Again, please limit your testimony to the specific application at hand. We have received a number of emails from individuals wishing to testify. We're currently going through those emails, but would encourage you to utilize the chat function when the particular application you wish to testify is called. In the chat function, please state your name, address, and affiliation, if any, and you will be called in the order you place that information in the chat. Again, please wait until we have called the specific application that you wish to testify regarding.
Leslie, I just want to jump in and remind everyone that the record remains open until next week. Is it next Wednesday at 5:00?
The record will be correct. The record will remain open until Tuesday of next week. We're going to be voting on Wednesday at 5:00 PM, and we'll continue to accept written testimony up to that point. If you're providing testimony that you feel is duplicative of previously provided testimony, please respect everyone's time and state as much so we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to testify. And with that, we will begin with the first item. Calling Evoque Inc., proposed license premise address is 1102 Blue Hill Avenue, Dorchester. The license type is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of the initial application was May 22nd, 2019. The date of the filing within the Inspection Services Department was March 15th, 2019. The date of the community meeting was June 27th, 2019. The presentation team includes Cleon M. Byron, Devonte Davis, Sandy Heierbacker, Michael Ross, and Daniel Glessman. Is the applicant present?
They are. Hello, Attorney Hawkins and members of the Board and Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Cleon Byron to start the presentation.
Thank you. Hello, everyone, and I'm so happy to be here. My name is Cleon Byron. I'm a native Bostonian. Next slide, please. My name is Cleon Byron. I'm a native Bostonian. I'm from the community where my proposed dispensary will be, in fact, is of, my family owns the building and they've owned it for many years. I'm a local entrepreneur, I'm a community networker, and for the past 22 years I've ran CMB Transportation Service, which transports children in Mattapan, Dorchester, Roxbury, and High Park. My family and I are woven into the community and city. My father, uncle, and aunt and others founded events that we all love, like the Caribbean Carnival, and some that we would like to bring back, like the Boston Jamboree. My mom is an amazing small business owner and has been employing people of color in the community for over 35 years. I hold 56% ownership in Evoque Inc., which is an independent entity, unaffiliated with any national or regional cannabis companies. Next slide, please. Now I'd like to introduce the rest of my leadership team. First, I'll start off with Devonte Davis, also a native Bostonian. He is our supply chain manager. He served honorably in the US Marine Corps, where he was entrusted to watching over millions of dollars' worth of weaponry. Devonte has experience in sales, marketing, cultivation, brand building, experience in the cannabis industry. Next, we have Sandy Heierbacker, Chief Operation Officer, who's founded and ran a national nonprofit network for thousands of community change agents for 16 years. She has extensive experience in communications, organization development, community engagement, and project management, and has a master's in international management. Next slide, please. In addition to our leadership team, other staff members, we have assembled a stellar group of advisors with expertise in the cannabis industry, architecture, security, and the law. Next slide, please, and I'm going to pass it off to Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you, Cleon. Hi, everybody. Evoque's core purpose is to strengthen the community. Our company's ownership is over 70% local and over 85% people of color. The company and each of its owners are dedicated to community empowerment and economic justice. Next slide, please. As a social equity company, our positive community impact and diversity plans are at the cornerstone of our mission. Next slide. The rest of our presentation follows the BCB's scoring criteria. So I'm handling the first two components. Devonte will tackle the next two, and Cleon will round us out again with the parking and transportation and a personal statement. Next slide. So first, our diversity and inclusion plan. Next slide. Evoque is fully committed to building a diverse, inclusive, and equitable company and helping people in our community who've been impacted by the war on drugs. Just like the work the BCB is doing with its social equity program, our DNI plan is particularly concerned with lifting up those who were incarcerated due to marijuana charges, so they don't get locked out of the cannabis industry as recreational marijuana is being decriminalized in more and more states. Our diversity and inclusion plan currently focuses on two primary programs, and we hope to build out beyond these programs in the future. For our first program, we plan to collaborate with Drive Boston and other organizations to market, to engage, and train formerly incarcerated citizens in opportunities at Evoque and across the cannabis industry. Next slide, please. For our second program, we plan to partner with community-based initiatives to enhance civic and economic empowerment in the local community. One example of this is to partner with groups like the Fairmont Innovation Lab that are already working to increase community members' entrepreneurial capacity. Note that we felt that it was important to support and partner with some of the great organizations that are already working hard to improve the community rather than just creating new entities and programs. Next slide, please. Next, a little about our employment plan. Next slide. We plan to match or exceed, hopefully exceed, Boston's demographics for racial and ethnic diversity. We also plan to hire a minimum of 50% women, have 75% of our new hires be Boston residents, ensure that at least 25% of our contractors are minority-owned and woman-owned. Next slide. We are committed to offering living wages.
Five-minute warning.
Five-minute, okay. We're committed to offering living wages to Evoque employees, starting at $16.50 an hour and going up from there. For our full-time employees, we plan to provide all the benefits that good jobs offer, such as paid time off, medical dental vision, and retirement benefits, and new hire orientation and annual training and compliance with all state requirements, of course. So next slide, and I will turn things over to Devonte Davis.
Thank you, Sandy. As local residents, it is our top priority. We have the support of the community we are looking to do business in. It is our plan to become a member of this community and see it grow and thrive. We ensure that we met not only with the butters, but local residents and businesses as well. We've gained over 90-plus letters of support from residents, over 21 letters of support from area businesses. We have a vote of support from the Blue Hill Ave Association. We have also gained a letter of non-opposition from the District City Councilor Andrew Campbell. Our mission just doesn't end here, as we plan on continuing to communicate with anyone who may have any concerns. Next slide. Our proposed location is 1102 Blue Hill Avenue, right next to Family Hardware. Our sales floor is approximately 2,000 square feet. Our hours are 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We do want to provide a relaxed, friendly environment that represents the community we are in. We are in compliance with all buffer zone requirements as well. Next slide, please. This is just an example of how the storefront will look from the sidewalk. Next slide. Now we discuss our security and how we plan on keeping the community safe as well. Next slide. Our success as a cannabis dispensary is a direct reflection of our commitment to the surrounding community. We will ensure that our staff has the best training to implement all safety protocols developed internally and through our security partners, Kroll. We require all of our customers to fill out and abide by our community stewardship agreement, which will ensure that our customers understand how to consume, transport, and store their products and behaviors that will not be tolerated onsite or in the community. Any person, a person is found to have violated this agreement in any way will face consequences and a possible ban from our establishment. Next slide. Next slide, please, it's a duplicate. Now, as a Boston native and who also has family and friends in the community who do have small children, I want to ensure that they are safe as well. Now, we will have a security guard at the door who will check IDs to ensure that anyone entering our establishment is 21-plus or over. There will also be another security guard who will ensure that there are no handoffs to those who are underage, no double parking in the street, and no smoking or loitering outside the establishment and neighboring businesses.
Two-minute warning.
We also have an internal garage, which allows us to securely transfer our product. The garage doors closes, also adding a level of security, and we can transport cash more effectively. Next slide. Now I'll give it back to Cleon for parking and transportation.
Thank you. A little bit about parking and transportation. Next slide, please. We know traffic is a big concern, so we engaged Fussing O'Neill, a top engineering company, to do the traffic study for us. We can accommodate 16 parking spaces onsite, and immediately behind, we have immediately behind a location. Combined with our close proximity to public transportation and our policies to incentivize employees to use public transportation, contribute to them determining that Evoque's impact on local transportation and traffic will be minimal. Next slide, please. As you can see from the slide, the retail location is accessible to multiple MBTA buses and stops 15 minutes away from the Morton Street Commuter Rail. Next slide, please. I've covered most of what's on this slide, but we can see from the image approximately the size of the parking area in the bottom right. Next slide, please. I became a part of the Boston Social Equity Program, so I might be a catalyst for change in our community that I love. Social equity, equal economic opportunity are not really not norm in our neighborhoods, but I hope to bring them back with Evoque and contribute to that change. I, my partners, and team are thrilled to have this opportunity. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now take questions, beginning with the Chairwoman. After questions, we will move to public testimony. And after public testimony, if the Chairwoman or the Commissioners have any additional questions, we will return. As a reminder, please mute yourselves. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. The Board memo states that the lowest paid rate employee will be $16.50 per hour. How many full-time employees do you expect to have at this location?
This is Mike Ross. I believe the number is around 15. It is, if anyone else is on the call, I'm thinking it's around 12 to 15 at this location. It's not a very large site. It's only a couple thousand square feet.
So those employees will be getting the $16.50 an hour? I'm just trying to get a breakdown of.
Yeah, understood.
They're higher-paid employees. It says that's the lowest rate?
That's right. $16.50 is the minimum.
So like, are there managers that are getting full-time salaries? I'm just curious.
Yeah. Do you want to hit that? I guess our CEO would be the most appropriate person to hit that, Sandy.
Yeah, so that is the plan, that, you know, it started at $16.50, and people working the floor would get that amount to start, and it would go, it would increase over time for them. You know, manager of the store would probably get close to $100,000, and people would be in between, depending on their roles. Yeah.
So the 12 to 15 would be like the people working the floor of the store at $15 an hour, and then managers above that?
That's right.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now, Leslie.
Thank you. Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. I just had a quick question about the site. Is it, you own the site, Mr. Byron?
His family owns the site.
Oh, the family owns the site, and it's paid for.
He would enter into a lease. I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in here.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. He would enter into a lease directly with his family for this site.
Okay.
And we have a lease.
Hi, Rose. You won't be able to see me because I'm on a different computer. Yesterday, I was on the left.
I'm sorry, was that a member of the team?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you.
Lombos, will you open your audio? All right, we'll return to Commissioner Lombos. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Just briefly, have you thought of or contracted with any persons on your transportation of your finances, of your money? Have you? Or what is your plan?
Yeah, our security advisor is Dan Liski from Kroll, but Devonte, who's going to be the onsite operations and security person, will be making those decisions. Devonte, do you care to comment on that?
According to our security plan with Kroll, we plan on contracting with armored vehicles so that we can properly transfer cash. We do have an internal bay, which has a closing door, which allows us to transfer our product and everything securely. But as far as cash transactions, we're looking to contract with the armored truck company.
Can you tell me where is the internal bay located in proximity to the front of the business?
You could probably get, if we could pull up the presentation for you. Sorry, it's a little bit of a crude drawing. We did submit the plan in your packet, but it might be worth, Leslie, pulling up the floor plan. It's in the rear of the building. It's accessible and exclusive to the dispensary. There are businesses on either side of the dispensary. There's a hardware store on the right, and I believe there's a vacant, either nail salon or restaurant to the left of us. That other site was pretty good, actually, believe it or not. The board, if you go forward three, I think, one more, one more, sorry. Two, three, two more, one more. Here it is. Sorry about that. Back up if you could. So there it is. Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner, if you see on the rear of the building, there it is. That's the 16-car parking.
Right, okay, I see.
And the L, the L that is formed there is the garage itself, with the garage door facing the rear street.
Okay.
You'll enter off that side street, Ansel Road, which is a two-way street. You know, there's a curb cut.
Okay.
And then you'll be in a secured perimeter area along that rear. It'll be fenced, it'll be appropriately screened and buffered, and you'll be able to enter the garage itself from there along that L. And then it will, it will be blocked off to any other operator and only be accessible to the dispensary. And if you pull up the plans that we submitted, you will see a better version of that. I'm sorry, we didn't exclude it.
That was my question. So that parking area, that hole where we see the cars in the L, that is only going to be accessible by you guys? Like, the hardware store is not going to be using that or the hair salon? Is that area just you?
That is just us. The hardware store does have a side exit and entrance, and there may still be rear entrances to that lot with the hardware store. But, you know, so there could be access to the parking. But in terms of the, even though the parking is exclusively for the dispensary, in terms of the access to the garage, that will be solely dedicated and exclusively available to the dispensary.
Okay.
As will the parking, but you won't be able to get anywhere else except the dispensary.
Drive-in day, right? They drive in and like a gate comes down in that elevator? Okay, cool. That's what I was, that's what I was interested in wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Was that for you, Sue, that just came on?
You should not unmute yourself unless you are presenting or have been called to testify. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, good afternoon. So a couple of things. One is, how are you planning on incentivizing folks to take public transportation? You talked about incentivizing people to do that. And the second part is, a little bit on the plan, you talked about diversity-inclusion plan program, hey, establishing and rolling out the Community Grow Program. Can you talk about how you're going to build and scale that up?
Sandy? I believe Sandy will handle that question. Say again? Sandy, are you prepared to answer that question? You're muted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the answers. What was the first question again? That one I don't.
And you talked about incentivizing folks to take public transportation. So I was wondering, what are the incentives you're going to give? And on the Community Grow Program, which you had in your diversity-inclusion plan, you said, I was asking about how are you going to build that? What are the elements of building and scaling?
I can answer that. I actually partnered with some farming, you know, local farming places, and I'm actually on a board of, one of them now, I just don't really want to name it, you know. But I'm a part of that. We are in negotiation of, you know, trying to get local people involved in growing, growing their own food, and in the process, and also having classes that's out there. The second with incentivizing people.
And sorry. So it's targeted to a certain population of people that you're going to get involved in that?
Yeah. It's, well, it's local. So it's targeting people in Mattapan, Dorchester, Roxbury area. As you know, a lot of those urban farms are popping up all over the place, and they're all.
You're seeking out returning citizens, right? So is that to target returning citizens?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we want to actively engage at least 100 returning citizens and educate them and connect them with opportunities within the cannabis industry.
Over the course of, over the course of the slide.
Hopefully, in our first year of, after opening up.
100.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of the employee benefits, we would be providing certain subsidies for MBTA passes. I'm not sure if it's 80% or 100%. You know, blue bike rentals. I mean, the goal here is, I mean, Cleon is from this community. He grew up, he lives a block or so away from it, grew up in this community. The goal is to have our employees walk within blocks from this community, this neighborhood, and to work here. That's where their strongest base of friends and supporters have been. Cleon is someone who has been arrested previously for minor drug crimes. He has people who are in that same boat. I think his plan is to bring people from this community and get them working directly here. So we hope most of our people will be walking to the facility.
Right. And how about the customers? Are you incentivizing them? It says you incentivize employees and customers.
Yeah, yeah, fair question. I mean, we happen to have 16 parking spaces. Very rare for any of these applicants. And we're right on a bus stop. I don't know yet if there are direct incentives that we can provide to people if they arrive by transit. I think it's a good question, and I think it might be a good model. But in terms of that, I don't think we've developed that far out. I don't know if Cleon or anyone from the team has more to add to that.
Well, you know, we were playing around with different ideas, and if, you know, you come on public transportation, you know, you could maybe become, cut in front of the line. If you come in your car, you know, you're just going to have to wait a little bit. So those are little, small things where we can, you know, incentivize people to, you know, come on public transportation because, you know, they might not have to wait. Or like Michael said, we have to wait until, you know, we got more clarity about things we can offer or discounts and stuff like that.
Just one last thing on that. I'm sorry.
Can I just jump in? The Board memo actually says you do plan on incentivizing customers and employees to taking public transportation. I really, really suggest you don't put things in your materials to the Board unless you have a plan for those, because we're reading this as if this is what you're doing. And if we had. Because we're reading this as if this is what you're doing. And if we had asked this question, I would have assumed that this was already well thought out. And this seems like it's not well thought out at all. So back to the transportation, how far are you from these bus stops you're talking about? Because you're three miles from the train stations and you added in the materials that you will incentivize employees and customers to take them. But no one here seems to know what that really means.
We can supplement the record with a more full explanation.
Yeah. We shouldn't be putting statements like this that aren't, you don't have a plan for, because it's, it's misleading me right now.
Okay.
How, how close are you to these bus stops you're talking about?
Yeah. So I mean, I think all that information will, can be provided to you. We have provided other information other than this presentation, and it might in fact even be in there. Let us just get that to you.
We have an obligation, we have an obligation to score these applications, and we're being held to it. So I expect the applicants to submit information that provides us with the ability to score these properly and not just aspirational and, and, you know, ideas. We need some more information on that.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. We did.
For that to appear in the board memo that you plan on incentivizing people using public transportation, someone on your team should have been aware of that. I don't know where that came from.
Yeah, I mean, ma'am chair, I don't think there's any effort here to mislead or.
Oh, I don't either. I don't either. But I think we need, we need concrete information. We have a lot of stuff coming at us. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to analyze this based on the information that, the questions we got. So supplement it, you have till next Wednesday, but we're going to move on. But that is a flag for me because it's stated here and no one seems to know about it.
Ma'am Chair, Fussin' O'Neill is a respected engineer firm that was contracted as was, you know, by this applicant. And a report was provided by Fussin' O'Neill in materials leading up to this hearing. And I assure you that if any of these representations were made for this presentation, they were intended to be high level to hit within the 10 marks.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying this seemed like a really cool and different thing from any other applicant we have seen, but no one on the team could really speak to it. So I just think you should think it through and supplement it. I'm not, I'm not judging it. I just, it stood out, obviously. And I wanted to hear more about it, but no one seems to know about it. So I'm just cautioning people to, if you put something in the submission to the board to be able to speak a little bit more about it. Think it through, get us some more information, but I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, did you have any other questions for the applicant?
No, I'll say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And returning to Commissioner Longos, is Commissioner, I know she was having a technological issue. If Commissioner Longos has any follow-up questions, we will reach out to the applicant. Before we return to, before we turn to public testimony, I apologize, I'm going to ask Attorney Chayla White to testify regarding her equity certification. Attorney White?
Good afternoon, everyone. I was able to certify Evoque as eligible for the Boston Equity Program through the documentation provided by Mr. Byron. Mr. Byron met four of the six criteria listed in the, in the ordinance. Mr. Byron has, has resided in an area of disproportionate impact since, from 2011 through 2019. He did provide a proof of residency certificate from the Boston Elections Department, which substantiated that he has lived in an area of disproportionate impact for those years. Additionally, Mr. Byron submitted a court report which stated that he did have a, an arrest and was charged with possession to distribute a class D substance, which is marijuana. Again, he is a person who has lived in the city of Boston for, for seven years. And Mr. Byron has self-identified as being black.
You, Attorney, about the certification process? Do the chairwoman or any commissioners have questions regarding the certification? Seeing none, we will turn to public testimony. Again, testimony will be limited to two minutes. You will be muted at the two-minute mark. Testimony will also be limited to the specific application at hand. We will begin with elected officials or their representatives. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify who is either an elected official or their representative?
Whitney Celestin here from Neighborhood Services.
Go ahead, Whitney.
Hi, everyone. Whitney Celestin here from Neighborhood Services. We held in a butters meeting for this applicant on June 18th of 2019 at the Mattapan Public Library. At this time, we have no questions or concerns. We would like to go on to record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or representatives of elected officials who wish to testify? Seeing none, we will turn to the individuals who requested to testify in the chat. When I call your name, if you have not provided your full name, please state it for the record. Please also state your address and affiliation if. And again, please mute yourselves if you are not being called.
Calling Dr. Shalera Armstrong in framework. Yes, I am unmuted. I don't know if you can see me.
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Dr. Shalera Armstrong. I am testifying in favor of Evoque. My address is 582 Washington Street in Dorchester. Along with the health benefits of marijuana for the purchase of medicine, I also can appreciate the fact that this company is trying to bring this into a community that's underserved in so many aspects. But I also want to testify in favor of Cleon Byron and his family. They have been part of the community, employing people in the community for, for generations now. And I hope to see them continue doing that same thing with this venture. That's what I'd say. Thank you.
Calling Matt Farrell. Is Matt present?
This is Matt Farrell from UFCW Local 1445. Address is 30 Sturgis Way in Dedham, Massachusetts. I had a question for the board. Whether or not, with the condition of your licensing, are you willing to enter into a labor peace agreement with the UFCW?
Mr. Farrell, that is not a question for the board. The board applies the criteria in the ordinance as written. So that, that's not an appropriate question for the board. If you would like to testify regarding this applicant, please go ahead. Mr. Farrell?
We can move on.
We'll move on. Is Desiree Franjul present?
Hi. Thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners, for reviewing this applicant today. I, although I live in Roxbury, my mother has owned a house across the street from this proposal for 20 years. She supports this proposal. She'll be writing in her testimony to the board regarding it. But as a witness to this, being in this neighborhood, my family being in this neighborhood for 20 years, we're definitely a witness to Cleon's family's commitment to the neighborhood. And we would love to see his family stay within this location. And I support him as a social equity applicant. And I know him personally. We have discussed a lot of community outreach, our experiences, and I hope that they are approved. Thank you. Oh, my mother lives on Eight Handsboro Street, Dorchester. She's right across the street from the proposal.
Thank you very much. Calling Tito Jackson. Is Mr. Jackson present?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much to the August Board here. I just wanted to testify on behalf of Cleon. I've gotten to know him over the past several years in this capacity, but have known him for years. He obviously, to me, is really a model of what we're really trying to do here. He has, has some things on his record, but I think he shows all of us that your current condition is not your final conclusion. And you have an opportunity to take things to the next level. And I think he really embodies what we need to see in the space. And if we can't get folks who have been a little bit early to this industry into business, you know, then who are, are we helping? So I just want to give props to Cleon, thank him for the work as well as the team. And also give props to one of the very few families that actually own commercial real estate in the black community in this, in the city of Boston and having them have an opportunity to gain wealth. So thank you so much, and I emphatically support.
Thank you very much. Calling Eric Lawrence. Is Mr. Lawrence present? Do not see Mr. Lawrence. Seeing no more individuals in the chat, is there anyone who?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I forgot to unmute. My name is Eric. I currently live in Roxbury. Prior to living in Roxbury, I lived a couple of blocks away from this proposed location. I do want to state that I am in support of it. I do know Devonte Davis is a stand-up person. This industry needs more diversity. It needs more equity. This industry, as everybody here knows, just eclipse a billion dollars in sales. Little of that, those funds have come back to support, correct, and repair the community. The community has been devastated by this plant previously through disproportionate incarceration. And we need healing. We need equity. And I do approve and stand behind these gentlemen in their attempt to get a license.
Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify regarding this proposal? Seeing no one, Chairwoman Joyce, do you? I'm sorry, please state your name.
Hello, hi, my name is Levon Matthew.
Go ahead, please.
I live at 150 Wellington Hill Street in Mattapan. I am in favor. My family has been providing early childcare services to the reason of Boston between Dorchester, Mattapan, Roxbury for over 30 years. The site, if it's open, will be near one of our childcare centers. I am in favor. It would not disrupt the protocols that we have around the childcare center. The children are safe now and will continue to be safe. Parent and pickup drop off would be directly in front of the building. So there won't be no interference with the side or the back of the building entrance. Mr. Byron's family has been providing to the community for over 30 years. As I said, as far as rental spaces, residential, rental, childcare services, and other resources that we provide to the community, and I am in favor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify regarding this applicant? As a reminder, written testimony will be accepted until Tuesday at 5:00 PM of this coming week. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
I'm just looking forward to working with you to supplement the transportation plan. So we have a little more clarity about exactly what you're intending.
Absolutely.
Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any follow-up questions?
I have a question. Well, I was wondering in terms of Commissioner Longos's question, is there a way that we can get it from her if she's having technical difficulties?
Absolutely. I will follow up with Commissioner Longos on any questions on any application she has while she's unable to connect and will direct those to the applicant.
Thanks so much.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any follow-up questions?
No, I don't. I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
No, I do not. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Commissioner Longos, I believe, is still attempting to connect, but again, we'll follow up directly with her. Thank you. The board will take all of this under advisement.
Thank you.
Calling Cypress Tree Management, Inc. The proposed license premise is 1114 Boylston Street. This is an application for retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of the initial application is July 25th, 2018. The date of filing with the Inspectional Services Department is February 28th, 2019. The date of the community meeting is April 29th, 2019. The presentation team consists of Victor Chieng, Carlos Castillo, Todd Finnard, Eric Liebman, Lisa Burke, Rick Nagel, Josh Zachman, and Jay Ules. Is the applicant present?
We are.
We are.
Right. And if you will just give me one moment, and I will pull up your presentation. As a reminder, you will be given 10 minutes. Jasmine Nguyen with our office will give you a verbal alert at the five-minute mark and the eight-minute mark. You can feel free to begin while I pull up your presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Carlos Castillo. I'm a proud Boston resident and co-founder of Cypress Tree Management, known as Ready. I'm here with co-founders Victor Chang, Todd Finnard, Eric Liebman, as well as several of our senior staff. Slide three, please.
Give me one moment. I'm having a little bit of difficulty with your presentation. All right, please go ahead.
Our team is the only majority-minority owned applicant in the Back Bay Fenway neighborhood that is 100% locally owned. Half of our co-founders are people of color. 67% of our senior executives are minorities and women. And more than 10% of our team is LGBTQ plus. Slide four, please. We have founded and owned companies right here in Boston for more than 25 years. From Eric Longton, Boloco in 1996, on the same block, to Todd Renai's headquarters of Pernod Properties on Wilson Street, to my own liquor stores in Roxbury that were recently recognized as Business of the Year by Mayor Walsh in 2018. Our team is authentic, local, and experienced, and we are best positioned to support the city's goal of ensuring that licenses are granted with respect to equity, quality, and community safety. Slide 10, please.
Thank you, Carlos. Located at 1114 Boylston Street, better known today as Little Steve's Pizza Shop. The site represents the intersection of the Fenway and Back Bay neighborhoods at a truly public transit-oriented location with six MBTA stops, 15 MBTA bus stops, 13 blue bike stations, and countless public garages. We are proposing 7,800 square feet of retail across three floors, with the first floor with more than 1,500 square feet dedicated primarily to indoor queuing. This means absolutely no queuing will occur outside of the store itself. Slide 13, please. As operators, we have a proven track record right here in this neighborhood of being good, community-focused corporate citizens. From Boloco's long history to Todd's support of Back Bay Association, we know and care about these city blocks. Over, over our two community meetings, we heard our neighbors worry about whether this project would increase public consumption. In response, Cypress Tree Fenway became the first Massachusetts cannabis company to publicly pledge to eliminate all sales of single pre-rolls, adopting proven tobacco prevention policies. We are proud to have set a new standard that others are now replicating. And we have a strict zero-tolerance policy for diversion, onsite consumption, or loitering with the immediate neighborhood. And will institute a permanent ban list for any violators. Our unarmed security staff will conduct frequent sweeps of the store and the needed area to ensure our customers are respecting our neighbors at all times. We have regular, positive, and ongoing communications with the Red Sox and Fenway Park management, ensuring we coordinate our security and operations planning. Next slide, please. Question four was about ensuring communities, especially disproportionately impacted neighborhoods, are positively uplifted and empowered. Our business plan reflects this same commitment. This includes investing more than $325,000 in our first three years of operations and $150,000 per year thereafter, with charitable giving focused on organizations like Fenway CDC's Walk to Work Program, the Fenway Community Center, Boston Healthcare for the Homeless, Boden Geneva Main Streets, Roxbury Main Streets, CBC Unidos Task Force, and Roka, Inc. We believe when we invest in our communities, the communities will invest in and be proud to come work for us. And while money helps, inclusion opportunities can truly change lives. Slide 17, Carlos.
As a company that already represents many diverse backgrounds, we are proud to be united by a shared mission of action, of creating access for all to jobs and to meaningful opportunities. This starts with successfully recruiting and retaining diverse employees at all levels of the organization, including management and C-suite positions. Our goal is to employ 50% women, 65% minorities, 25% individuals with prior drug convictions, 10% veterans, 10% LGBTQ+, and 5% individuals with disabilities, a population too often forgotten. To achieve this, we must develop and foster a culture that values and celebrates our unique differences. We will conduct continual third-party program and company culture evaluations, and have already engaged Malia Larsu to conduct these regular reviews. We are committed to contracting 25% of supply chain and ancillary services with businesses who identify as being owned and/or managed by minority, women, veteran, LGBTQ+, or individuals with disabilities. And finally, in order to create true equity in the cannabis industry, we need more companies that look like ours. This is why we will require all senior executives to commit 5% or more of their time to mentoring minority-owned cannabis businesses, including supporting developing business plans, applying for licenses, fundraising, and educating on entrepreneurial strategies. Next slide, please. Our neighborhood engagement will drive our diversity and inclusion plan. And we will work with Chief Barrows, our city councilors, and our extensive network within the city to actively promote opportunities and engage community leaders to identify diverse talent. This includes participating in Representative China Tyler's The Cultivate Ed Program with Roxbury Community College, as well as plugging into organizations where I'm actively involved, including Boden Geneva Main Street, Roxbury Main Street, and the Kverden Community Task Force. Slide 22, please.
Our goal is to have 75% of our staff be city residents and 25% with past criminal records. We plan to accomplish this by establishing industry-leading pay and benefits with strong career development and opportunities for upward mobility. We are looking to retain talent that wants a career and not just a job. We will offer competitive wages starting at $16 an hour, health benefits, including vision and dental, for all employees working thirty or more hours a week, life insurance, paid holidays, and eighty hours of paytime off and annual sick time, regardless of full or part-time status. And we are proud to launch a new program, Cypress Trees Pathway to Home Ownership, to help any of our employees become first-time homeowners, providing mentoring and education, funding legal costs for home closings, and sponsoring homebuyer classes. But to meet our goals, we also have to meet people where they are. And for those with past criminal records, that means aggressive outreach and providing wraparound services. We will host quarterly quarry clinics, offer pro bono legal assistance, and look to partner with organizations like Honest Jobs, Aid to Incarcerated Mothers, the Suffolk County Sheriff's Boston Reentry Initiative, and the Last Prisoner Project. Our business will succeed when those who work for us feel empowered and successful, too. Slide 29, please. We conducted two fully noticed public community meetings and engaged in multiple canvassing efforts, resulting in nearly ninety letters of support, including from neighboring businesses, electeds, and the Back Bay Association. And we view this outreach as a continuous responsibility. That is why we are committed to hosting quarterly neighborhood meetings to ensure we receive feedback and make adjustments as we go. Slide 31, please. We have an incredibly experienced team who will bring operational excellence to the site. Robust, state-approved security plans have been provided to the board, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have. Lisa Burke, our Director of Retail, was the dispensary manager overseeing Netta's Brookline location and nearly 200 staff. Paris Caldwell, our Director of Operations, was an operations manager for Netta's two retail stores, supporting hiring, payroll, community outreach, and sales.
Two-minute warning.
Becky Dempsey, our Director of Education and Wellness, is a single mother of three and started researching alternative therapies after her oldest son was diagnosed with autism and she with lupus. And Rick Nagel, our Director of Security. Rick is a former thirty-year veteran and retired lieutenant detective and narcotics inspector with the Massachusetts State Police. Slide 42, please. In closing, we have committed more than two and a half years to this project, a project we believe can positively contribute to the city of Boston. We are the only majority-minority-owned, locally-owned applicant to come before you in the Fenway and Back Bay neighborhoods. We have existing deep ties to the neighborhood. We have industry-leading DNI and employment plans led by Carlos and Malia, and we are committed significant resources to meaningful, community-based investments that can make a difference. We will make you and the city proud if we have given the opportunity to advance this project. Thank you for your time, and we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you. And before we turn to questions, I do want to note for the record that there is a buffer zone conflict with another existing cannabis establishment, and the applicant has submitted the requisite a buffer zone statement for the board's review. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner St. Gien, do you have any questions for the applicant?
A couple of questions. One, can you talk a little bit more about your Pathway to Home Ownership program for your employees?
Absolutely. So, all of our background are primarily in real estate. And it dawned on me, I told my team, I said, "One of the best things that we can do with mentoring" is to help our staff on their pathway to homeownership. And it's something that I'm currently doing on my construction site, and the goal is to anybody that has a dream of owning a home, that we put them on the right path to owning a home. We have attorneys that we've been working with over the years. We actually, my attorney committed to doing at least six closing a year for our staff. So we figured that's our base, and that's one of the biggest creations for wealth building. So why not provide that opportunity to all of our employees?
Would it include any kind of down payment opportunities?
So we explored that. We didn't know how to measure it. Obviously, we don't know, you know, how we're going to do, but we're definitely open to it. You know, I know FHA programs usually require a three and a half percent down. So we're looking at maybe one and a half, depending on how many folks go through the program we can afford. But we're really, we're really open to it. It seems excited about it.
Great. And then the other question, you mentioned that you were locally owned. So do you own the building that you're, that you're going to, that you're proposing to be in?
We are not. We don't. No, we don't own the building. We're just tenants.
Oh, okay. Okay. And so you're leasing and have an agreement with the landlord?
We do. We have a ten-year lease with two five-year options.
That's it.
I believe Commissioner Lombos has been able to log back on. Commissioner Lombos, can you hear me? You are unmuted, Commissioner. All right, you should be unmuted. And we cannot hear you, but Commissioner Lombos is still present, is still observing, and we will follow up with her specific questions. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, just one. Piggybacking on Commissioner St. Gien, you talked about the mentorship program owning homes. So if you talk about a little bit more, is it also about establishing businesses? What are the other elements of that mentorship program?
Yes. So, one of the things we think is important is for the senior leadership of the organization, not only the owners, but as well as all the senior management, to provide mentoring to our employees. And I don't know that that specifically has to be for employees seeking licenses within the cannabis space. But I think it is something where we'd like to see more minorities in the cannabis industry. And to achieve this, it's helping them develop business plans. As they, and really the biggest challenge being fundraising, helping them to get introduced into network of funders. So for example, right now, delivery being, I think, an excellent opportunity for minorities to produce their own ownership of a cannabis license in Massachusetts. You know, we're very supportive of mentoring, providing time to different applicants to develop their plans, and then ultimately help them bring those business plans to investors so that they can get funded and get operational on their own ownership.
And you're shepherding that process. Shepherding it up into that process.
Yes, exactly.
There's a little educational piece to that.
Yeah, so I think it is helping them understand all the rules and regulations when it comes time for making applicants, having them leverage off of our legal counsel, so that they've got completed applications for their Cannabis Control Commission. And then in terms of business plan development, I think it's, you know, working with the founders of our organization who have started not only this business, but other businesses before.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lombos's question is if you could please speak to which of the community groups you have established relationships with versus which are more aspirational relationships?
Can you hear me? Okay. So, I've been on, I've been the treasurer, formerly Dudley Square Main Street, now Roxbury Main Street for about seven years now. I've been on the Boden Geneva Main Street Board for about the same time, maybe a little bit more. So those are groups that we've had long relationships with, that are going to help us with employment. CBC Unidos is right by Boden G, Boden Geneva Main Street, so we have a very strong relationship with them as well. So these are not new relationships. These are relationships that were prior to cannabis that we're just expanding on.
And then, in terms of aspirational, you know, we've been talking to Fenway CDC quite a bit about participating in their Walk to Work program. So that would be one that we've committed to. We've also been in discussions with Fenway Community Center about hosting events in their event space when sort of post-COVID. So another organization within the immediate neighborhood that we are committed to supporting.
Thank you very much. We will now turn to testimony, beginning with elected officials and their representatives. For the record, Representative Tyler was present and had logged on, but had to, had to log off for another, another meeting. But she did indicate to the chairwoman that she would be submitting testimony. Are there any individuals who wish to testify, beginning with elected officials or their representatives?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Menzel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor facilitated the community process for this proposal, and we appreciate the work that the applicant has done to work with their neighbors. The applicant has submitted approximately seventy letters of support this week, while prior to this, our records reflected substantial opposition from the community. Many elected officials have submitted letters of support or non-opposition. However, after reviewing the submitted letters, we believe that the neighbors have spoken substantially and passionately in opposition of the proposal due to the location. Notably, letters of opposition include those from the Fenway Civic Association, Berkeley College, St. Clement's Church. The community feels that this location is not appropriate, given density, demographic, and concentration. On the other hand, this location, it is important, excuse me, to consider that there are neighbors that do support the proposal and do not share these concerns. We are also appreciative of the general proposal and ask that the board take it heavily into consideration. Given this information, the mayor's office will be going on record in opposition. Thank you.
Shanice, can you forward that, your opposition to the board so we can read it over?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify, who are officials or representatives?
Hi, I'm Lauren Brody from City Councilor, Kenzie Bock's office. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Councilor Bock has submitted a letter of non-opposition. As detailed in that comment letter, the counselor shares community concerns in regard to traffic, nearby parks, the neighborhood's long-term effort to transform this commercial block away from liquor store uses, and Berkeley's desire not to have a dispensary so directly adjacent to its campus. On the other hand, she is encouraged by the local and well-regarded majority-minority ownership group and its capacity to be more responsive to neighborhood issues than a national conglomerate. Ultimately, in light of the ownership group's commitment to major new support for local direct outreach, resources to serve the housing, mental health, and addiction-related needs of the immediate area, commitment to frontage parking management, and their commitment not to sell single joints, the counselor took position of non-opposition.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other elected officials or their representatives who wish to testify? Seeing none, we will turn to the individuals who have requested to testify in the chat. As a reminder, you will be limited to two minutes, and your testimony will be limited to this specific application at hand. When I call your name, please unmute yourself. If you have not provided your full name, please state it for the record. Please also state your address and any affiliation. Calling Eric L.
Hi, I'm Eric Lawrence. My address is 26 Woodbine Street in Roxbury, Massachusetts. I, I am an economic empowerment applicant and social equity applicant. I fully support Cypress Tree and their efforts to get to be licensed in that location. They have an excellent team behind them. They put together a very diverse set of individuals to run this group and very experienced as well. I know Todd and Victor personally, and they have been extremely generous with their time and mentorship in my efforts to be licensed in the industry. I appreciate that very much. The programs that they have should be a model for the industry. They are championing social equity, economic empowerment, homeownership. These are things that some of the bigger corporate players that are vertically integrated, that are dominating the market, should be held to task to do. What they're doing is an example, again, is a great example of putting community and people over profits. So I fully support their efforts.
Thank you very much. Calling Marie Facuta.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Marie Facuta. I'm a resident on Norway Street, just a couple of blocks from the proposed location. I have some comments, but I was also given a letter from an organization down the street. May I also add on two minutes to read theirs?
We would actually ask that if it's a, if it's written correspondence, you can submit that to the board. Written testimony is given as much weight as verbal.
Understood. Okay, first of all, I just wanted to say that I noticed that there are a lot of people from the Back Bay that are wanting to comment, and I want to remind this board that this is the Fenway, and because there are three applications for the Back Bay, it would make sense that maybe people representing the Back Bay would want to see a location at 1114 Boylston Street. But I asked that the commission really consider the Fenway's perspective here. I did go to all the meetings, and I would say I was very impressed by reading about the local sourcing, seeing the diversity of the business model. I think the things that remain problematic and why the mayor's office was so motivated was the issues around access, site suitability, and appropriateness of use for that street are not a good fit for this neighborhood. Unfortunately, on those scores, the applicant really doesn't meet those. It's a very narrow footprint. Fifteen hundred square feet for queuing on a street that already suffers from extreme congestion will be problematic. I don't know if you were sent the letter from Fenway Civic, but it really showed you visually what that access looks like. It is in close proximity with three sites proposed for the Back Bay, and it's in a neighborhood that already has seen three other applicants step forward. We have an equity applicant who has proposed a site in an entertainment district that feels a lot more appropriate for the use. I guess I would say in terms of traffic, that's especially concerning given.
Ms. Facuta, that is two minutes. You can submit any additional testimony in writing. The record will be kept open until Tuesday the 17th at 5:00 PM. Thank you. Calling Randy. Is Randy present?
Yes, hi. My name is Randy Horn. I'm a resident of the South End at 61 Warren Avenue. I'm here to speak in support of Cypress's application to open a dispensary at 1114 Boylston Street. I've known Todd Finnard and his team for over ten years, beginning when I was eighteen, and consider Todd one of my mentors, who's helped me throughout my career and provided valuable advice and guidance throughout my career. As a Realtor who primarily focuses on helping first-time homebuyers, Cypress's Path to Home Ownership initiatives for their employees is something I'm fully in support of as a way to increase wealth and equity in the community. And based on my experience with Todd and his team, I believe that Cypress will be a good neighbor by adequately managing queues, which I know is a concern. They'll be a committed community member and a responsible operator of a cannabis dispensary. As a cannabis caregiver for my mother, who suffers from Alzheimer's, I am particularly I am particularly in favor of this location for its proximity to where we live. I ask the board to grant this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Jonathan Padmore. Is Mr. Padmore present?
Hi, yes. So I was first introduced to Todd and my best friend Zach, whom we started an organization with called the Wildcat Fund. And in short, we're a nonprofit program that's a scholarship and mentorship program for West High School graduates that are in the Metco program. I'm sure many of you are familiar with. For those that are not, since 1966, Metco has been a grant program in Massachusetts by permitting students that live in certain cities and leave Boston to attend public schools in surrounding communities. And students in the program are primarily, but not exclusively Black and Latino, and on any given year, there are now 3,000 students in these 38 communities. And I was a Metco student Weston myself. And through Todd's leadership of the Pine Brook Scholars Foundation, Todd's financial support of the Wildcat Fund is now entering its second year. And so based on my personal experience with him, I'm confident that the team is committed to supporting the community. And to add one more brief point, you know, their commitment to progressive representation within the company, anti-racism work and, you know, community engagement speaks for itself. That was in the presentation, but I will know that for many years, my family lived close to the development that Todd sponsored, 892 River Street. And, you know, that I've watched that become, you know, a positive asset within the surrounding community there. And I believe that Cypress will be a good, you know, neighbor, community member and responsible operator of cannabis dispensary at this location. So that being said, I encourage you to grant this application.
Thank you. Mr. Padmore, please state your address for the record.
So I currently live in Brooklyn, New York, but my family still lives in Mattapan and Hyde Park.
Thank you. Calling Aislinn Kate Anderson. Is Ms. Anderson present?
I am, yes. Hi, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Aislinn Kate Anderson. I'm a resident of Boston at 1410 Columbia Road. And I'm an employee of Fennard Properties. I've had the absolute pleasure of getting to know and work with Cypress Tree for over three years. To say I feel lucky to work alongside Todd Fennard, Victor Chang, Eric Liebman, Carlos Castillo, Lisa Burke and Paris Caldwell would be an understatement. I feel incredibly privileged to work with people who respect me, and these individuals live locally with their families and really care about the area. I have every confidence that this group will go above and beyond to work with the community on this project. In a world where character matters, it's crucial that whoever operates this facility will do so with utmost respect and energy for the betterment of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Andy Tarsey. Is Andy present?
Thank you very much, yes. I'm at 8 Howard Street in Cambridge. And I know it's impossible to imagine by looking at me, but I've known Todd Fennard for, I think, 42 years. And know him to be a person of great character and concern and diligence and resilience. And the way he's approached creating this team represents that. I also work as a consultant and have done work for Fennard Properties, his real estate company. So I want to make sure that I mention that affiliation. And there was one very small piece of work that I did for him that was connected to the, of much earlier iteration of them getting into this, into the cannabis. So I just want to put that out there. But I've also known Victor in that context for about five years. And what I really wanted to say is that in the consulting work I did with them starting about five years ago, and I'm not doing any, by the way, right now, and I have no anticipation of being retained or paid or anything by them going forward. They moved from vague ideas and directional ideas about what does it mean in, in 21st century to be equitable and inclusive to learning about what was going on in this industry to what you see today, which is just a robust, not let's find the line and put a toe up to it, but let's blow right by it and create a model that is what everybody should be emulating. I'm really proud of that. I really want to see that be the norm. And I just wanted to say, I wanted to just speak to the integrity of the people involved here and the seriousness of their embrace of these ideas. There are things that are really important to me personally, and I know will make a difference beyond the four corners of their business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Paris. Paris Caldwell.
Hi there. My name is Paris Caldwell. My address is 260 Lincoln Street, Alston. And I am an employee with Cypress Tree. I just wanted to give comment and briefly speak in support of this location. I work for this company because I really believe in what we're doing and what we're moving towards achieving. What's exciting for me is that our plan empowers individuals beyond their employment, but also within employment, we power individuals starting at the application process. What that looks like starts at erasing the idea of setting impossible standards in order to have a successful candidate. We'd hope to work with local colleges and universities and being able to offer employment opportunities for students through their work portals. We'd want to host job fairs as safely as possible, so that technology is not a limiting factor for those who wish to apply. And in conjunction with that, posting, putting up job postings physically were permissible. These candidates who become employees would be joining one of the fastest-growing industries. And because Massachusetts is relatively new in cannabis space, employees have the opportunity to build success, evolve, inspire and influence the daily operations within. Being able to access the industry at this step can prepare one for a lifetime career in cannabis or provide the needed skills for a different or later career in management, retail, production, or anything that really requires a solid background in leadership. These are really exciting things to me, and I really hope to be able to be a part of that growth for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment, I'm just reviewing the chat. Calling Sammy Gosman. Is Sammy Gosman present?
Yep. Hi, everyone. My name is Sammy Gosman. I live at 26 Isabella Street in Bay Village. I'm here today to speak in support of Cypress's application to open a dispensary at 1114 Boylston Street. I've known Todd Fennard for almost my entire life. My dad and him have been friends since before I was born. You know, Todd is hardworking, successful and very committed to supporting the community. And as a close friend of Todd's, I truly believe that Cypress will be a great neighbor, community member and a responsible operator of a cannabis dispensary at this location. I strongly urge you to grant this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Charles Roulet. Is Charles Roulet present?
Yes, I'm present. So yeah, my name is Charles. I'm a resident at 22 Sigourney Street in Jamaica Plain. I actually am speaking in favor of Cypress Tree Management because through personal experience with Victor, like he's always been there as like a mentor to help me, you know, fine tune my business plans as a social equity, you know, applicant, trying to help me get on the right path, you know, and assist me, you know, to do what I need to do, you know, try to get past some of these hurdles that are, you know, inherently in the system. So I would say that he is 100% who he says he is, and he does care about, you know, equity and helping people. And it's not all about just money, 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 you know, like some of these big corporations that aren't from the area, you know. It's, it's people from here that are doing things to help other people, you know. I feel like people like Victor and his team really understand the concept of, you know, empowerment in helping other people while being able to, you know, service the community, you know, at the same time and make, you know, their business thrive. So I think these guys are going to be the best option, you know, like should definitely consider them. Everything has already been said about them, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Calling Keith Chaney.
Yes, good afternoon all. My name is Keith Chaney, and if this is sounding eerily familiar to all of other folks that talk today. I am testifying in support of Cypress Tree Management. My personal experience has been with Todd Fennard. Todd and I were introduced about a year ago in his endeavors to be more inclusive in his procurement spend. And what I got the sense from Todd right away on a very personal level was that this wasn't a charitable endeavor. This was actually him recognizing that there is value in diversifying only business, but on a personal level, getting diverse companies to work on his, on his properties. Since then, Todd and I have built a personal friendship, where we're able to call one another, have discussions outside of, you know, our work experience. And it's for that reason that I feel comfortable in cosigning Todd and his character and have no problem being part of the growing chorus of folks that are in support of this application. Thank you very much. Oh, my address, I'm sorry. I'm a North End over resident. I own a home in Boston, but I live in North End over now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Tito Jackson. Is Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jackson?
Hello?
Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, can you, can you hear me? Okay, I, I just wanted to, one, speak about my experience with Carlos Castillo and I, in my, in my former life as a city councillor. He purchased a liquor store in the Dudley Station area and just did a really amazing job turning around a block that had 20, 30 people standing there, did an amazing job with people in the neighborhood and community, and has just been a shining star as a young person in, in this space. I also do want to note that Victor, we actually reached out to me proactively. I did not have a prior relationship and has been thoughtful and connecting me with folks to help me with my business. So I just, it was not random. The only thing I do take a little bit of issue with is that I like the pizza at Little Stevie's. But I, I can figure out another pizza shop to go to. I would note that most cannabis shops actually have less traffic than you would see at a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts. So we do need to put the context of what the, the transactions that are going in there. And so I emphatically endorse this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Calling Robert Chambers.
Madam Chair, personal members of the cannabis board. My name is Robert Chambers, and I'm the Vice President of Community Government and Auxiliary Relations at Berkeley College of Music. After attending all the community meetings, both official and unofficial, hosted by Cypress Tree Management, and after comprehensive review of all the written materials regarding the proposed establishment, Berkeley College of Music expresses unconditional opposition to the licensing of an adult-use recreational cannabis establishment at 1114 Boylston Street. We believe that in this establishment, this location would have a severe and lasting detrimental impact on the Berkeley community as well as that of the surrounding neighborhood community. First and foremost, to our knowledge, no institution of higher education within the city of Boston has a dispensary located within its campus. As stated in Berkeley's Institutional Master Plan filed with the BPDA, the following two statements describe our physical campus. The heart of Berkeley campus is in the vicinity of the corner of Mass Ave and Boylston Street, between neighborhoods, between two neighborhoods within the city of Boston, the Fenway and the Back Bay, and adjacent to a mixed-use district surrounding the Prudential Center. The neighborhoods reflect a difference in character and demographics, but they remain two of the Boston's most popular neighborhoods for residents, retailers and companies seeking office space. And Berkeley has never occupied a defined and consolidated campus. It has filled its space needs reactively, leasing or buying as opportunities have arisen in the open market. This approach has fundamentally shaped the way the campus has developed. Part of the campus is in the vicinity of the corner of Mass Ave and Boylston Street. Many campus uses are found along Mass Ave and the four blocks south of the intersection, and much of the remainder lies within the first few blocks of Boylston Street to the intersections east and west. The prospective location is located close to the Berkeley Bookstore and several buildings own and lease for the college. Placing a dispensary quote in the heart of Berkeley campus would have a detrimental impact for the college community as well as the neighboring Fenway community.
Mr. Chambers, that is two minutes, but you can submit an additional testimony in writing, and we'll make sure all additional testimony is given to the commissioners.
Will do.
Thank you. Calling Meg Nager Cohen. We will come back to see if Ms. Cohen is present.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I apologize. I am on my way to a doctor's appointment, and so I sort of went from video and thought I could video while driving, but I'm not allowed to. Anyway, the, just to speak to this, the Back Bay Association has been very, very targeted around trying to find the right locations for marijuana dispensaries throughout the neighborhood. And we've been on record in support of one so far in the Back Bay, and this is in our catch basin area, and we did want to go on record in support of it. We, we believe that in order for this industry to be a success, dispensaries have to be dispersed throughout the neighborhoods and not, you know, that's why we are really looking very carefully at trying to find locations where we support the location, we support the operation, and we think that there is enough public transportation in the area to support it. So that's been our general position, and Cypress Tree hits all of those marks. We do understand that, that it sounds like folks in the Fenway are opposed to that, but we do think it's important. The Back Bay Association has historically been completely opposed to marijuana as a general rule, but we are trying very hard to find the right locations, and we seek your support in, in finding the location that suits for this area, but we are in support of Cypress Tree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Kai Grant.
Yes, my name is Kai Grant. Thank you to the chairperson and board members that are on today. I am an empowerment applicant and a longtime resident of Roxbury. My address is 13 Dudley Street in Roxbury, and I am in support of Cypress Tree. Carlos Castillo is a fellow business owner in Nubian Square for the past three years. My husband and I established Black Market Nubian in 2017, and we have had the pleasure of seeing a responsible operator inside of our district who continues to be active, not just in the main streets world, but in terms of helping to revitalize the district with putting and investing time, energy and capital into a whole block. He's been at envisioning sessions. He's constantly giving to the needs of the district in regards to different events that happen. And I am totally in support of the equity and inclusion model of this business. And homeownership is a key to help close the wealth gap. Business establishment is the key to help close the wealth gap. And giving back to local communities that are the ones that have been adversely affected and impacted is the type of model that we should be looking at inside of the cannabis industry and space. So put us on record as a supporter of Cypress Tree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Martins. Jonathan Martins present?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
All right. Jonathan Martins, 179 Pleasant Street in Attleboro, Mass. Union organizer for and representative for USCW Local 1445. Just a quick statement, our support is contingent upon the signing of a labor peace agreement, and we hope they're willing to have that conversation and work with us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian Taranto. Is Brian present?
I am. I apologize. Brian Taranto, I am a resident of Charlestown. Three Dexter Row, Unit 1. I am here to endorse the application of Cypress Tree Management. I have known Mr. Victor Chang for the past 12 years, have been involved with him in, in. in in fundraising efforts on behalf of Dana Farber Cancer Institute. He's an upstanding citizen, and I strongly support their application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Zach Breaker present?
I am present. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
So I am a resident of a three-reptine place in Watertown. I'm a business owner in Kenmore Square for the last sixteen years. I'm in support of Cypress Tree. What I will add, in addition to what's being mentioned, is my relationship with Carlos Castillo and my full confidence that anything he's involved in will be successful. I've known Carlos for twenty years, since we've been students at Tufts University. I've seen him bring diversity, inclusion to African-American and Hispanic community at Tufts. I saw him sit on the board at Park Street School. I saw him get very involved in the businesses in the areas in which he currently operates. He is a man of highest integrity, does what he says he will do, and stands, I stand a hundred percent behind any operation in which he's involved, both on a personal and a business deep levels of experience. So it has my strongest recommendation, a hundred percent, because he's such a great community builder and inclusive to the heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Tim Horn. Tim Horn.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to make comments. I'm Tim Horn, I live at one twenty Norway Street, about two blocks away from this proposal. I am the president of Fenway Civic Association. We did submit written comments. I just wanted to come on to voice my opposition to this at this location. It is seriously in the middle of one of our finer institutions of higher learning, and it is just immediately down from where we removed a liquor store use just about two years ago. I just want to, please read my letter, and I just really wanted to show up to reinforce that us local residents in the Fenway, this is part of the Fenway. It's not part of the Back Bay, it's not in anybody's basket, it's in the Fenway. Delected officials are from the Fenway. We really don't need more proposals. We already have four proposals in a one and a half mile area, and on top of that, there are three proposals in the Back Bay within fifteen hundred feet of this proposal. It seems like all the proposals are being shoved down to one little area. It's not spreading around the whole neighborhood and it's not being done in a fair match fashion. And the last thing is that it's really not doing the same thing and abiding by where we have removed a liquor store use. It's really not an appropriate place. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the ability to comment.
Thank you. Calling Ian Law.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. I'll try to make it this as simply as possible. Carlos, his initiative and the people that he's employed and supported is is live beyond most people's opinions. It's part of his represent representation, reputation. With that being said, like, I work at Zuma, I went to Boston Arts Academy, I'm from that area, and I would love to see that opportunity to go to someone and people like that because it's gonna happen. So I understand people's concerns, but I co-sign everything like Tito Jackson said. And with their program to include traffic downstairs, it's not that much, like, that is that is the right approach. Give these people a chance. This opportunity is very rare to see people in this type of location, and I like Little Stevie's Pizza as well. That's all I'll say. I'm in support of them. They're great people. Thank you.
Mr. Law, could you please state your address for the
Yeah, I'm two hundred Hancock Street. I'm Dorchester.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling John Bookston. Is Mr. Bookston present?
Yes, can you hear me? Thank you. I am a resident in Fenway at one eighty-five Mass Ave. I have attended meetings with this group. We are absolutely in favor of them having a cannabis location, but this location, and it was expressed by Marie, it was expressed by Tim, it was expressed by Shanice, our Office of Neighborhood Services person. The meetings were all very cordial. We like the people. It's the wrong location, and it should never be allowed in this particular place. The traffic you heard is terrible there, terrible gridlock. It's two blocks along Ipswich Street from Fenway Park. We do have an entertainment neighborhood, entertainment district in our neighborhood, and they could have picked a location in the entertainment district. This location is clearly wrong. It's sort of like someone who you really like making a proposal which is ludicrous, and this proposal, because of the location, is ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the individuals who requested to testify in the chat. Is there anyone else present who has not previously testified who wishes to testify regarding this application? Seeing no one, there woman Joyce, do you have any additional questions for the applicant? No, I don't. Ian, do you have any additional questions?
No, it looks like two people came up in the chat. I don't know if they're for this. One called James, one called Ally.
I'm sorry.
I think they were responding to your question if anyone wanted to testify.
Thank you very much. James, do you wish to testify regarding this application? Moving to Ally Gossman.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name is Allison Gossman. I live at twenty-six Isabella Street in Bay Village, so very close on the border of Back Bay and South End, and I'm here today to speak in support of Cypress's application to open a dispensary at eleven fourteen Boylston Street. I have been very lucky to know Todd for all twenty-six years of my life through a deep legacy of our family relationships. Growing up with him, knowing him, and him being a father figure to me has taught me a lot about taking care of myself, importance of family, strength, termination, but more importantly, what it means to support my community. And I know that he is committed in doing so and along all those lines from a business perspective and from what his his plans are. I was also diagnosed with MS over two years ago, and the cannabis products have been very valuable to me in keeping my symptoms at bay and helping me throughout my treatment. So having a location that is easily accessible and in proximity, close proximity would be very beneficial. For those reasons, I strongly believe that Cypress will be a great addition to the neighborhood, key asset to the community, and it'll be a responsible operator of a dispensary at the location. So I strongly urge you to grant this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And James, is James still present to testify? Okay, seeing I'm sorry, go ahead.
James Anderson, yes, this is for the Nubian Square Dispensary?
Testimony right now regarding Cypress Tree Management.
Okay, I have no comment.
As a reminder, additional testimony can be submitted in writing up until Tuesday the seventeenth at five P M. Commissioner St. Ian, you did not have any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Holmes, do you have any additional questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Lambos? And Commissioner Smith?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional questions, the board will take this matter under advisement. We will take a brief two-minute recess before we return for the next agenda item. As a reminder, your presentation will be limited to ten minutes. Jasmine Nguyen in our office will give you a notice at the five-minute mark and the eight-minute mark. Calling the Heritage Club LLC. The proposed license premise is one sixteen Cambridge Street, Charlestown. The application is for a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, ten thirty A M. to nine P M., Saturday and Sunday, nine A M. to nine P M. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of the initial application was August thirteenth, two thousand twenty. The date of filing with the Inspection Services Department was September fourteenth, two thousand twenty. The date of the community meeting was October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. And the presentation team is Adinaiki, Nikki, John, and Margaret, Maggie Supre. Is the applicant present?
Yes, and we also have Phil Silverman from Vicente.
Great, and you may begin.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the B C B for hearing our proposal and for the time you spent serving on this board. A special thank you to Leslie Hawkins, Sheila White, and Quinlan Locke. You deserve outstanding recognition for your efforts efforts in helping us pursue this opportunity. We are two women in an industry full of white men. We are a black woman and a gay woman, and today, although it feels like a few people do not want to see us succeed, we are here, we are proud to be here, and we want to thank all of our supporters for showing up today. We are here for change, and we hope the board is too. Can you switch to slide three, please? So our core values are accountability, diversity, inclusion, giving back, and our credo is where we're from is where we give back. Next slide. My name's Nikki John, and this is Maggie Supri, and on the call we also have Phil Silverman from Vicente. We're the founders of the Heritage Club, and I'm from Dorchester, I live in Dorchester right now. I'm the daughter of an immigrant, I'm a local equity Northeastern currently a real estate broker.
My name is Maggie Supri. I grew up in South Boston, though my family roots in Charlestown go back almost four generations. My dad grew up on Bunker Hill Street as one of ten kids. My family, much of my family still lives there, and all of my siblings were born in the Lost Village, so this neighborhood has great significance to me and my family. I got my degree in entrepreneurship from Brown University before moving on to Suffolk University Law School. Upon graduating, I began working in real estate as well and have been consulting for a cannabis firm in Western Mass for two and a half years, helping fellow entrepreneurs through the licensing process. Next slide.
We have over twenty years of professional experience, ten years of customer service, five years management, two years retail, and two years cannabis. I am one of the, or was founding president of BNI Charlestown, and I am part of the Mass CAD, which is Massachusetts Cannabis Association for Delivery, as part of Lantern's Delivery Accelerator, and do you want to talk a little bit about?
Yes, yes, of course. So with the firm I've been working for in Western Mass, I've worked with all types of retail establishments, and through practice and education, this position has allowed me to develop a broad and deep understanding of the rules and regulations that govern this industry.
Next slide, please. These are our strategic partners. We're gonna go over it quickly. Dr. Robin Reed, MBI, CEO, co-founder of the Wellness Collaborative, a community health center in Nubian Square. Niall McManus, president of Valiant. They specialize in commercial cannabis commercial billouts, and they've done over a hundred spaces. Attorney Lori Lucian, who's a managing member of Major Bloom, a cultivation site in South Shore, Massachusetts. She's also working on her own retail and is the cannabis law professor at Suffolk. Next slide, please. We want to quickly highlight Mac and Scott. Mac is head of product at Lantern, and Scott is head of business development at Adaptive H R. They're our P E O. Next slide, please. On the next slide, we're gonna highlight who our partner, our partnerships are with. So we're working with Vicente Cedarburg for Legal, Century Bank for Banking. We'll skip over a few of these, but most importantly, Tea Bear, which is a woman-led company in Wareham, Massachusetts, and their brand Coast Cannabis, which we'd like to carry and store and working to partner with them on. Next slide, please. Oh, you can skip all the way to twelve, please. So we're gonna talk a little bit about employment. Sorry, we're going so fast. We just want to make sure we fit all the most important stuff. Training, education, hiring, local, diversity, and inclusion. So training's important. We're gonna make sure that we're compliant with all C C C requirements, but we're also gonna require that every employee take implicit bias training within ninety days of hire. On the right-hand side, you'll see all of the different courses that are available through our H R provider, and we're gonna require one leadership or professional development course taken a year by each employee. We'll be hiring local fifty-one percent Charlestown residents and twenty percent from anywhere else in Boston. The reason we picked those numbers is because we want to use the demographics of Charlestown to make sure that we're able to still meet our goals that will cover diversity and inclusion. Charlestown seventy-five percent white, eleven point five Hispanic, eleven Charlestown seventy-five percent white, eleven point five Hispanic, eleven point one black, seven point six Asian, and two percent of two races or more. To talk about our leadership, we are a board that is made of mostly minorities and women, and we want to expand these goals to diverse categories throughout the rest of the company at all levels. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Next, next slide, please. To talk about benefits, we're going to offer health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, living wages, and Zayzun, which is an extra perk for our employees, so they don't have to wait every two weeks to get paid. If, as they earn their wages, they can take it out. So say one Friday early, you need a little extra money, it's not going to be a difficulty. A lot of Americans live paycheck to paycheck, and we don't want that to make our employees uncomfortable, things come up. We have PTO, 401K, and budget planning. Finfit is an app we're going to add, and this is all going to be incorporated when we talk about diversity and inclusion again later. We also want to highlight that we're working with UFCW too, and we signed a peace agreement with them because we do believe unions are an option that anyone should be able to have. We both have siblings in unions, and we thought this was really important. Next slide, please. So to go over diversity and inclusion, Heritage is a majority black and women-owned business. This is a rarity in Massachusetts and in the city. We want to talk about our hiring goals, but just to make sure that we use the rubric. Our overall goals are hiring, we have diverse management. That means bringing people from ADIs or impacted communities from the war on drugs into the cannabis space. Additionally, our second thing is helping those people become owners in the industry. And we'll be doing that with trainings, which we'll highlight later on. And the third thing, which we highlight under community, is wealth building. So budgeting opportunities for employees, which we highlighted in employment. We have the home budgeting, I'm home, sorry, home buying seminars, which we'll be hosting monthly, and down payment assistance, which we'll be providing. And we're pledging for ten community members of Charlestown who meet the requirements that will be paying their closing costs. Just to talk about hiring, we want to hire fifty-one percent women, fifty-one percent people of color, twenty percent from ADIs, twenty percent with a quarry, or who have parents or spouses who have passed convictions. We want to also make sure we're doing this by having career fairs in ADIs, so we can meet people where they are instead of asking them to come to us so they can find us. Promote from within, and that's why we're going to do leadership training and require that from employees. Advertise in local papers, diverse papers, and also use Mass Hire. Because we're going to be trying to hire from quarries, we're also going to add in return the city's returning citizens program and working with them if they're able to work with us. We'll track this with measurable things, what gets measured gets done. Next slide, please. And I kind of talked about this one, but hiring outside vendors. And we have been using an advisor consultant, architect, graphic designer, and interior designer, all women leaders in their field. Next slide, please.
Our motto, as we said, is where we are from is where we give back. We want to be good neighbors and have a number of initiatives to enhance and protect our community. In addition to the three percent that will go to the city, we will be contributing additional three percent of our annual net profit to the Lost Village Community Trust. We will create a board made up of members of our team and members of the community to determine the allocation of funds on an annual basis. We will also create the Boston Heritage Fund, which will help our neighbors grow wealth through investment by offering down payment assistance to ten qualifying residents every year. Additionally, we'll have a twenty-four-hour phone line, offer additional educational events, and have a minimum purchase limit to prevent public consumption, and require customers to sign an agreement stating they will not loiter, consume publicly, nor divert our products. Next slide, please. As for community support, we have a hundred and five letters of support from Charlestown residents and an additional seventy-two from Boston residents. Industry leaders MCAD, Bechma, and UCFW will be issuing us letters of support as well. We understand traffic to be the biggest concern among neighbors, and we have already begun conversations with Greg Rooney, the commissioner at BTD, to advocate for the Lost Village's concerns and to learn how we can do our part to mitigate traffic congestion. Next slide, please.
So as far as security, we want to highlight building security, the safety of our staff, customers, and community. We want to prevent diversion to minors and just diversion of the products in general, prevent nuisances to the neighborhood and surrounding community, and maintain law and state and local regulations. We've been working with our consultant, Jesse Jacobon of CAM Security, who's built about eight, helped secure eight facilities in the state. And you can head on to slide twenty-three, just for time.
Okay. Okay. So this is the aerial view of our proposed site. It's a standalone building located in the rear lot. It's less than one mile from both Union and Sullivan Square. Next slide, please. This here shows the existing condition of our building. Next slide, please. And this here is the new rendering of what the store will look like. It'll be clean, modern, and unassuming. Next slide, please. This is a display of our proposed floor plan. We estimate between five hundred and seven hundred customers a day. So we have designed a layout that will promote customer flow and efficiency. Our layout will be ADA compliant. Next slide, please. We have eleven dedicated Spark parking spots, seven for retail customers, including one ADA-compliant spot, two spaces for drop-off and delivery, two for curbside while authorized, and twelve. And if, next slide, please. The twelves, excuse me, the eleven spots I mentioned are highlighted there in green, and we have an additional twelve layover spots that are highlighted there in orange. We also have pending conversations with a lot owner down the street for an additional forty off-site parking spots. Next slide, please. We'll be conducting a traffic impact study to better understand how we can mitigate traffic concerns, though our idea is to request a roll-in street address on Google Maps and direct customers to access our location using Carter Street denoted in green arrows. The orange car you see at the top of the photo will be our designated rideshare drop-off kickoff area, and we will, which will eliminate double parking on Cambridge Street. We'll also request customers exit using Stark Street, denoted here in red arrows, as this is, there's already an existing traffic light that we will utilize to direct cars back onto Cambridge Street. Next slide.
So I think that's about it for us, you can finish to the final. Thank you. Sorry, we talked fast.
Before we move to questions from the chairwoman commissioners, I'm going to ask attorney Shayla White to testify regarding the equity certification. Attorney White?
I was able to certify the Heritage Club as eligible for the Boston Equity Program through the documentation submitted by Ms. John. Ms. John is the fifty-one percent beneficial interest holder of the Heritage Club. She fit the following criteria. A person who has resided in an area of disproportionate impact for at least five of the past ten years. Ms. John did submit documentation that she was a resident of Gainesboro Street in Boston, which is an area of disproportionate impact, as well as a resident of Quincy, Massachusetts, which is also designated as a community of disproportionate impact. She lived in those two communities from two thousand thirteen through two thousand eighteen, and she is currently a Boston resident. I think she mentioned that earlier in her presentation. Ms. John also has self-identified as a person of Black and African-American descent. And Ms. John also submitted her two thousand nineteen federal income tax returns, which did put her at thirty percent AMI. So she does fit the criteria, which states that she is a person whose household income is at or below one hundred percent of the area median income.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman or commissioners, does anyone have a question regarding the equity certification?
I do not.
Thank you, seeing none. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I want to reserve my questions till after some of the testimony.
Right. Commissioner St. Giann, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I had one about the ownership of the building, but it looks like the landlord is going to be testifying. So that'll probably be answered at that point. In terms of the traffic study, did you say you were going to have one, or you had one, you've already had one done?
Sorry, yeah, so we're going to have one done, and we've already reached out to the local transportation department, and they said they're willing to work with us once we provide that. We're honestly bootstrapping this, so we're trying to save on costs until we're to the next step. We will make sure that gets done, and want to make sure that the community knows we heard their concerns.
And in terms of, I love an onsite, and I appreciate the ADA-compliant parking and facility. I guess the traffic study will tell you how many off-street parking there is, but just sort of in your own general knowledge of the area, like, is there significant off-street, on-street parking? Sorry, not off-street, on-street parking.
Um, there is, and we want to discourage customers from using that. So that's why we wanted to make sure we have it onsite, that there is quite a bit of parking right there on Cambridge Street. And there are some lots, public municipal lots.
Right, and you said you weren't in negotiation with someone who owned forty, forty spots off-street parking?
Yes, and we're speaking about three different lots, just trying to work.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
This one, I don't know if I heard them correctly, but you said that your employees, once a year, you will mandate that they have to take, I don't know if it was a management courses or some additional training that they would have to do at least yearly. And I was just wondering, who had to pay for that? Would you be paying for that, or would the employees have to pay for that?
We'll be paying for that, and that's provided through our PEO. So we pay for that monthly, they can take it online, they don't have to go anywhere for it. We'll be paying for the hours that they take it, and it's just to help them build career skills, whether they decide to stay with us or not.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Sure, good afternoon, Ms. John, you said that it gets, what gets measured gets done. So just wondering about, what are you thinking about measuring, and how you're adjusting as you do that?
Sorry, can you just repeat the beginning?
You, in your testimony, you said what measured, what is measured gets done?
Yes.
Oh, what are you thinking of measuring?
So the most important thing is measuring the amount of job postings and where they're being posted, so making sure it's on diverse websites. We can't just put it on the main website and expect that to get all of the hits. If it was that easy, you would see a lot more representation in the industry already. I think it's about eight percent black employees, which we would like to see a lot more of across the board. The amount of diverse hires, the amount of promotional opportunities that are made. So we're going to have assistant managers and managers, administrative levels, and as we expand, as other license texts comes up, to make sure those managers are still diverse. The other thing is going to be the different events that we hold. So we're going to measure the amount of events we're holding, the amount of training events that we hold, and the engagement at these events. So who's coming, what are the demographics of those people? It's not just the count, getting people to the event, it's who's coming to it.
So you're measuring for impact and outcome?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos does not have any questions, but wanted to congratulate the applicant on a very fast but thorough presentation.
Thank you.
We will now move to testimony.
Leslie, sorry, I'm sorry. I just, you know, as we're going through these, and one thing that that came, that's come up a lot is the peace labor agreement with UFCW. And I think if we could ask all the applicants, and they don't have to do it during the presentation, to submit whether they're in negotiations, whether they've had outreach with them, or, you know, kind of what the status is on their peace labor agreement, since it is a part of our scoring sheet, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can submit the agreement, it's already signed, and.
No, not, yeah, no, you, not you guys, but just in general, because it's in the other applicants, they haven't, it's been unclear where they're at, you guys were very clear that you had one, but the other applicants in particular.
Thank you, I will make a note. Before we begin taking testimony, as a reminder, testimony will be limited to two minutes. You will be muted if you go beyond the two-minute mark. You can also submit written testimony, the record will be kept open until Tuesday, the seventeenth, at five p.m.
Leslie, do you want to, just for the other commissioners, mention Counselor Edwards' letter we received before the hearing, just so they have some context?
Yes, absolutely. Just before the hearing, Counselor Edwards, who I believe is present, submitted supplemental correspondence to her initial email, providing a letter of non-opposition. That has been uploaded, and I believe the counselor will address that as well. As a reminder, when you, when I call you to testify, please unmute yourself. Please state your full name for the record, your address, and any affiliation. We will now.
Are we going to take Counselor Edwards, if she's here?
Going to begin with Counselor Edwards, if she is present.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, if you can.
And I wanted to thank you for this opportunity, and also to note, I believe I want to clarify to the board exactly where I'm standing, and that there was no change in my mindset. I want to be clear that on less than twenty-four hours after the applicant's public meeting, the fastest I've ever done any correspondence about an applicant, I provided an email as a placeholder, noting, because I am dealing, I was at the funeral mass for my partner, I wasn't able to formally go through everything. I was dealing with the funeral the entire week. But I wanted to make sure I did not hurt them or the other applicant, and I didn't want my mindset to be impactful on them in any way. So there, I submitted that to allow for their application to go forward with the understanding, as I said to Ms. Hawkins or my office did, that I would be supplementing that particular letter. And that's what I did. I, I have submitted additional testimony, and I've come out quite firmly after reviewing their testimony, comparing it to the conversations they've had with me, in firm opposition. And it kills me because they are an equity applicant. But I want to remind people, the goal of the equity process is not to lower standards, but to make sure we cause no harm, or no, and actually push towards healing. But the goal is not to push people forward if they're not qualified. These applicants are not qualified for several reasons. One, whatever community support they have submitted to me is based off a form, a form email, and many, in some cases, literally with "state your name" in it, and majority of them had the wrong zip code. Sloppy, fake, it didn't look real. They had no real opposition or support, contact my office with anything beyond form emails. And majority of those emails I received weren't even from Boston. On top of that, they, the, the application is half-baked. They have definitely been misled myself or my community. When I met with them privately, they specifically told me that they own sixty percent, with Maggie owning nine percent, Nikki only fifty-one percent, and New England Development owning forty percent of their company. In front of my community, they stated that they own one hundred percent, the two of them together. This industry has a stigma already. This industry requires trust, it requires open communication, you cannot violate either. You are forming a relationship with the community that I represent. And if you start that relationship with misleading, incomplete facts, I don't trust you. And that relationship starts at a delta, and I don't trust that you really care or listen. Your letters of support are superficial, and all of them are formed. There is no actual person in Charlestown writing directly to me in support of this application. I do have opposition because of traffic concerns, lack of control over the parking. As you heard, they haven't done the study, they didn't want to spend the money to find out. And the biggest issue is that they are not trusted by the, the Lost Village. They don't have support from the Lost Village. Now, I've been very clear that trust is important to me, and being open in communication. I also want to note, and this is picking up on some of the criticism I've heard earlier, realistic expectations for mitigation. I pushed back when they said that they're going to somehow come up with down payment relief for the whole world in Charlestown, and help them get houses and help stop the housing crisis. I pushed back on that privately with them, saying that's not realistic. And also, what is your plan for that? I don't know if they submitted that in the board memo, but I know they also told me that they were going to help people get off the opioid crisis by putting a pillbox on their building, so people could drop off their opioids in that box, and then come in and get their product. That's illegal. That's naive. But I think one of the biggest frustrations I have is in all of, almost all of their communication to me, it has been with utter obsession with another applicant, and why that applicant should not go forward. They have spent more time criticizing other people than actually standing on their own two feet to explain why they deserve this. Now, I've attached their communication, all of their communication, questioning my process, this process, excuse me, questioning the openness and the transparency of this board, and trusting, and questioning the backroom or whatever language they used previously, and questioning communication I had directly with the board member, Leslie Hawkins. I communicated to Leslie Hawkins that after I reviewed all of this, I'm asking for them to push back, to wait, to have a conversation, so I wouldn't publicly come out this way and this strong, in opposition of an equity applicant. They're an equity applicant, they will go before anybody else in Charlestown. So I wanted to sit down and talk with them and go through, and I know that that was proposed to them. You either go ahead and push through and marshal through, and Counselor Edwards will oppose you, because it is a half-baked, and I used another term in the newspaper recently. It is not real. It is demonstrating either there's confusion about what equity means, and that forty percent of equity isn't just investors, it's ownership. You have to know the difference. And so when you have all of those things lined up, and I'm looking at this application, it is the worst application I have seen. And I've sat down with many applicants for this board. I am proud supporter of this board and this process, and I want nothing more than for the process to work. But let me tell you something. If you support this because they are an equity applicant, which I know some other political officials are going to do that, just by virtue of they mean equity, you demean the word equity. You demean that process and why it was so important for us to have that. You lower the standards versus making sure there is no harm, and that is the difference. I do not want this precedent set in my district. I don't want anyone to look at their application and think. that's how you get an HCA in Boston, let alone in Charlestown. You don't lie. You come forward, and let me tell you, the only time that they have ever offered to sit down and talk specifically about how they have deltas was Tuesday of this week from Nikki. Previous to that, it was Maggie's email. They're attached as exhibits. I attached all their communication, and demonstrating that, you know, if Jack is or whoever is the best applicant, then what is their deltas? And demanding of me, as though I work for them, and demonstrating the lack of respect they really have for my district and myself, that they're deserving of this. Equity application is about process. It is not entitlement, and that's how they have approached this. My letter demonstrates, this outlines it carefully, and I'm telling you, I'm still willing to push, or to get a non-op, get to the point of non-opposition. I am still willing to sit with them and talk to them specifically about the concern that I have. I'm still willing to do that, because they are an equity applicant. But I'm not willing to support this today, and I'm encouraging the board to push for them to come back.
Can I just jump in? I know this is a little bit out of order, just because we do have the counselor with us, and I want to respect her time. I do have questions about the timeline. The application, the community meeting was October 29th. When was the first time they reached out to you to, to sit down?
I haven't.
I did, I did get your letter, but I haven't had a chance to process it all.
Right. So in the, in the letter, there's an exhibit of the timeline of the times that we spoke. They spoke with my office twice. They spoke first with my staff, and then they spoke with me. I don't have the exact dates. It is attached.
But it was after, after the community meeting?
But I understood there were allegations that they had reached out to my office eight times, trying to reach with me and trying to do this. And I just want to be clear, I met with them twice. I met with other applicants twice.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask.
And then I met with them.
Okay. I'm just going to ask everyone who's joined us at the hearing today, out of respect to the process and the commissioners' times, if you could not use the chat function when we're trying to listen to testimony, we'll get to you, I promise you. But it's really distracting when someone's testifying, and then other people are, are putting information in the chat that we can't focus on it. We'll get to you, and you'll have an opportunity to be heard, but I, we'll have to turn off the chat entirely. We're trying to use it to help move the hearing along, and speaking for myself, it's very, very distracting.
Thank you, Chairwoman. And to echo what the Chairwoman said, the chat function should be used only to request to testify. No information regarding your position or any questions you may have in the chat will be responded to, and it will not become a part of the record. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify, who are elected representatives or representatives of elected officials?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, when in law, but the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this equity applicant, as well as a new woman LGBTQ and minority operated business. Would also like the board to be aware that a large amount of concerns brought up through the community process were transportation-related concerns within this area of the neighborhood. We recommend the applicant continue working with the neighborhood and the correct city departments on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or individuals wishing to, individuals representing elected officials? We will turn to the individuals who have requested to testify via the chat. As a reminder, you'll be given two minutes. You will be muted at the two-minute mark, and you can also submit written testimony up until Tuesday, the 17th at 5:00 PM.
So let me just jump in again. We did receive a lot of requests via email to testify today. Those that did, please put your name in the chat for this applicant. The staff wasn't able to go back and forth due to our schedule today and make that list. So we are going to use the chat for signing up for testimony here.
Thank you. Calling Nikki Hurst. And again, when I call you, please unmute yourself and state your address and any affiliation.
Hi, my name is Nikki Hurst. I live at 61 Warren Ave in Boston, and I am in support of the Heritage Club. So first, I wanted to say that I know them never to misrepresent any information. They are equity owners, and they hold themselves to very high standards that I have seen firsthand. So I hope anyone who has any concerns, I would encourage them to reach out to the owners and speak to them in person to clarify anything. I have known Nikki John for quite some time now. She's had a profound impact on my life and many others. She's always demonstrated the highest degree of integrity. She actively engages in the community and connects young professionals across industries and backgrounds in Boston. These owners have put together such a thoughtful and effective plan, and are incredible representatives of women, people of color, and the LGBTQ community. I really admire their commitment to giving back to the community in such impactful ways. Just to reiterate, they are investing 3% to the area of Charlestown they are operating in. That's crazy. They're hiring local. They're offering educational seminars and down payment assistance programs. This is really unparalleled in any business around, let alone other proposals of this nature. On another note, it's very compelling to hear them about their plan to maximize security and minimize foot traffic by having systems in place to order ahead and the opportunity to deliver orders. If there's going to be a new dispensary in town, the Heritage Club owners are hands down the most driven to bring in positive change and stand in alignment with these goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Anne Marie Callahan.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Anne Marie Callahan. I live at 17 Parker Street in Charlestown, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to speak today. I would like to echo much of what Counselor Edwards had to say, and I am very dismayed to hear that the Mayor's Office is in support of this process. As you've indicated, the board is committed to providing a clear, predictable, and transparent process. And I would suggest that this process has been anything but that. As you know, a complete application for an equity applicant by your standards is made up of five requirements, and I'd like to address a couple of those. The first is a complete online application. Under your rules and regulations, an applicant must disclose all direct and indirect beneficial interest holders in a proposed license. At our community meeting on October 29th, I asked the owners to address speculation that New England Development and other entities and individuals were in negotiations to acquire a financial interest in heritage. Nikki John responded, "We are still in the process of looking for partners." And most recently, she was quoted in the Charlestown Patriot as saying, "It's just the two of us. We've been bootstrapping this for our own, from our own savings, yet we are talking with four or five investors, and we're trying to find the right partners." With regard, so my question for this board, I guess, is who, how do you deem this application complete when the owners are publicly saying that they're continuing to look for partners and investors? Is a group allowed to disflout the ordinance by simply not having investors signed on at the time of an application? And wouldn't it follow that all the applicants would wait until the community input and license was granted before they unveil their investors and ownership interests? I think this is particularly important, given the ordinance change that you're currently entertaining, which would allow for the transfer of license. And with regard to a community hearing, it must be a completed community hearing.
Ms. Callahan, that is two minutes. You can submit any additional testimony in writing. We will make sure all the commissioners receive it. Calling Caitlin McCarthy.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McCarthy, 19 Oak Street, Charlestown. I'm here to voice my support for the Heritage Club proposal. I'm here as a female and a member of the LGBTQ community, but most importantly, a member of the local community and ecosystem. There have been a number of legislative moves in the past months to year in attempts to gain better representation in the cannabis industry in this city. I was elated to hear that the proposed dispensary to go in at 116 Cambridge Street would not only be bringing a well-thought-out business to an area in need of upgraded utilities for all of its neighbors, but I also rejoiced in the fact that this would be a female-owned and operated business by two local women. Fighting for equity in all businesses for people of color, LGBTQ plus community members and women is an ongoing struggle, and the cannabis space has been especially hard to break into in this state. In license, in listening to previous meetings regarding the proposed business in question, the 116 Cambridge Street location stands out for its superior access, security, and community improvements. From every interaction I've witnessed on previous calls and meetings, the two women running the Heritage Club proposal have seemed to be genuinely interested in helping the Charlestown community. As two young women, one a person of color and the other a member of the LGBTQ community, I cannot imagine the stress of going up against well-known and connected political figures. But the community I want to be a part of believes in equity, believes in the facts presented fairly, is committed to pursuing the best option for the community. If the proposal at 116 Cambridge Street does not check all the boxes for the push towards equity and a more diverse business representation across all of Boston, particularly in Charlestown, I fear the negative effects its dismissal would have on the community at large. I'm excited at the prospect of a young, vibrant, well-thought-out, women-run business in my neighborhood, and I hope the board can see how important that pursuit is. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did just cross-reference the file and the application regarding Ms. Callahan's concerns. This did have a complete application, including the disclosure of the 40% of investors and beneficial interest forms were submitted to the board. So just to be clear, while I cannot speak to the community meeting, all of the beneficial interest holders were disclosed to the board properly.
Anne Marie, you can submit written testimony.
Calling Shannon Schultz. Is Ms. Schultz present?
Yes. I am Shannon Schultz. I live at 9 Gartland Street in Jamaica Plain. I'm here to voice my support for the Heritage Club. I met Nikki about 10 years ago while we were working together at Apple. She was a great coworker and friend. I've seen her hard work, dedication, and professionalism through her development of her real estate business. She is incredibly passionate about the Heritage Club, and I think that she would be a great owner of this business, and would bring a lot of women, people of color, and LGBT community into her business as employees.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Schultz, I could have missed it, but could you please state your address for the record?
Yes, it's 9 Gartland Street in Jamaica Plain.
Thank you. Calling Robin Reed.
Hi, thank you. I'm the strategic advisor for the Heritage Club. I live at 46 Adamas Street in Dorchester, and I'm speaking in support of the Heritage Club. Thank you, Chairman Woman Joyce, board members, commissioners, elected officials, community, and others, all others present. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in this current era of truth and justice. I support the Heritage Club because no one has been more diligent in studying the laws, the rules, and regulations, building a strong organization, and seeking to serve the community at a much higher level than others have offered. They are a model for the equity program and for women. The Cannabis Board has endeavored to have an equitable process with reparative justice, and the city has designated the equity category, which I believe that they do not intend that equity applicants only can have licenses in ADI areas, but when they mean local ownership, they mean across the city. The city counselor seeks to circumvent this intention by saying local residents should have priority. But in ADI areas, non-ADI areas, both local residents are predominantly white, and that would be a de facto racial bias if local residents are given priority over this board's intention for diversity. I was very surprised to see that a public official would speak out in the press when they're supposed to be a dispassionate, facilitative entity to help equity applicants and others to achieve success, and to facilitate and lead them through the process. So rather than going directly to the applicant and asking to declare, to clarify discrepancies, there was a rush to the press, and that is disconcerting. What was this alleged discrepancy? It'll take me a while to address.
I'm sorry, that is two minutes. You can submit any additional testimony in writing. Calling Heather Hollis. Is Heather Hollis present? Calling Shelley Mogill.
Sorry about that. My computer was muted. Thank you so much. I want to speak in support of the Heritage Club. I did attend the previous community meeting, and we'll echo what others have said, is that I know the owners, mainly Nikki John of the Heritage Club, to be very, very conscientious. And what I would like to point out is that, you know, the two owners, one is a lawyer, and one is a real estate agent. This is new territory.
Hollis? Their audio is echoing.
One moment. We'll see if that's better. My apologies. This is new territory for them and for all of us, and inherently, it's a brand-new industry. For example, I believe the councilwoman mentioned the forum responses. I was one of those respondents. I've actually never been part of a public process like this before. So I'd just like to highlight, I think a lot of people on this call, and a lot of the applicants across the city are learning, and so I hope we can continue to assume good intent throughout this process. And I'm in full support of them and have every confidence that they'll be excellent additions to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Hollis. Could you please state your address for the record?
Yes, 346 Congress Street, Boston, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A reminder, please, when I call you, please state your address for the record. Calling Shelley Mogill. Is Ms. Mogill present? Calling Miriam Crispin. Is Miriam present? Give me one moment as we go through the chat. Calling Tina, Martina Arroyo. Is Martina Arroyo present? Tito Jackson? Is Tito Jackson present?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, this is Tito Jackson, Roxbury resident. I do need to disclose that Nikki and I went to the same high school, but many years apart. I was, have seen and connected with Nikki as part of the social, as one of my social equity peers, and it is good to hear that she has gotten to this point. I was actually able to work and speak with her about her diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. I think it is a reflection of one that is going to be inclusive and really helpful to local communities. And I also loved to hear today that there are multiple people of color who are spreading out in communities across the city, and not only predominantly black and Latino communities. So I am testifying in support. Thank you.
And Mr. Jackson, for the record, could you state your full address in Roxbury, please?
My full address is 37 Skylift Street in Roxbury, Mass.
Thank you very much. Calling Eliza Good. Is Eliza Good? Calling Tracy Ferriter.
Thank you. Tracy Ferriter, 106 Grand Avenue, Dorchester, formerly of 399 Main Street in Charlestown. I have known these applicants for close to 20 years and could not speak more highly of them, their integrity, intellect, and perseverance. These are two highly qualified female leaders who have, who have experience with both the cannabis industry, with Maggie having experience from an attorney perspective, and Nikki, who has successfully started her own real estate business in the city of Boston. For anyone who questions their character or integrity, I would suggest that you spend more time engaging with them. Having been a property owner in the city of Boston for the last six and a half years, the six of those years in Charlestown, I can say without a doubt that these applicants are the kind of individuals that the city of Boston should support and embrace, and they are the future leaders of this city. A main goal of this commission is supporting and advancing the efforts of minority and female-owned applications, for severely underrepresented in not only the Boston cannabis community, but the Boston business community as a whole. So I'd just like to take this time to testify in support of the Heritage Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Chris Bryan.
Hi, it's Chris Bryan. I'm a resident of 10 Parker Street, so about 100 yards away. And as an informal traffic study, I left my house at 3:00 PM yesterday to go down to Barker Hill Street, about half a mile. Took me about 15 minutes. So even if you don't want to pay for it, come to the end of our street, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, it's absolutely gridlock. The traffic, all the Summerville streets. The traffic, all the Somerville streets are oneways or restricted going up. It's a nightmare. There's no parking on Cambridge Street, as you mentioned. There really isn't. There's maybe six spots, and they're mostly taken by Somerville. I've been solvent parking for the orange line. And then that lot that you mentioned for the forty cars would actually put more traffic in our neighborhood. So it's not going to help with the way it's traffic in this area, and it would actually make it worse if you got the parking over there. Secondly, hearing how the council waits this at the beginning, it's a little concerning to see, for lack of a better word, some like the wishy-washy things that you want to do, like the down payment assistance, all that stuff, health insurance, super expensive. I just like, is there a way that you're held accountable for that type of stuff? Like, it's great to put it in now, and if you can do it, absolutely great. But does the board, I wouldn't want them to be swayed by something without seeing financials behind it that would show that that's achievable. As someone that acquires businesses, small businesses now, it's just financially, a lot of that stuff doesn't seem like it will, it can be plausible. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And for the record, as part of, for any license granted by this board, as part of the annual renewal process, each licensee is required to provide a signed attestation of how they are adhering to any commitments or representations made to the board. Calling Daniel Godifro.
All right, good afternoon. Dan Godifro. I'm a real estate attorney here in Boston. I live at sixty-seven Greenleaf Avenue in Medford, and I want to speak in support of the Heritage Club and specifically professionalism and integrity of Nikki John. Nikki and I go back about five years now, which started as strictly a professional relationship, and since progressed into someone that I fully trust and I trust wholeheartedly. Nikki, from right away, when she was starting a real estate business, showed me that she was highly motivated, very organized, and she's actually a fierce advocate for her own clients. She's also very selective in who she introduces her clients to and the people that she works with. And I would expect nothing less from what she does with real estate and how that transferred over to the Heritage Club as well. I also know firsthand that Nikki has cared about Charlestown for a long time now, before she even got involved in the marijuana industry. Nikki, about a year and a half ago, started and founded a BNI chapter based out of Charlestown. She was the president of that chapter for the first year. And as her successor as president, I can only hope to just maintain what she's established and keep it going because she really set a great example for the rest of us here. I also think that bringing the Heritage Club into Charlestown brings much-needed diversity into the area, specifically from a business owner's standpoint. She also does have very specific plans to give back to that community, as she said, with the community trust, and as well as hiring within Charlestown specifically. So I think that Heritage Club has my full support into this area, and I hope that it would be considered by everyone else here as well. Thank you.
Calling Jonathan Martins.
Hello? All right. Jonathan Martins, one seventy-nine Pleasant Street, Attleboro, Mass, a union organizer and representative for the local UFC fourteen forty-five, here in support of the Heritage Club because they have embraced a partnership with the UFCW and are dedicated to raising the bar for cannabis workers in Boston. We support their application and look forward to creating verifiable career pathways in the Boston cannabis industry as they are one of the only applicants to actually sign a labor peace agreement already. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Calvin Romaine. Is the Calvin Romaine present?
Yep, I am here.
Okay, you just muted yourself.
There we go. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of the Heritage Club. My name is Alcali Romaine, a lifelong Boston resident and an advisor for the Heritage Club. Currently head of product at Lantern, a cannabis e-commerce platform headquartered in Boston that facilitates delivery but does not touch or handle any product. And as part of Lantern, I co-lead an incubator program that is aimed at helping social equity businesses and owners just get started in the industry. And definitely, being a resident from Boston, I'm passionate about supporting social equity entrepreneurs in developing their business plans, financial models, and providing access to pro bono resources and mentorship. Nikki John happened to be one of the first people that actually brought into the incubator with a cohort of about six other individuals, all in various roles within the cannabis industry. And I can attest that Nikki John exemplifies what I expect social equity programs are created for. As a former resident of the Lost Village, also living on Parker Street, thirty-five Parker Street, to be exact, I believe that the plan provides some thoughtful solutions and definitely desire to collaboratively support and resolve many of the issues that were brought up by the residents in terms of traffic, safety, and transportation. And I also believe the plan also suggests funding and job opportunities to support many of the community-led building efforts. So I do think, for all these reasons, and definitely a willingness to continue supporting and working collaboratively, I believe that the Heritage Club is a great opportunity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Calling Brian Callahan.
Yes, good afternoon. Brian Callahan, seventeen Parker Street, Charlestown. What I'd like to say at the outset is, I have never seen a community have such little involvement in a major development. The community had its first meeting with the Heritage Club two weeks ago, and a week later, we got notice of this meeting. So I find that it's unusual, let me say that, having gone to hundreds of community meetings in my lifetime. The other thing I find troubling is, and I'll move quickly, is that on the twenty-ninth, the night before they filed their application with you, they told the community, these folks told the community they had no investors. They owned it a hundred percent. So somehow, they found an investor in the middle of the night to fill their application and get on board for a fast-track application. The last thing I want to say is, we had a study done on our street, on Parker Street, five years ago, before the casino opened up, before Assembly opened up, before Hood Office Park exploded, and there were eleven hundred commuter vehicles coming down our street in the morning alone. And they go right back up Brighton Street, which is another residential street. We're a hundred yards from here. The intersection of Parker and Cambridge Street is a disaster. We've had no assistance whatsoever to solve this public safety issue. These folks haven't even considered having, before coming to you, a traffic study. Fifteen hundred vehicles a day coming to you alone, never mind a delivery service. So yes, public safety is number one for the community. Give us some, give us some time to digest before you give them a license, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Yaya Sharma.
Hi. So this is, well, my wife's account, but it's Brandon Collins, on Ken Parker Street. And it's exactly what Brian said. I mean, not having a traffic study done before this, it just doesn't make sense. Just living here, I've been almost hit by a car a couple times. People speed down here. It's backed up literally to like around the corner because, you know, there's traffic on Parker Street. And then vice versa, Brighton Street and these things. So it just doesn't make sense to give a license without a traffic study. The parking lot will send all tons of more cars down here to Perkins Street. There's no, the only way to get Perkins Street is to cut through our street. It's because of Somerville having one-way, residence-only. Google Maps sends them all down our two or three streets. I'm sure everything else is fine and great with the diversity and equity and everything, but without the traffic study, it just doesn't make sense. And it's about public safety. We've even seen a dog get hit by a car here a couple years ago. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you stated that this was your wife's account. Could you please state your full name and your address for the record?
Brandon Collins is my phone name. Ken Parker Street. But my wife's.
My name is Yaya Sharma on Ken Parker Street. I am echoing the same, the same opposition to having this parked up there.
Okay, thank you very much. Calling Paul Parisi.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to thank the Executive Secretary and all of the people who've been managing this process. It's very well-run and fair, and everybody has their chance to speak. And I'd like to speak in support of Maggie and Nikki and the Heritage Club. I've known them for a little more than a year now, and I find them to be honest, hard-working, intelligent, and dedicated to having a successful business in Charlestown that serves the community and gives back to the community. And my father started a bookbinding company sixty-two years ago with money that he borrowed from his sister. And I was a little boy at the time, three years old, and I've grown up with the business, and we've been able to prosper in Charlestown, and we have been in the Charlestown community now for forty years. And I understand bootstrapping, and I know that Maggie and Nikki really don't have any resources, and they're working very hard at using sweat equity and putting all of their own money into this operation. And it's something where they have no choice but to succeed, and they will succeed because of their determination and because of their intelligence and character. And to character, I can say that they're honest as honest as any people I've ever met. I've been in business a long time, and I know an honest person when I see one, and I trust these two women, you know, who've made a deal with me and they have no money behind them. Again, I'm trusting them to succeed and be able to pay their rent because I know they will. So I'd like to, again, strongly support Maggie and Nikki, and I'd like to encourage everybody to give them a fair chance because this is exactly the sort of change that Boston and the world needs, to give young people a chance, to give people of social equity and color and different sexual orientation a chance to get ahead. And this is the chance for Boston to score a home run, and I hope we do it.
Thank you. Calling Wesley Taylor. Is Wesley Taylor present? Calling Cornelia Sutska, and I apologize for your last name. Cornelia, I'm sure I butchered it.
This is Wes. I didn't get the mute. I can wait till, I can wait if you want.
Go ahead, Wesley.
I'm Wes Taylor. I live at seventy-two Perkins Street. I grew up in the neighborhood. That's fifty-five years. I lived through all that they kind of just basically shoved down our throat over here. I have two eight-year-old boys, so a pot shop at the end of our street, it just doesn't work in my world. I kind of, you know, I want to go on record, I oppose this on two fronts. The business itself, and I have some growing concerns as the ownership of the real estate. They do own two large parcels right next door. That's, you know, that's two acres, sixty-five thousand square feet industrial building. The way I see it, this retail goes in, that just opens the world to expansion and production. Just another headache down the road. And just one last comment. Everyone in support, I see it. JP, Dorchester, East Boston, South End, yeah. No one here. So I strongly oppose it. I think that's all I got to say right now.
Thank you. Again, calling Cornelia Sutska.
Hi there. My name is Cornelia Sutska. You almost got the last name right. I'm testifying in favor of the Heritage Club, based out of one fifty-six Porter Street in East Boston. I'm a licensed architect and contracted by the Heritage Club. Nikki and Maggie are extremely passionate about the site as well as the community as a whole. It's really disheartening to hear that their passion can be misconstrued as entitlement. If you know them, you would understand how ridiculous that is. I would like the commission to know that we have a vision to beautify the entire site, not just the building in question. As it stands now, the site is dated, but has tremendous potential. Nikki has always thought about the community in our discussions around design. And finally, I'd like to add that we do plan on using sustainable practices where we can and procure recycled materials. And that's a process that we already started implementing. And personally, I believe that this dispensary will not only provide a retail service for the community, but also serve as a precedent for revitalizing the Lost Village. And for Wesley's comments about it being a headache, yes, in development, there will be growing pains, but I think in the future, I think it'd be a huge benefit for Charlestown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Timothy O'Keefe. Is Timothy O'Keefe present?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Timothy O'Keefe. I live at nineteen Parker Street. Wesley, Anne Marie, Brian, Chris, we all live in this area, and there are families with small children. The traffic is kind of a well-understood issue in this area. And for Heritage Club to approach the community without having done a traffic impact study, I think, was a bit irresponsible. For that reason, I don't support the proposal, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lauren Day requested, but she said she had to leave. Is Randy Horn present?
He testified.
I believe he testified on a previous application. I do not see Randy present. Is Elaine present? Elaine?
Yes, I'm here.
Please state your full name and address.
My name is Elaine Donovan. I live at eighty-five Russell Street in Charlestown. With all due respect, I think a couple of people actually said that we should get to know the owners of the Heritage Club before we make any assumptions on who they are. They put their application in in August. We've not gotten a chance to get to know them, number one. I also want to say that it was stated in the community meeting that there would be fifteen points of sale times ten minutes per transaction over ten proposed hours of operation. That's more like fifteen hundred customers per day and not the five hundred that the Heritage Club proposed at the meeting, not including the delivery traffic, without an official traffic study, by the way. Who will be running the delivery business? How can they guarantee to keep promises that they're making without even a complete team? Who's financing this operation? It's not clear that this team will even be the operators or if they'll sell the license to others. What is New England Development's role in this? Charlestown deserves the truth. They are the owners of the Monkey Hole Mall, Cambridge Side Galleria, as well as many other properties. What is their connection to cannabis? There are many more questions and answers here, and for that reason and as I stated before, I am vehemently opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, any proposed delivery of cannabis to customers from this location would require a new community process and a hearing before this board. Calling Shannon Schultz. Is Shannon Schultz present? Calling Sandra Taylor.
Hi, Sandra Taylor here. Thank you for letting me speak on this proposal. I live at two Parker Street in Charlestown. I've been here for twenty-six years, and two generations before me have lived in this neighborhood, so I know the neighborhood well. I have concerns as my other neighbors with the traffic and the congestion we have in this neighborhood. I'm mainly concerned about the additional parking. I walked through that parking lot. I think that they're going to use. There's a lot of drug activity. I just witnessed that last week. So that concerns me, that that would bring more traffic into the neighborhood as well as some more drug activity possibly. So I strongly oppose this. As much as I'd like to see a woman-owned business in the neighborhood, I don't think this one is a good fit for us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Calling Alex Hollis.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Alex, and I'm a Boston resident. I live at three forty-six Congress Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I want to testify in support of the Heritage Club. I personally know Nikki John and have for several years, and I know her to be trustworthy and community-driven and an overall person of integrity. And after watching several of these, I'm now a hundred percent confident that both of the owners would be fantastic neighbors and would work tirelessly to enrich the community of Charlestown, not just economically, but through their educational efforts, which I'm particularly excited about as a former high school teacher and someone in the education space. And for the last caller, I guess my thoughts around that is, you know, the security brought in by the business there into a place that is mostly vacant now would probably deter a lot of that loitering and drug activity in the area and probably would bring more security. Thank you very much for your time. Again, I'm in support of the Heritage Club.
Thank you. Is James present? James? Is Elaine Donovan present?
I think she just spoke.
I already spoke. Thank you.
I apologize. Is Nancy Lowe present? I apologize. Is Nancy Lowe present? Is Kim Kyle present?
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I just want to say, my name is Kim Kyle. I live at 6 Parker Street in Charlestown. And I know people have, you know, been talking about the same thing, the traffic. But, you know, the one thing is everyone that supports this, they don't live in our neighborhood. They have no idea what it's like to go to work in the morning. They have no idea what it's like to come home in the afternoon. And I think that Chris had said to get from Parker Street to Whole Foods, sometimes it can take you 15 minutes. Traffic-wise, when we did have that traffic survey back from the casino, Brighton Street is the street over from Parker. We have no crosswalks on that street. And my son almost got ran over one day coming home from the bus stop. So they whipped down the corner as early as, you know, 5:30 in the morning. One of the other neighborhood people here, he can probably attest to that. But they whipped through the corner at 5:30 in the morning, tons and tons of cars ignoring, you know, no left turn from 7 to 9 to 4 to 6 in these spots that they're going to be renting out. We don't need more people in our neighborhood. I mean, we can't, it's so congested. There are times that like, you know, we're driving around the block three and four times, even looking for parking spaces for ourselves. So you can't go do an errand, you can't, and we don't, we have one gas station, we have two gas stations in Charlestown. But the majority of gas station they use is right across the street from this proposal. And I would say that's the majority of the gas station that people use, surrounded by a liquor store, a restaurant. Like it is, it's so congested. I don't even want my kids, and there's a bus stop for kids to go to school. So I mean, this is, it's just too much. It's too much. I've lived here for a really long time. Sandy Tale is my neighbor. It's just, it's too much. And I just can't, I just can't, I just really oppose this because it's just someone, and I think someone referenced a dog. That dog got killed in front of my house. Got ran over in front of my house. My kids witnessed that. We just can't have all this traffic. And on a summer day, pre-COVID gridlock, you can't even take a left down the street. There's times you're at that light, you went three times before someone let you through. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Yeah, I had problems, I had problems unmuting. I kept on pressing the button. It didn't work. But now I can unmute myself.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Nancy Lowe. I live at 605 Tremont Street in Boston. I support the community's input in protecting their communities. And I think that their weight should be considered heavily. I think applications should be properly vetted through. The communities need to have more time to vet who's coming before them. I have deep concerns when people from outside the community want to make money from other people's communities where they live and affect their quality of life. I support Counselor Edwards' position on having them come back to meet with her. I think her input is very important. And for them to have a proper traffic study, knowing that this area is heavily congested with traffic, I think it was the most responsible thing to do, to do a proper traffic study. I also want to note that I checked out the Vibe Residential website where both applicants currently work. And it does state that Nikki John is a resident of Brookline. So I didn't hear the Brookline piece when she mentioned her equity qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Mary Boucher.
Hi. My name is Mary Boucher. I live in Charlestown, but I actually work at 40 Roland Street, directly across the street. Heritage Club is projecting approximately 500 customers a day with 25 to 45 employees. And they only have 11 parking spots for most of their business hours, with an additional 12 available to them after 5:00 PM. The numbers just don't work and it'll cause a negative impact on our business as far as traffic flow and illegal parking goes. There's no parking on Carter Street, Roland Street, Stock Street, which surround the building. It's a very small street block. And it's certainly not available on Cambridge Street. Boston Paper Board has been in business since 1915 in the city of Boston. We've been at the 40 Roland Street location for almost 70 years. We're a paper converter and we ship and receive truckloads of paper all over the United States and Canada. The standard size of a 53-foot trailer is 80 feet long and eight and a half feet wide, weighing up to 80,000 pounds when full. The length of Carter Street and Stock Street, which sandwich 116 Cambridge Street, is only about 100 feet long. There's no legal parking on either of these streets. However, on a daily basis, cars pull up to the liquor store or the restaurant on the corner, crippling our trucks in Cambridge Street traffic because they're stuck out on Cambridge Street trying to make the turn. We can have up to six to 10 trucks a day when we're busy. Signage has been put up. It says no parking, but people come and they park regardless. The Heritage Club cannot guess how their customers are going to arrive. They cannot say that 75% of their traffic will arrive by foot, bike, or MBTA. With no parking spots available, people will be illegally parking along Roland Street.
Ms. Boucher, that is two minutes. Please submit any additional testimony in writing. That is everyone who has requested to testify in the chat. Are there any other individuals who have not previously testified who wish to testify regarding this application?
Yes, my name is Mary Supri.
Please state your, yes, we can hear you. Please state your.
Great. My name is Mary Supri. I live at 865 East Fourth Street in South Boston, Massachusetts. And I just want to say that I lived in the Lost Village at 29 Brighton Street. It was my first home. There's always been a traffic issue there. Nikki and Maggie have not caused any traffic issues down there. And there's been multiple studies done on what's going on there. And I honestly believe that Lydia Edwards should probably look into this big time for these people because I know what it is to live there and I know what it is. I sympathize with them. But to blame Maggie and Nikki for wanting to open a company is just crazy. But I also didn't come on here for the traffic, but I know what's going on there. I just want to say, I was truly shocked this morning when I read Lydia Edwards' published word defaming Maggie and her business partner Nikki John. She baselessly called them dishonest and liars and that their work was incomplete and lazy. Clearly, she never watched their community meeting, as it was professional, informative, and well-executed. Even people who opposed their company due to traffic issues at Sullivan Square commented on what a great job they did. No Boston City Councilor should ever tarnish the reputation of two very educated, hard-working role models of this community. A cannabis license, in my opinion, should never, and I repeat, never come to this. The Heritage Club means a lot to these two women. And I assure you, they are highly educated, professional businesswomen who have worked extremely hard on their own personal savings and will treat the Charlestown community with the utmost respect. This company, in my eyes, is so much more than just a cannabis company. Their partnership alone demonstrates that people can accept the differences they find in each other. This company is attempting to bridge the gap between people from all walks of life, which is exactly what our city of Boston is trying to do.
Ms. Supri, that is two minutes. Please submit any additional testimony via, in writing, via email. Calling Phil Silverman. Is Phil Silverman present?
Thank you. I'm counsel to the company. And I just wanted to talk really briefly, just to address an issue with the counselor's comments. The company, I think, would like you to know that they started reaching out to the counselor back in July and really got almost nowhere. In fact, they had one meeting scheduled that the counselor couldn't show up for. The office said they would reschedule. It didn't reschedule, tried about seven more times to get in touch with the counselor. Finally had a meeting about two weeks ago and the counselor didn't have a lot to say, negative or positive, almost sort of like she was indifferent about it. And then all of a sudden, we're finding out, really yesterday through the press, that there are some issues and concerns. I mean, there should have been a back and forth process. And I think it's really unfortunate that it's not, and I'm not sure why. I'm certainly willing, happy to reach out to the counselor tomorrow and have further conversation. But this is an equity applicant that is exactly what the city is looking for in every way. And they've been nothing but professional in the presentation today and community outreach. And so I think that's important. As for the ownership issue, what they're trying to do is be as open with you as they can. At present, the two of them are actually on paper the 100% owners, Maggie and Nikki. They wanted to let you know that they are in discussions to talk to somebody who would provide some financing for about 44% of the company. And that's why they disclosed that. They did not want to be accused of failing to disclose that. So again, I think the counselor is trying to sort of portray that in a light that's really not fair because it was an attempt at being fully transparent. They're looking forward to working here. I think they deserve a license. And I think fairness sort of requires that if the counselor can't engage earlier, you know, then fine, let her engage now. I will reach out to the counselor's office tomorrow. Hopefully, we can have a conversation. They need to move forward to postpone this, pulls them out of the position they have, the beneficial position that the equity ordinance had and.
Mr. Silverman, that is two minutes. Please submit any additional testimony in writing. Calling Andrea Benetti.
Hi, my name is Andrea Benetti. I'm a resident of 10 Parker Street. And I just want to echo my fellow neighbors regarding the traffic concerns. And really, I don't think it's plausible to put this facility in this location without a traffic study. I think, fine, having the results of the traffic study would be really alarming if it was done. And I hope everyone's concerns is really echoed. And I hope this brings the attention to the city of Boston because we feel as though that we really haven't been getting the attention that we deserve here in the Brighton, Parker, the Lost Village area regarding the traffic. I moved in about to this specific area about four years ago. And I can tell you that the traffic has significantly increased dramatically, especially with the parking availability. It's just been dramatic. And, you know, there's a lot of good things going on in the neighborhood right now. There's new construction and people, young people moving in with families. And it's just not the right location. Nikki, they seem like bright women. But this specific location is just not the right location, especially without a traffic study being done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals who have not previously testified who wish to testify regarding this application? Seeing none, and as a reminder, you can submit testimony in writing up until Tuesday, the 17th at 5:00 PM. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have follow-up questions for the applicant?
I do. And I just want to start by saying, we all, our positions on this board, we're appointed by the mayor. And we all bring a certain expertise from our experiences to our positions on this board. And my expertise is in licensing. I'm chair of the licensing board, the liquor licensing board. And I'm executive director of the mayor's office of consumer affairs and licensing. And with that, I bring a special lens to look at the time, place, and manner in whether this is an appropriate license for this location. And I do have some questions, and I will say, I was going to say customer, but it's, community support and opposition, again, I have to repeat, is only one factor. But other factors that play into this are whether or not the application and applicants have taken some of the feedback from the community and worked that into their application. So that's where I'm coming from on this. Traffic, I want to ask the applicants, where are they in their conversations with Greg Rooney? Is it just an initial conversation?
We've had an initial conversation and we're hoping to get on a call very soon. We sent out an email trying to coordinate, but haven't heard back yet with Greg Rooney, Bill Conroy, and Quinn Lennox. Because we want to, you know, we understand, we hear it loud and clear from everybody that traffic is obviously the main issue. I mean, it sounds like it's been a longstanding issue, but we can certainly do our part and, you know, advocate for them. And that's, and that's what we're trying to do. So we are in preliminary conversations, but we should have something scheduled again within the next few days to move further.
Okay. And this board, this board is committed to citing these licenses throughout the city, everywhere in the city. Every neighborhood is going to have them. Every neighborhood is going to have multiple operators for cannabis businesses. But it's very important that the quality of life of the residents in the surrounding area is not negatively impacted. So that is a very important piece of this, the transportation and how that's going to impact the quality of life of the people. I wanted to ask, as far, at the community meeting, there were some questions about ownership. And the two of you answered that you were 100% owners. There was a specific question about, I don't know this company, New England Development, but I think Elaine testified a little bit about who they are. Is that the company that you're talking to? And I also want to preface this by saying, any change in ownership would have to come back before this board to be approved.
Yep. And to Sandra, I've sent every email to both Sheila and Leslie, just letting them know from the point we applied that we didn't have funding yet. So we applied, and this is just me and Maggie, so we submitted that percentage. Then as soon as we got more info, we submitted that percentage. Even for our landlords, we have them submit forms for whatever entities we'll be paying rent to ahead of time, even though nobody asked us to. We wanted to get ahead of that because we don't want to say, oh, how come nobody told us about this? We are still talking to, so we submitted forms for the two that we think are the best fit for us and for our vision. And that's contingent on the HCA. So for where we are right now, yes, we own it, but that will change once we get through the process. We can't say when that date is. So until then, we can't tell people that other people.
And that is very common with these equity applicants, think some of them are required to have an HCA before they can get additional investments.
And it is personal, like situations and not everybody, it is public records, so there's no hiding this. I think everyone in the community should understand that the process requires us to disclose it and that anybody can request this information of any business.
And I just want to jump in again and ask you, in your own words, what your outreach has been to Counselor Edwards' office? And when did that start?
Yeah, so it started on July 13th. And I just, can I read you the email I sent?
Just want the dates.
Yep, July 13th, July 27th. I reached out again on September 8th. I reached out again on the 9th. We had a meeting on the 20, was it the 22nd or?
The 22nd of September.
We followed up the next day to ask for feedback. And yeah, she didn't come to the meeting. We didn't hear back again after that. Once we had our.
Too fast. You reached out to their office, July 13th, July 27th, September 8th, September 9th. On September 22nd, you had a meeting with her staff?
Yeah, and she didn't attend. We followed up on the following day, so that would be the 23rd. And we followed up October 7th. As soon as we found out, our hearing would be the 29th. We followed up again on the 15th, and I gave up. Maggie, this is why it's good to have a good business partner. She said, let's try again. And so she called on the 17th and we got a call with them on the 19th. We followed up on that call, asking what the next steps would be and just basically how we could work with her or figure out what was needed, what issues we might have to get a letter of non-opposition or support. And if there was opposition, which is fine. We followed up on the 30th, the day after our meeting, and we spoke with Ricardo Patron, who was very helpful. And we reached out to him just out of respect. So it wasn't an attempt to avoid the counselor. We wanted to give her space. And so we want everyone to understand that that's never been our intention to disturb her time. And then we reached out again this past Friday when we heard from the board that she suggested that we postpone. And we wish that conversation had been direct to us. So it was indirect communication with her on the 6th. We reached out again on Monday.
One second, one second.
Oh, yeah.
November 6th. And November 6th is when the council reached out to the executive secretary, who is not a voting member of the board.
Sorry, yes, to clarify, yes.
Yep.
And then on that Monday, we found out that she was writing to the press. We got an email from the Patriot, and so we wanted to reach out to her directly. So we reached out again on Monday, didn't hear back. We reached out. I know we reached out yesterday. And I know I reached out today. And so we haven't heard back on any of these. So that's where we are.
And I did have some other questions just from your presentation. How many employees? Someone had mentioned, how many employees you plan on having?
Yep. So the number is going to, 25 to 45 is the total with the delivery license, 20 to 30 dispenser agents. Sorry.
And right now, just to be clear, I'm looking at the board memo. You have 11 parking spots on site, but you're looking to.
We have a lot of parking lots nearby. Yep. And we also have 12 overflow spaces. And those are like contingent use. So we don't want to, we're planning around the 11, but we likely do have an additional 12. We just want to make sure that we're clear with everybody that the 11 is the only guarantee.
Okay. And just, I know your landlord was here. Do you have a lease with him or is it a letter of intent?
We have an LOI and we have an agreement that if we are licensed, that we are able to lease it for five years. We have an LOI, and we have an agreement that if we are licensed, that we are able to lease it for five years.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
No, I'm still, and it could just be me a little unclear on the whole ownership percentages of whether Bedford Investments and Green Dreams are people that you're in conversations with or have said that they'd invest once you had an HCA?
Yep, so these are all verbal commitments. We're still hashing out the terms, so, and those term sheets will also be provided to the board. And I don't know if it's on a capital disclosure form, they wrote that to that effect. This is contingent on the HCA, but the amount is set, the amount is fully set.
The amount, and what about New England Development? What's their involvement?
Yep, so New England Development is not involved, and this is an executive member of their staff who's privately investing, I guess is how to properly phrase it.
That's, what's their name? I think I saw that disclosure. So they're privately investing, but they're not listed here within the investors? Or they're a part of these groups?
So those, the two names that you have there, those are the two parties that we're speaking to on this who are the managers of the LLCs that you're seeing for holding companies.
Okay, and one of them is part of New England Development. That's, that's a connection.
So it's not the company, it's just people who work there who are using.
Right, and were these LLCs developed just to be investing in this, in your organization? Are they well-established?
They're pre-existing, and they've been used to invest in other entities that have already been licensed and are up and running.
Okay, because I did a quick search, and I couldn't really find much on them. If you have any additional information about them, that would be great.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner. Your homes, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
I do, but I think I'd rather reserve them, because I got a feeling they're gonna have to come back. And it's quite a bit that I had to ask about, so I can abstain from my questions right now. I think they're gonna have to, right now, yeah, I got too many to ask.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lombos agrees a question regarding the traffic study, and please correct me if I'm wrong. There has not been a traffic study to date. The applicant has stated that they intend to conduct a traffic study, and the board has been notified by BTD that they are committed to working with the applicant. Is that correct from the applicant?
Yes, that is correct. The reason for that is, as we've stressed, you know, we are bootstrapping this on our own. You know, we don't, we don't have much, so we're just working with what we have, and we figured we'd get through the, you know, through this and then have this study done, so we'll have a better understanding.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, did you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
Well, thank you, not at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, as a reminder, the record will be kept open until Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., and the board will take this matter under advisement. Thank you all. Just give me one moment. Calling HBB Massachusetts, Inc. The proposed license premise is 1937 Beacon Street in Brighton. The license type requested is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of initial application was July 27th, 2018. The date of filing with Inspection Services Department was October 18th, 2018. The date of the community meeting was January 7th, 2019. The presentation team includes Michael Reardon, Melissa Rutherford, Gilli Moda, and John Gray. Is the applicant present?
Yes, thank you, Madam Secretary. This is Attorney Jeff Drago. I don't know if I, we put a notice of appearance, and it should have been in there. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address 11 Beacon Street. With Drago in Tuscana with the attorneys for the applicant, HBB Massachusetts, Inc., also doing business as Happy Valley. What you, if you could go to the next slide, please. Our plan is to go over all of these objectives and try to do this quickly with the time constraints. Next slide, please. The proposed project or proposed application is to open an adult-use marijuana retail location at 1937 Beacon Street in the Brighton area of Boston. Just, this particular location lies within a neighborhood shopping district. We're surrounded by other commercial uses, and we feel that this particular use fits this location best in this particular area. Just some points to note, my client is investing long-term in the community. They are purchasing this site and doing a complete rehab renovation. The building right now is in disrepair. As many of you may know, this is the Marion's Bar location. And some important points to know, we are closing, if this moves forward, we'll be closing down that particular use, which is a full bar. It has a 200-person capacity. It has a closing hour of 2:00 a.m. Obviously, this use, we're proposing retail within a neighborhood shopping district. Closing hour proposed of 9:00 p.m. At best, we're estimating 165 patrons per day. So one of the points we worked with the community was removing this particular application, this bar, that has had numerous violation proceedings against it, to do something more conducive to the neighborhood. Thirdly, and fourthly, we believe because of these reasons, that's, we were fortunate to get the neighborhood support from the civic association for this area, but also the support of both Representative Honan and Representative Moran, and also the mayor's office of service, which we have submitted. Next slide, please.
And just give me just one moment, Counselor. It seems we've lost the connection, so you can go ahead, and I'll catch up.
Okay, just our project team, as was mentioned, I'm, we're not gonna belabor that point, but you'll hear from myself, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa Rutherford, who's our Director of Compliance. If we could pull up, we do have some aerial views I was hoping to show. I don't know if we could stop the time, Madam Secretary, only because they're existing site pictures and views of parking and current conditions.
We will give you an extra minute, just give me one moment.
Thank you.
The time is paused.
Counselor, what slide would you like me to go to?
Next slide, please, Madam Secretary. This is our team, we can go to the next slide, because I touched upon that. Okay, this is, this is an aerial view of the proposed sites. You can see the red highlighted area is 1937 Beacon Street. We have great access for the T for transportation mode. We are directly next to, in our building, the D-line bus terrace, as well as we, running right in front of us is Cleveland Circle, C-line for the Green Line T Station. So we've got great T-access, which leaves patrons right in front of our building. Next slide, please. And this just shows you the commercial component of the area and what's across the street from us, so very much a neighborhood shopping district, and that's why we believe this is conducive to that area. Next slide, please. And this, this shows you sort of the surrounding area. You can just see the rail, the rail line in front of us and the bus terminal and C-line. Next slide, please. We also knew it was important with working with the community of other modes of transportation, so we have a dedicated pickup and drop-off location proposed that we're working with the city and BTD for ride-share for those folks that would like to drive or get dropped off in that area. Next slide, please. And then finally, there's plenty of metered parking, so as you can see, we almost, there's about 90-metered spots in and around our area, plus there's two-hour parking, just a few, about 100 feet up from our location, all that can be used for those folks that wouldn't be using public transportation, but would want to bring cars. For the, we can move on to the next slide, and I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa Rutherford, head of compliance for Happy Valley.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is, again, Melissa. I look forward to speaking to you. If I could have you hop over to slide 13, I would like to discuss our diversity and inclusion plan. You'll see here, it has four key spokes to it. First, at a minimum, we plan to reflect the census data for diversity for the ultimate Brighton area as part of our employment goals. For your information, we have achieved that already here in the Gloucester facility, and we will move forward with that in Brighton as well. Secondly, Happy Valley is committed to working with the minority business enterprises for supplemental business services for the facility. Our source for this information is the boston.gov certified business directory. We will meet as well as exceed the Boston jobs and living wage ordinance. There's no job currently listed for hire at this point at this location that is under $16. And hiring, we're committing to work with our community leaders and focus on hiring minorities, immigrants, and individuals from communities impacted on the war on drugs. And if you go to slide 15, you will see those contacts that we are looking for, for making contact to help us in our endeavors with this. You can also see our commitment to diversity boards such as Honest Jobs, the Minority Professional Network, the Professional Diversity Network, and Massachusetts Diversity.
Five-minute warning.
Thank you. If you could go down to slide 20, benefits for the Brighton community. We will be hiring local individuals subject to CCC approval. We are working with the local community organizations, as well as the police and building commissioners for the security protocols, and we plan to start a beautification of Cleveland Circle by forming a Friends of Cleveland Circle Foundation, and we'll be fixing the fence on our next door neighbor's parking lot. Slide 22, please. This starts the information on our safety and security. All of our staff, all of our security staff, but all of our staff will be full Happy Valley employees. They will go through our security onboarding with our 29-year veteran director of security, John Gray from the police department. We will never not be open without a security detail. We will always have someone at the retail entrance who will identify the IDs of anyone requesting entry to the dispensary. Anyone 23 years of age or younger will be asked to produce a secondary ID as a point of verification. And no one, of course, will be allowed in the store ever who is under the age of 21. Next slide, please, 23. This is the detailed information on our security plan. We have layer upon layer of security using cameras, preventing theft and diversion. We have a variety of information on how we will verify IDs and make sure that everybody who comes into the building is the appropriate age to be there. Additionally, each of our employees will be issued an RFID card, and this card will be tagged to them only, and they will only have access to areas in which they need to be in. Very few people will have access to all areas of the building, and those retail staff who have no need to be in the vaulted area or with the product outside of selling it on our show floor will not be granted access there. And then you can see on page 24, the documentation of our plan for protecting youth from accessing the product. But I'd like to turn it now over to Gilli Moda, our general manager, and he's gonna walk you through our ID verification process.
Thank you, Melissa. Good afternoon, everybody. If you could go to slide 25, please. So our ID verification process continues of four ID checks. Our first ID check will be done outside by security personnel. It has four layers of authentication, with the first layer being an electric scanner using the software Age ID, an alternate light source for verifying holograms on IDs, an up-to-date ID checking guide for out-of-state and passports, a physical inspection by two security personnel staffs as well at all times for all IDs outside. Once the customer, next slide, please. Once the customer enters the vestibule, they will get one more ID check done by the host and reception that was scanned. Next slide, please. Then they will also be checked at the point of sale, and also one more time at fulfillment. That's four ID checks. Next slide, please. Our transportation plan for product, all transportation vehicles by Happy Valley will be all required by the regulations and CCC requirements. Deliveries will be done several times a week. Parking directly in front of 1937 Beacon Street on camera. All product will be brought on camera into the lower facility through the back entrance. Next slide, please. Our transportation of money is done by the Plymouth Armor Group. We do two pickups a week. The Plymouth Armor Group will contact security when they are 15 minutes out. The security personnel will meet them outside. They will escort them to the back of the facility. The general manager will hand off all cash to handle deposits on camera inside of the cash vault. Next slide, please. If you could jump to slide 35, are we talking about the customer experience? And finally, on slide 35, the customer experience at Happy Valley. We are committed to providing our customers experience centered around education as well as customer service. Inside our beautiful showroom, we have a free-flowing shopping experience with designated online shopping express checkouts. We are centered around transparency and safety around compliance and the safety around the products, as well as education, and offering premium cannabis to the city of Brighton. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant? You are muted, Chairwoman.
There you go. Putting on my licensing hat again. Can you describe for me what you're gonna do for out-of-state IDs, especially given your proximity to a college? We find that it's not enough in the liquor world to accept a credit card as a second backup.
I think, just Gilli, I know you talked about the ID checks. Do you guys want to get into a little detail about that?
Certainly, Jeff, thank you. Chairwoman, obviously, we're very well aware of the college community in the area, so we will be asking for a second formal ID for 23 and under, as well as for any foreign individuals. If there is identification that can't be determined to be valid, excuse me, validated is the word I was looking for, the individuals will simply be asked to return at a later point in time with their proper identification or dual pieces of identification. John Gray, our director of security, is here. John, do you want to add any additional commentary with regard to foreign or that under 23 plan?
Yes, the under 23 plan, we were so close to the college campus. Anyone under 23 is gonna have to present a second form of ID that's acceptable to our staff, and it's in compliance. As far as international IDs, we do have reference materials to validate, to authenticate whether a passport is authentic from whichever given region of the world it comes with. And my staff has gone, has gone through pretty extensive training on how to recognize a fake ID or false ID and the right questions to ask. Gilli touched on the alternate light source to highlight the holograms that each state puts on each ID. And like, again, we have a reference that shows each state and each hologram, all their fail safes that they put on those IDs.
Would you be willing to commit to a picture ID as a second form of ID?
Yes, we would.
Absolutely.
And Madam Chair, we did go on the record publicly as well when this questions around the ID checks were raised. So we did, this isn't the first time we did explain that the 23 and under would need backup or turned away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's a scanner you're gonna be using, right? Not just visual ID?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you so much. Great to see you all again. A question about Everest Investments, and I'm sure I can look through your application, but is that, I know Happy Valley is locally owned, it's a Massachusetts business. Is Everest Investments also a locally owned business?
Jeff, I'm gonna turn that one over to you.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that. I think we can certainly get back to you on that question.
Sure, great, thank you so much. And then, and have you, where, what's your position on labor peace agreements? Have you been in touch with UFCW? What's your, in your other, in the Gloucester, I think is the only one that's open, right?
Correct. And we recently approved by this board a few months back.
What, what is your position? What is your position on that? Have you been in conversations?
We have been unapproached at this point in time, Commissioner. We would be happy to have a conversation if they so approached us, but we have not been approached.
And then, just in terms of the diversity goals, I know that, so you reflect the census data, which, you know, given the segregation of our city, it is a significantly white neighborhood, 67%, I believe. So I also understand that, given the location and the segregation, further segregation, it might be a little bit, it is, would, it will be a challenge to meet those goals. But I would just, to exceed those goals, I would just encourage, and I appreciate that you say at minimum, meet them, and I think that that's a realistic plan. But if there are ways that this board can support connections to, for the, to increase those goals, please, I would encourage, I would encourage you to try to do that. But I fully recognize the location and place where it would be is definitely a challenge. So if you came in here saying you'd be, you know, 80% people, I wouldn't, you know, I would know that that would be an unrealistic goal. So I just would like to see that a bit, a bit higher.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I would be delighted to work with yourself and the rest of the commission as well as the contacts that we listed here as we, as we reach out to develop the best possible plan. You know, that's our goal. So, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. This is a recreational license, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm really uncomfortable with this paragraph in your security plan that talks about 21 and 18-year-olds entering your place of business with a medical card.
They will not be able to enter the place of business with a medical card if we are not fully medically licensed. At this point in time, it is recreational only. Our other locations are already medically integrated. And therefore, we are prepared, in the event, to recognize, if we get medical licensure, we are prepared to recognize that there is allowances under medical cannabis law for patients and caretakers who are under the age of 21 and what that actually means. And we simply wish to provide that information to you. As a recreational-only license, 21 and up only, a patient is perfectly welcome to come in and purchase, but they have to be 21 and up. They are welcome to visit our medical locations if they are under the age of 21.
Okay, thank you, but then you shouldn't have that clause in this application if it's not applicable.
We are looking at medical, ma'am, so I just wanted to make sure that you have the information. I apologize for the confusion.
Well, even, even if that's your plan later on during this whole process, it's a little disconcerting seeing that you're right smack dab in the middle of a college community. And we all know college students are very resourceful. They're very innovative. And I don't know, I just feel that, that, I don't think I've ever, I haven't ever seen this in any other, even on a medical application, that a 21-year-old can accommodate an 18-year-old into purchase. Even though I know it's legal, I'm just saying that stands out for me just because of this location. College kids, they are what they are. They will come up with a way to circumvent this.
I absolutely appreciate that, Commissioner. Again, you did see the walkthrough of the ID checks that we have. That is not particularly different for a patient. And additionally, by law, we are required to enter a patient ID into the virtual gateway to record the amount that they purchased. We do that before the purchase in preparation for the acknowledgement of said purchase, but also to verify the accuracy of the card. If their ID number comes up as invalid, can't find, or expired, which does happen occasionally with a valid date on the real card, we very politely walk them out of the business. We're unable to serve them, unfortunately. So we do have the checks in there. Again, my apologies for the confusion. I wanted to present all of the information that our security has been prepared for across our potential body of customers. But I obviously see your points, and I am sorry.
And we can update that, Commissioner, just because it's not applicable at this time.
Not at this time, it is-
You're right. We'll remove that from the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Oh yeah, just one. Good evening. Can you talk a little bit about, in terms of dealing with MBE contractors, certified MBEs? What's your success now in terms of doing that in your other businesses? And how are you projecting that towards the work in Boston?
It's a work in progress, Commissioner. We're still vetting possible applicants for the, specifically for our Newburyport build as well as our East Boston location. So technically, our success rate is zero. We're just not that far along in the process yet, but we have the resources available, and we're reaching out.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner Lombos, did you have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Right, with that, we are going to turn to public testimony. As a reminder, public testimony will be limited to two minutes, and only testimony regarding the application at hand will be accepted. The board will not be accepting testimony regarding the legalization of cannabis. Please limit your testimony to this specific application and its appropriateness. When I call your name, please unmute yourself. Please state your name, address, and affiliation, if any. Before we turn to the general public, are there any elected officials or their representatives who would testify?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Pam Mulaney, representing City Councilor Liz Brayden. Liz, Councilor Brayden has provided the applicant with a letter of non-opposition. The counselor at this time defers to the board's collective expertise as the board carefully reviews both the application and input from community and local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see that Connor Newman from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services had raised his hand. Connor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services, with going record support of this proposal. We conducted a public meeting back January 7, 2019. Since then, we've received a number of public comments that we forwarded to the cannabis board for your determination. These cover a wide range of opinions. We want to call into attention that this application has support from the Local Neighborhood Association, the Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association. It also has support from local elected officials. It has direct access to the T, and it's located in a business district on the edge of the neighborhood. We think this would be a great location. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. And Jen Migliore had stated that she wishes to testify on behalf of Representative Moran and Representative Honan.
Thank you so much, Leslie. This is Jennifer Migliore, 48 Gardena Street in Brighton. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify on behalf of state representatives Michael Moran and Kevin Honan. They submitted a correspondence this morning in support of Happy Valley's location as they believe Happy Valley is the right operator, and they also believe this is the right location. This is further underscored by the BIA's Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association's support of this application as well. We believe Happy Valley is committed to the local community and the beautification of it, and we believe they will be a responsible economic driver to the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or their representatives who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will first call former Commissioner Bill Evans. Commissioner?
Yeah, thanks for having me. You know, I want to let known, I'm speaking for Boston College at 140 Harman Ave, Chestnut Hill. You know, I'm a little disappointed, obviously, in the elected officials who chose to support this location. I think they know the impact that, you know, alcohol as well as some of the, you know, misbehavior in Cleveland Circle has caused over the years. And quite frankly, you know, for everyone to recognize how close this is to the college and knowing how fake IDs are, you know, there's no doubt who we're catering to here, and I have a big issue with that. Everything you read says that marijuana affects 18- to 25-year-olds more than anything while their brain is developing. I've read quite a bit on this, and I'm very disturbed because a lot of these kids are under a lot of pressure. There's a lot of mental health issues around the campuses. And I think opening the door to another drug that will impact these kids and impact their four years on campus. I want to go strongly in opposition to this. We have Jewish Community Center up the street. We have Jewish Young Kids Community School. I think it's a disgrace. I'd take Mary Ann's any day over a marijuana shop, believe me. You know, it's not anything great about the community. We have some great hotels in moving into the area. And I'm just real disappointed that we would even consider such an establishment so close. We have kids across the street living. We have them on Chestnut Hill. We got them all around you. And to think that IDs are going to work, I think you're crazy. So I don't think we should even consider this being so close to the college. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Eva Webster. Is Eva present?
Yes, I am. I just had to unmute myself. Hello, my name is Eva Webster. I live at 15 Orkney Road in Brighton, which is one short block from Cleveland Circle. But our street has a lot of owner occupants and long-term residents who have to put up with neighbors who are busy students. And I just want to register with all decision-makers on this issue that we sometimes have parties that may have as many as 100 busy kids congregating in the backyard, you know, when it's not the dead of winter. And I can only, I am one of the people that would be affected, but many of my neighbors would also be. We didn't know about this hearing until late last night. And we are all extremely concerned because we can easily picture a party of 100 college students, you know, smoking their heads off on marijuana. And that is going to be affecting our quality of life. But, you know, it's hard to rely on support from Brighton-Aulston Neighborhood Association that is on record in support of this proposal because they don't have any members living here. They never ask us for our opinion. They don't care if they negatively affect our quality of life because their members live elsewhere, and they hope that if we get stiffed with this establishment, then they will be spared of it. So I would like to really make sure that the mayor's office doesn't think of the BIA as a body that truly represents us, because they don't. I share Commissioners Evans' concern that, you know, our elected officials are on record in support because we might as well put this establishment right on the B C campus. This area is essentially an entertainment center for B C students. And put yourself in the shoes of college kids' parents who send their kids to school here. And they may end up with their children getting addicted to marijuana, which-
Ms. Webster, that's a little over two minutes. So we're going to ask you to submit any additional testimony and writing to the board. Thank you very much. Calling Jonathan Martins.
Thank you for having me again. Jonathan Martins, 179 Pleasant Street, Out of Borough, Mass. Organizer and representative for UFCW. Can you hear me?
Now, if you can pick up a little louder, that'd be good.
All right, sorry about that. Jonathan Martins, 179 Pleasant Street, Out of Borough, Mass. Representative for UFCW, 1445, organizer there. Just a quick, our support is contingent based upon them signing a labor peace agreement. We haven't been in contact with them and hope that we can start the communications and work with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Ed Gelman.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I just want to let you know that I am a former resident of Brookline. I currently live at 92 Borden Street here in Brighton and have lived here for well over 10 years. I know the both neighborhoods very well since I grew up and live in one of them. I think that this is a great location for it based on the current state of everything that's going on in that neighborhood. I think it's a great fit. You know, I'd rather see this than a bunch of drunk college kids walking out of Mary Ann's, causing all sorts of ruckus. So I'd like to say that I'm in full support of this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling Sean Packard.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Sean Packard here at 370 Chestnut Hill Ave, right there in Cleveland Circle. In the area daily, I don't see any reason personally why it would negatively impact parking, traffic, or any misbehavior in the area, really. I think it's just absolutely ridiculous to be concerned about smokers congregating in groups of 100 and partying together. I think we all know that doesn't occur. And I think we also all know that Mary Ann's is literally responsible for the death of Boston college students in the past. So for Mr. Evans to say that he would prefer Mary Ann's over Happy Valley is almost like saying that he's complicit with the death of Boston college students.
Come on.
Just want to say that I'm here and-
Wrap it up.
Along you, Webster.
All right, we're gonna- We're not going to have a back and forth, sir. Your support is noted. Those are all of the individuals who requested to testify in the chat. Is there anyone else present who has not previously testified who wishes to testify?
Yes, George Havanis. Owner of the Reservoir Wines and Spirits in 1922 Beacon Street in Brighton, Massachusetts for over 30 years, which is direct across the street from 1937, which is the proposed marijuana dispensary is going. I have been asked to speak for others that were unable to participate due to the lack of notice. To begin with, I object to the hearing proceeding at all today. Connor Newman from the Neighborhood Services emailed me last night at 7:30 PM to let me know about today's hearing, that it is totally unacceptable. Our community was on much earlier notice. So I ask you that this hearing be postponed for at least one month so the borrowers and nearby residents and business owners can be real notice and attend the hearing. The last community meeting on this proposal was held on January 2019. The community deserves another meeting to express their views on the proposal. As a representative of many longstanding businesses in Cleveland Circle, we strongly oppose this proposal. We do not know the track record of the applicant Happy Valley prior experience. So we do not know if Happy Valley can trust to be a safe business with problems-free establishment or any kind alone cannabis dispensaries. Mary Ann's has been nothing but ice or in our community and business district for decades. The proposed location is absolutely terrible and will cause major traffic jams and parking issues that would severely negative impact the entire business district for decades to come. When Mary Ann's closed after the case of neglect and problems, our community was relieved. We can't think-
Sir, that's a little over two minutes. We're going to ask that you submit any additional testimony and writing. And as a reminder, the record remains open until Tuesday, the 17th of next week at 5 PM. Written testimony is given just as much weight as in-person testimony. Thank you. Are there any other individuals that have not previously testified who wish to testify today? That we will return to-
Tom Keaty from Boston College. I submitted a response saying that I was going to, myself and Bill Evans from Boston College. I don't know if you have my name.
Go ahead, Mr. Keaty.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Tom Keaty. I live at 23 Ian Sonia Road in West Roxbury. I'm the vice president of government relations and community affairs. And I have to say at the start of this, I am extremely disappointed in our elected officials, especially after the hearing that was held almost, I think, a year ago now, over a year ago, or coming up to a year. The city of Boston has invested a tremendous amount of money with the new playground at Cleveland Circle, the new hotel, the AC Hotel, which is there, plus the local businesses that have worked with Boston College in the neighborhood as it related to Mary Ann's. Boston College has approximately 9,000 undergraduates. 9,000 undergraduates. And the only reason why this facility is looking to open up there is because of Boston College and the undergraduates that we bring to the city. Okay? We worked very hard inciting Mary Ann's with the Cleveland Circle community and our local officials. Boston College spends approximately $100,000 a year on police details to, as it relates to student behavior, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. Since Mary Ann's has been closed, the number of parties in the neighborhood have been reduced greatly. And COVID has, Boston College is back almost at 100% capacity, barring about 500 kids. We have approximately 1,200 students who live in the Cleveland Circle Brighton community. We are so opposed to this, but I have to say, I am extremely disappointed in our elected officials that know how hard this community and Boston College has worked to bring down the student behavior issues to almost zero. And what we're doing now is we're opening up a place. There is no parking there. There's about 30, you know, 30 parking spaces over there. Yes, there is a train stop, but halfway down on that line, the Cleveland Circle line, is Boston University that has about 15,000 students. And so they're going to be hopping on the trolley to come up to the new pot shop. I have to say this-
Wrap it up.
We're asking you to please deny this license. Thank you.
Very much. Are there any other individuals who have not previously testified who wish to testify? No, I'm sorry, I just received a message. Donnell O'Neil. Is Donnell O'Neil present?
Hey, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your address for the record.
My name is Donnell O'Neil, Sr. I'm actually a Brookline resident. My only, speaking in opposition of the ownership of the Happy Valley location, my main issue is that it's not a minority owned company. And I'm hearing they're MSO as well. I don't know if that's true. I just feel that it's personally, it just, the purpose of allowing small business people, entrepreneurs who don't have a lot of capital and people who'd support them to open up. I feel along MSO, you're not giving the opportunity, personally speaking, you're not giving the opportunity to a small business to open up if Happy Valley gets approval. So I guess my only issue is, is that it's not a minority-owned business. And I'm having a, you know, you guys can do what you want to do in Boston. I just feel it's just not, I think, an opportunity to a small business entrepreneur is- It shows to the community at large that you do care about the small people. Allowing Happy Valley to move in regardless of what elected officials support or don't support them. I feel that it's not, it's not okay to give-
Mr. O'Neil, that's a little over two minutes. We would ask that you submit any additional testimony in writing.
Madam Secretary, just, what's MSO?
I'll let Mr. O'Neil answer that.
Sorry, I just wanted-
Mr. O'Neil, would you like to unmute yourself?
Sure, sure. Sorry about that. Multi-state operator.
Oh, okay.
Multi-state operator. Business is, no worries, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neil. With that, we're going to return to the Chairwoman and the Commissioners for any follow-up questions. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any additional questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any additional questions?
I don't have any questions for the applicant. I think I am concerned about what seems to be the lack of notice to the neighborhood about this, about the hearing. And I just, and I know that, you know, things move relatively quickly. And perhaps it was sent and not received. But if we could make sure that they have the email to send testimony to, make sure that that, maybe we put it in the chat or something. I feel like there might be a number of people who wanted the opportunity to speak and just for scheduling purposes, or because it went out late last night from ONS, that they weren't able to make it. So I just want people to know that they can, I know we reiterated a lot, but it just, I'm getting the feeling that in particular in this one, the community didn't feel like they were given proper notice.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Smith?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lombos. With that, seeing no more questions, we will again put the email, Jasmine beat me to it, the email is in the chat. You can submit correspondence via that email and all will be taken under advisement. We're going to take a brief two-minute recess before we take up the next item. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to the next agenda item. Calling Rooted in LLC. The proposed license premise is 2177 Washington Street, Roxbury. This is an application for a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of the initial application was September 10, 2020. The date of the filing with the Inspection Services Department was July 20, 2020. The date of the community meeting was September 15, 2020. The presentation team is Brian Keith, Michael Ware, and Derek Small. There is a buffer zone conflict with an existing cannabis establishment, and the applicant has submitted the required buffer zone statement pursuant to the Board's Rules and Regulations. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
All right. As a reminder, you will be given 10 minutes. Jasmine Nguyen in with the board will give you notice at minute five and minute eight.
Awesome. Thank you, Leslie. Chair Joyce, Commissioners, and thank you everyone for attending this evening. My name is Brian Keith, co-founder and co-owner of Rooted in Roxbury. And I'm being joined today by several members of our team, including co-owners Joanne Keith, Rokia Begum, and Solomon Chowdhury, as well as our security consultant, Michael Ware of Ware Security, and Derek Small, our legal counsel. Today, we will be sharing background on our company and our experience, as well as our proposal for recreational cannabis retail business at 2177 Washington Street in Roxbury's New Bean Square. My goal today is to write as much detail as possible, but to be succinct enough to fit with this detail within our 10-minute timeframe. All that being said, let's get started. Next slide, please. I'm a big believer that the easiest way to get an understanding of what a company stands for is by reading their mission statement. So here's ours. To build a community-conscious cannabis business that engages, serves, and benefits members of the Roxbury community through financial success and social responsibility. This is who we are. This is what we stand for. This statement is a guidepost for everything we do. About three years ago, as we realized that legal cannabis was on its way towards becoming part of the fabric of Main Street businesses in Massachusetts and in the city of Boston, four of us came together to develop a plan that could prevent Big Pharma and out-of-state corporations from coming into our neighborhoods to profit from legalization of cannabis. After many discussions with members of our community, one thing emerged as the biggest concern. People feel this industry will only benefit the few, and that many in the community would love to have the opportunity to be part of this new industry. We believe that the people of Boston should be the ones to participate, own, and invest in cannabis businesses in the city of Boston. And that's how the idea of Rooted in Roxbury evolved, and we cemented our mission. Next slide, please. My wife, Joanne, and I, and our partners and co-owners, Solomon and Rokia, formed Rooted in Roxbury in March of 2019. All four of us are longtime Boston residents with deep ties in the community. Joanne and I live in Roxbury off Dudley with our son August. Solomon and Rokia live in Dorchester off Humboldt with their daughter Aria. Next slide, please. While being local is a positive attribute, we couple this with a strong track record of running successful neighborhood-based businesses and have extensive experience in the operation of regulated industries and managing thriving retail operations. Solomon and Rokia have owned and managed businesses in Boston and surrounding cities for more than 20 years, including the Shanti Indian Restaurants with locations in Dorchester, Rosedale in Kendall Square, the Dudley Cafe in Roxbury's New Bean Square, Om Lounge in Harvard Square, and Naga and Moxa Restaurant and nightclub in Central Square. Over the years, our team has created sought-after destinations that are tailored to the unique attributes of each neighborhood, garnering national and local awards and recognitions. Next slide, please. We wanted to be thoughtful, creative, and innovative regarding the manner in which we finance this project, all the while ensuring we are providing the community, and specifically communities of color, with the opportunity to receive positive impacts from cannabis. To that end, we created an investment model with, where with as little as $1,200 and as much as $62,000, members of the community can have a seat at the table in a billion-dollar-plus industry. And let's be honest, when billion-dollar opportunities come around, people of color are not included until there is a quota to fill. We are doing it on the ground floor. Our investment team is 100% people of color, 51% women, and 100% Boston-based. If you recognize the plot points on the map, it's because it's your community, and our investors are your neighbors. Next slide, please. Our proposal for Washington Street, next slide, please, is to bring 2,500 square feet of adult-use cannabis retail space to 2177 Washington Street. The site was formerly New York Fashion. Next slide, please. We would be looking to operate seven days a week, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, with reduced hours on Sunday. We will use line management, order-ahead capabilities, and virtual queuing to keep any formed line off of Washington Street. We will also have dedicated space inside of our location specifically for that purpose. Next slide, please. Our location will be kept secure by Michael Ware of Ware Security. The slide lays out Mike's credentials and notes some of the clientele who currently contract with him, from small to institutional. Mike is with us here today and can answer questions specifically and in greater detail during Q and A. Next slide, please. Mike Ware will lead our security efforts and will ensure our location and customers are safe at all times. As an accredited special police officer, Mike and his team will work to enforce all applicable laws, ensure traffic is moved along and not allowed to idle, and will liaise directly with Boston police, whose radios he is directly tied into. Boston police will also have live access to what is right now 18 interior and exterior cameras. Next slide, please.
Five-minute warning.
Thank you. We have the advantage of living in Boston, a city that has ample options for transit. Our proposed business is located in the heart of New Bean Square, steps from the New Bean Station bus terminal. The Blair Lot, an 80- to 100-space parking lot, is located directly across the street for customers who choose to drive. And we will be working with ride-sharing companies to designate drop points away from Washington Street in order to keep this transit lane clear. As we move through the presentation, you will note that we have a good neighbor policy. Someone double parking to just run in and grab something real quick will not be served. Next slide, please. We have an aggressive hiring plan, which we are confident we can meet or exceed. We will commit to hiring at minimum 80% Boston residents, a minimum of 50% Roxbury residents, with 51% of those hires being people of color, and 51% of those hires being women. We will hit these metrics with our management staff as well as regular line employees. Next slide, please. Our employees' wages will be competitive and beyond what is considered a living wage as defined by the city of Boston. In addition to the benefits mentioned on the slide, we will create a profit-sharing program where employees will benefit, will receive a financial benefit based on location success. We will be Cory-friendly with a preference for those with cannabis infractions. Next slide, please. We believe that our customers are extensions of us, and we want to be good neighbors to this community. We expect the same from our patrons. We will institute a good neighbor pledge, which first-time customers will be required to sign. Violations of the policy will see those customers banned from future purchases. Next slide, please. Being a good neighbor also means being committed to the community in which you will sit. We are committed, and as a show of this commitment, we are committed, and as a show of this commitment, we will create a community advisory board made up of local cannabis supporters as well as cannabis critics, ensuring that we always hold ourselves to the highest standards. The board will also oversee a community benefits fund, and will have autonomy to direct those funds to local worthy causes. Our most exciting program is what we plan to do to support local businesses in New Bean Square. Being a resident of the area, I take no pride in saying that New Bean Square is the worst-performing Main Streets District in Boston. To help change this narrative, we will create a coupon program, which will incentivize our customers to visit local businesses in the square and spend money with them. Simply put, if you shop with Rooted in Roxbury and then shop in a participating New Bean Square business, you will receive a discount on your day's purchase from that business. The discount will be covered by Rooted in Roxbury. We anticipate the program will generate approximately $400,000 in new revenues for New Bean Square businesses. Next slide, please.
Two-minute warning.
Thank you. As much as cannabis proponents would love to believe it, cannabis is not universally loved. It is not an easy lift to get regular, everyday folks, community leaders, or elected officials to publicly support these endeavors. That said, we believe our efforts and commitment to bring cannabis to New Bean Square in a respectful, responsible manner is why we have been able to receive letters of support from many local black-owned businesses, the Local Neighbor Association representing New Bean Square, 264 residents primarily from Boston, with 136 specifically from District 7, and most prominently, Boston City Council President and District 7 City Councilor, Kim Janey. We view this as a testament to our commitment to this community. Next slide, please. As we begin to wrap up, please find a brief timeline with a proposed opening date of August 21. Conservative, but we also recognize the process can be long as the state works to get it right. Next slide, please. In summary of all discussed today, you can see we anticipate 400K in tax revenue, which is separate from the 400,000 we discussed for the New Bean Square coupon program. 25-plus local jobs- 25-plus local jobs, and a market intentionality of keeping the revenues, jobs, and wealth creation within Boston's communities of color. With that, I look forward to taking your questions, and thank you so much for your time. Under 10 minutes. I did it.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate that. Before we turn to questions from the chairwoman and the commissioners, I will ask Attorney Chalo White to testify regarding the equity certification. Attorney White?
Thank you. I was able to certify Rooted in Roxbury as eligible for participation in the Boston Equity Program through documentation submitted by Ms. Rokia Begum, sorry if I mispronounced her last name, and Mr. Solomon Chowdhury. Together, they own 51% of the beneficial interest in the company, with Ms. Begum owning 45% beneficial, or being the 45% beneficial interest holder, and Mr. Chowdhury being the 6% beneficial interest holder. As Mr. Keith stated in his testimony, sorry. They are a married couple, so most of this they are able to do together. So the first criteria under which they qualified is a person who has resided in an area of disproportionate impact for the last five of the past 10, for at least five of the past 10 years. They both provided documentation which established that they lived on Moreland Street in Roxbury from 2013 through 2019, and that they are currently residents of Dorchester. Both areas were within census tracts designated as areas of disproportionate impact by the CCC. Additionally, they both qualified as persons who have resided in the city of Boston for the past seven years. Again, they provided documentation of residency in Boston dating back to 2013, which was seven years ago. And both Ms. Begum and Mr. Chowdhury self-identified as Asian and being of Bengali descent.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Joyce, or any of the commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the equity certification?
I do not.
None. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Keith, can you just describe, I know you mentioned it in your presentation, but I'm concerned with like, how are you going to prevent a line? How much space inside is set aside for people queuing, so they're not on the sidewalk?
It's somewhere between 300 to 400 square feet. If you want to pull that back up, it's the area at the bottom right-hand corner of the diagram.
Okay.
What we would do is snake the line within that area.
So, thanks, Leslie. That's okay. How many people do you think will actually be able to fit in that line?
No, it's a good question. We anticipate, assuming we're out of COVID at that time, we anticipate we'd be able to get between 10 and 15 people in that reception area down there. But we'll also be using technology so that lines don't form. Like I mentioned, we'd be using a virtual queuing system, as well as order-ahead capabilities, so that instead of queuing within the building or on Washington Street, we're going to be encouraging people to shop and use New Bean Square, spend businesses locally, participate in the program, which will all receive discounts, and they'll also support those local businesses. Once we queue them, we give them like a five or 10-minute window where their spot in line comes up. That's when we would want them to head to the store.
Okay.
That way, using technology, we keep the line down and not on the street.
Okay, thank you. Very innovative.
Thank you.
Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your presentation. In terms of the building, what is the, do you own the building? Are you leasing the building?
We do not own the building. Our plan is to lease the building. We currently have a letter of intent with the landlord.
Okay, and with the understanding that it will be a cannabis business in there?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then my last one that I've been asking everyone is, have you been in conversation with UFCW 1445 about a peace labor agreement?
No, we have not. We didn't know that that was an option until just today, but it's something that we look forward to having the conversation with them.
Sure, sure. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not, because the chairwoman asked him the exact question that I was going to. The only thing I do have a concern with, Mr. Keith, is the liquor store still next door?
Simon's? Oh, yeah, they're still kicking.
Okay, what are, I would think I would like Ware Security to come up with maybe a plan so those two establishments don't overlap, if you get what I'm saying?
I do. I completely understand.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Keith, the record will be kept open until Tuesday, the 17th, at 5:00 PM. So as long as you submit before then, we'll make sure to supplement the record. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Keith, the city has spent an inordinate amount of time thinking about how to activate New Bean Square. We're projecting a full employment, jobs. So the first question is, are you going to make a difference? How's your business going to make a difference to activate that square?
So to answer that first question, we anticipate at minimum bringing about 300 new customers per day who've never been to New Bean Square. We've come up with that number because, like I mentioned in the presentation, my partner also owns Dudley Cafe, and pre-COVID, he was getting 300 tickets per day on a slower day. So we think that, you know, with cannabis, we can also, we can match those numbers and likely exceed those numbers. With our coupon program, you know, we're anticipating if 25% of the people, those 300 customers, spend, decide to take advantage of that coupon program, that's 75 customers. If they spend on average $15, that's where we come up with the 400, if they spend on average $15 in the square, that's where we come up with that $400,000 number. So that's $400,000. That's likely never been to New Bean Square, has never had a reason to go to New Bean Square. We don't think that we're going to be the answer to all of New Bean Square's woes, but we do think that we can start the conversation, start people actually giving it a look and saying, oh, look, there's Suya Joint, there's Fugel Bookstore, there's Silver Slipper. There's all these great restaurants that if you live in Roxbury, you know and enjoy them. But if you believe all the stigma that you've always heard about Roxbury, you never give them a shot. So we're giving people, we're giving the businesses, and we're giving our customers a reason to give those businesses a shot, while they're at the same time, you know, looking to spend with us. The goal in setting this up was not to cite our location in New Bean Square and then just have our customers come visit us and then leave. We wanted to make sure that we were giving them a reason to come to New Bean Square and then stay in New Bean Square. And we think that that coupon program is, you know, a good starting point to do that.
Just second and last question. So you're not far from Meliakas and the Methodist Mile. You're right at the bus station. How are you thinking about mitigating certain population?
No, I completely understand the question, and, you know, if you were in New Bean Square before March, before COVID started, you recognized that there was an issue just because of our proximity. With COVID, with less people conducting commerce, the issue has only gotten better. Excuse me, sorry. The issue has only gotten worse. It has not gotten better. Excuse me. We think that by bringing foot traffic back into the square, those individuals who are there, the element that you're referring to, they're there because there are no eyes on New Bean Square right now. They're there because there's no one demanding that things change. You know, if we're bringing 300-plus, 300 minimum customers per day, that foot traffic is going to drive additional eyes, additional presence. That individual, the element that you're referring to, does not want to be places where people are and where people are watching them. So it's not the plan for the city. The city needs to come up with its own comprehensive plan, but it's a plan to keep that element out of New Bean Square and move them along. But like I said, I can't, we can't solve the opioid problem in the city of Boston. The city has to have to come up with a comprehensive plan, as well as the state, to solve that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lombos, first would like to thank you for setting such high diversity and inclusion goals. And then as a question, given that the owners, being yourself, have such a strong history of neighborhood businesses like Dudley Cafe and Shanti, could you hear what feedback employees might give about, might give to the board about what it is like working at these establishments, so that the board can have an understanding of how this new business might be like for workers that you're hoping to recruit and provide opportunities to?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry. Can you say that one more time?
What do you think, given the existing businesses that you and your partners own and operate, what do you think your employees there would say to the board about the way you run your establishments?
Oh, okay. I got it, got it, got it. No, I think that they would only say wonderful things. And, you know, I think one of the telling things about how we run the businesses currently is that we're already meeting and exceeding the Boston residency, the people of color hiring. We're already exceeding those metrics, you know, in the current existing businesses as they currently are. And, you know, we didn't have to be asked to do that. That's just kind of how we run those businesses. We hire locally, and if you've ever been into Dudley Cafe, you recognize that the people working at the cafe look like the people that live in the neighborhood, because many of them do live right here in Roxbury. That's going to be our goal, as I stated in the presentation. That's going to be our goal for Rooted in Roxbury.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for not understanding at first.
No, no worries. We will now turn to public testimony. As a reminder, testimony will be limited to two minutes. You will be muted at the two-minute mark. You can also submit written testimony, and the record will remain open until Tuesday, the 17th, at 5:00 PM. When I call you, please unmute yourself and state your name, your address, and affiliation, if any. If you have not already done so, please utilize the chat function to indicate that you would like to testify. We will first begin with elected officials or representatives of elected officials. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify?
Yes, good eve, almost evening, Chair members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted in a butters meeting on September 15, 2020. 264 support letters. I'm sorry, I'm from, let me start over. We received 264 support letters from residents, the Roxbury Main Streets and Council President Kim Janey. We did receive opposition from the New Bean Square Coalition, who believes a marijuana facility should not be in the business district of the New Bean Square. Just a quick statement about the mask cast comment. The city is actively working with businesses in New Bean Square to help mitigate the issues in the area, and we look forward to continuing those efforts. We have no further questions for the applicant, and we'd like to go on record just for the project.
Commissioner Holmes, I think, had a quick question.
I did. I just missed what she said about the New Bean Square. Oh, I don't know if I heard it right, about the New Bean Square Merchants Association. What did you say about them?
No, I said that, it said the Roxbury Main Streets, we have a support letter from them. The New Bean Square Coalition reached out, yes, I'm sorry, with a letter stating that they don't believe a marijuana facility should be in the business district of the New Bean Square. So I just wanted to make note of, even though we have over 260 support letters, we did have opposition from that group who believes that there just shouldn't be a marijuana facility in the business district of the area. However, we do have overwhelming support, including the Roxbury Main Streets, with a collective of small businesses in the area, and we'd like to go on record just for it.
Can I ask, who is a, I don't know, is that appropriate, Madam Secretary?
Absolutely.
Can I ask who comprises this coalition, the New Bean Square Coalition?
Yes, so I know Siddiqui Cambon is the, yeah, yep, and he has, I don't know everyone's name off the top. I can get that over to you, but he.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or individuals representing elected officials who wish to testify regarding this matter? Seeing none, I will turn to the chat, and please be patient, as there were a number of individuals who requested to testify at the beginning of the hearing. So I just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. Calling Marilyn Chase. Is Marilyn Chase present?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, for this opportunity to speak. When the marijuana legislation came up on the ballot in Massachusetts, I actually campaigned at my polling site on Election Day in Ward 12 against the legislation. And my neighbors very respectfully dismissed me. When the legislation passed, I thought it was important that if we, in fact, were going to have legislation allowing recreational marijuana, that was important for people in my community, particularly since we voted overwhelmingly in favor to not just be consumers, but to also have an economic, get some economic benefit for them. So I come, my husband and I come in support of Rooted in Roxbury. We are both investors. We decided to invest because we appreciated the opportunity for residents of Roxbury to invest, and that there was a priority to limit investment to people who live in Roxbury, Dorchester, and Mattapan. We also very strongly endorse and support the notion that there will be a benefit in terms of developing businesses and supporting businesses in New Bean Square, that it's not just this business and its investors that are going to benefit, but that there'll be opportunities for employees, as well as other businesses to benefit as well. So we come strongly in support and encourage the board to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling, I'm sorry, Ms. Chase, could you please state your address for the record?
I'm sorry, 47 Hutchings Street in Dorchester.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in really quick. I had to make an amendment. So the Roxbury Main Streets supported the industry of marijuana in New Bean Square, not necessarily applicants. So they just sent a message, wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Calling Joel Richards. Is Joel Richards present?
Yes, yes, I am. Thank you. My name is Joel Richards. I live in Dorchester, One Parkman Place, Dorchester, Mass., 02122. Yes, and I'm here to speak in favor of Rooted in Roxbury. Just for the main point that I think they stated themselves, but I just want to reiterate, they believe in hiring local workers and developing the local economy. I think a lot of times we have to force businesses after they open or after they're successful to do that. And since they have a practice of doing that already in their current businesses, and then they already opened with that kind of mindset, that's important to me when it comes to an industry like this. And the fact that they're already a community-minded is, once again, we know that because they ensured all investments were local and people of women and color. So they don't just see this as a chance to make money, but that's a chance to build economic wealth within the community for many people, and people of color and women. And those are people that have constantly been disenfranchised by our city, our state, and our nation. So the fact that they have that kind of mindset gives me an incredible amount of confidence to support them, because I know they'll continue that, and that it'll be a benefit to the neighborhood. So I speak in favor of Rooted in Roxbury.
Thank you very much. Calling Ian Loud. Is Ian Loud present? Calling Cheryl Antoine. Cheryl present. Calling Diane Wilkerson.
I am here, Madam Secretary. Thank you. I was hoping you'd see my explanation. My name is not Isaiah Barry. My nephew has apparently, kind of, anyway, it's me. I actually put my information in as well, Diane Wilkerson. I live at 22 Burrell Street in Roxbury and have been involved in at least the support for Rooted in Roxbury in the identification of a location for this. So I just want to say very quickly a couple of things. You've already commented, or one of the commissioners, and it may have been the chairwoman, commented about the uniqueness of some of the ways in which they are approaching this. Not only the incredibly local and diverse in terms of occupation and station of the investors, but also the clear indication of the care that they have put into making this through at every level. That in and of itself, the fact that people who have never seen themselves as business, as business owners, are in this space. The second, for me, for those of you who know, this to me is just, just makes sense. I have spent the better part of my adult working I have spent, um, the better part of my adult working professional life. Focusing on the creation of economic development opportunities for black people as the one and only means to addressing income disparity, income gap, poverty. We've tried every different thing. We tried building housing. The only way to change the dynamic of, of poverty is to put money in people's hands. And, um, given the history of the incarceration, mass incarceration, the price that black communities in particular and Latino communities have paid. There isn't any better place and more appropriate place for a dispensary, uh, than in the business center of Roxbury. And so some would argue that it's not, it is the most appropriate place. If we can't figure out a way to do that in the center of that business place, then I think shame on us. I totally support this. I, I.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilkerson, we're a little over two minutes. Would you just mind?
I'm done. I just, I heard somebody talking. That's why I stopped. I thought that was you. I'm done. I support.
Thank you. I think somebody was not on mute or something, but we heard you. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a reminder, again, if everyone could please mute yourselves unless, uh, you are being called on. Calling Jonathan Martins. Jonathan, are you still present?
Hello? Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Thank you for listening to me again. Jonathan Martins, 179 Pleasant Street, Attleboro, Mass. Representing UFCW 1445. Thankfully, now that they know that reaching out to us for an LPA is a thing, hopefully we can hear from them soon and we can work together. Right now, our support is just contingent upon that LPA. Thank you.
Jonathan, could you send me your information privately in the chat and I'll, uh, I'll reach out to you?
All right. Yeah, I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Kai Grant.
Hi, everybody. This is Kai Grant. Um, the, to the chairperson and board members, thank you for this opportunity. I am actually in support of Solomon and Brian, um, and their Rooted Roxbury business. I am myself a business owner and we're at 2136 Washington Street, which is directly diagonally across from the proposed space. What we've experienced, uh, as the newest young institution inside of Newberry, Nubian Square. Is that even with 81 marketplaces, 73 events, three festivals with over 300. Small and micro businesses popping up in our space in over 30,000 footsteps that come to our business. And multiplying into the square, it's still not enough. And so we need another business that will add an extra heartbeat to the struggling district, which used to be second to only downtown Boston. And it's not only important to add another business that has a pulse and has positive activity. With a plan for multiplication, but it's also to recog, uh, it's also important to recognize the fact that this is. These are folks that live inside of our community. These are folks that have African descent. And these are folks that are currently operating as we speak. And so there's a track record there. In addition to which, a way that we can hold them accountable to the community benefits plan. We want to be able to be neighbors with folks that are very cognizant of what the problems are and can solve them with us. So we're fully in support of this and we need to see cannabis transform our community the way it should.
Thank you very much. Calling Jay Cook.
Hello, everyone. Um, thank you board and Madam Chair. My name is Jay Cook, 105 Howland Street, Boston, Mass. I want to say in full support of Rooted in Roxbury, actually very proud of Brian for going through the screwing process. In addition to what he has done just in business. Brian, myself and an onslaught of Boston residents were the ones that spent the countless hours over the course of the year writing the Boston ordinance to create equity. So not only is he fighting for his business, but he's also fighting for the other businesses. So that way we do have equity, not only in Roxbury, um, but in Boston. And just a thought, cause I feel like this kind of goes out of everyone's minds. It's only black and brown people that actually have to go through the process of proving that they're black and brown people to get into this industry. We're the only ones that have to go through the social equity program and the economic empowerment program. To once again prove that they are black to be able to open these businesses and say that they're the ones that want equity. And whether that's fair or not, I won't get into it, but extremely proud of just their hard work that they've done. Not only for themselves as applicants, but for the other applicants that are also be coming before you all. So thank you for support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Keith, calling Jessica Keith. Alright, I'm not seeing Jessica. Calling Carrie Anne Gordon. Is Carrie Anne Gordon present?
Yes, I am. Sorry, let me mute. I am in support of Rooted in Roxbury. I have known Joanne since high school when we went to BLA together. And I've also known Brian Keith since about we were 18. And I have to say their integrity, their innovation. And just tenacity are the reasons why I support it. And I feel it would be a boon to Dudley's Nubian Square. And because there hasn't been really a lot of good changes since we were in high school. And just increasing the foot traffic is really important to get money into the community. I live at 27 Oakwood Street, Mattapan, Mass. 02126.
Thank you very much.
What did you say? I can't hear you. Sorry.
I said, thank you.
Okay, great.
Calling Jennifer Wu.
Can you read him?
Is Jennifer Wu present? Calling Scott Kirkwood.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for, uh, joining tonight. Thank you, members of the board, you know, everyone else. My name is Scott Kirkwood, located at 1904 Washington Street. Uh, my company actually owns and manages, manages a building. Within short walking distance to the proposed businesses and our offices are also, uh, only a short walking distance away. I am in full support of, uh, a cannabis dispensary, um, owned, uh, entirely by black and brown persons from the neighborhood. Um, and on top of the obvious ownership and job creation components, I just think in general the square needs it. I mean, no one wants to walk down, you know, really nice commercial corridors like Washington Street and see shuttered commercial spaces and vacant infill lots. Businesses like Rooted in Roxbury are progressive, um, and so are Roxbury and Boston in many cases. And I'm confident, uh, in, uh, this team's ability to drive traffic to other nearby businesses like restaurants, uh, clothing and apparel retailers, uh, and more. Especially in light of, uh, the current health epidemic, uh, in Roxbury and throughout the rest of the country. You know, what we're all facing, uh, businesses like this will absolutely help contribute. To the revitalization of Nubian Square and other business districts like it that are super important. Um, and these are places that were also super hardly hit. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Calling Connie Forbes.
Good evening. Hi, my focus is policy and procedure in this regard. We'd like to have transparency in who are the, um, associates, controlling persons and investors in this project. As well as, um, I know that we have residents who are concerned about one of the owners in the background, um, and they would have sent letters in for that. And the last point is this building, um, does not allow for this type of business. And if it were to move forward, um, they would be, um, forced to pay $12 million to pay off the loan that the owner of the building is responsible for. Because the, um, it's backed by a federal credit union and this cannot move forward with them being the mortgage holders. Thank you.
Regarding the disclosed beneficial interest, you can reach out and make a public records request to the board. But the applicant has provided all the requested disclosure forms. Uh, the board cannot speak to the federally backed, uh, mortgage that is not within the board's purview. But thank you for your inquiries and again, you can request any information. Uh, all the application documents are public record.
Thank you.
Calling CB. Is someone who.
Hi. Hi, uh, my name is Casey and, um, although I am not a resident of, um, West Roxbury or, um, Nubian Square community. I live at 18 Glencoe Street in Brighton, um, part of the city of Boston. I just wanted to, um, voice my support of Rooted in Roxbury, uh, because, uh, first, a couple of different factors. I believe that the business plan that they've laid out is, um, extremely thorough and thoughtful and very well constructed considering the area. And its opportunity for economic and, um, economic growth and support of other local businesses. Um, and from what I've learned about them so far, um, I do anticipate only positive, uh, results yielded and positive impact in the community. I think that it's really important that we continue to invest and support in businesses owned and operated by black and brown individuals. Especially in thriving urban communities. And to deny them an opportunity to move forward would be a step back in terms of equity, um, hugely. If we as a city don't provide these types of opportunities, um, like we want to do with Rooted in Roxbury. It ultimately will go to someone else, um, a, a larger company with more power and established presence in the global cannabis community. That isn't representative of the black and brown community. And, um, I just think in terms of equity, this is something that really needs to, um, move forward with. And finally, just because I have sat in on a couple of other calls and presentations, um, and listened to feedback from, um, certain individuals in the community. I would like to say that with respect, um, I think it's important that we, um, as a community. Try to move on from the negative connotation of cannabis and, um, the closed minded approaches to this and other natural industries. Will really only prove detrimental, um, in the long run. And I think we need to also understand that cannabis isn't opioids and it isn't meth. And that apart the solution here would really lie in, um, more education and public education.
Thank you. That, that, that is time. Could you please, um, state your full, put in the chat your full name for the record, just so we can make sure it's in, uh, in our records. Calling James. Is James present? I do not see James. Calling Clifton Braithwaite. Good.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you, Madam Secretary, and hello, everybody. At GLO Solutions for Humanity, we're totally in support of the cannabis coming in our community. Men that look like me, black and brown, have dealt with this situation on the jail aspect. And this is a great opportunity for people to see that people who look like us can run a effective company. And just like, um, um, former Senator Diane Wilkinson mentioned, it's the heart of Boston. It was only second to making, um, financial gain to downtown Boston. And this is a great time for us and our community. But the trials and tribulations that we have to go over, like someone else mentioned, to get past this burden. And most of the times it's people who look like us that are fighting ourselves. We need to stop that in this, on our community. This is a great opportunity for us to build equity in our community and we're 100% behind it. And I have to give kudos to, um, Dudley Cafe for the opportunity that they have given us. We have registered over 585 voters in the last four weeks before the election. And we have a coffee time down there every Saturday. And along with Cindy Diggs, um, we're bringing business to our community. We're bringing a sense of pride. And it has to be us leading the way because this opportunity is a chance of a lifetime. And once again, so I'll, in closing, we're 100% behind this project coming in to a Nubian Square. Owned by people of color that are going to give people an opportunity to work and create, um, wealth for their families. Thank you for the opportunity, everybody, and thank you, Madam Secretary and my partner, Eric Rann, he's right here. Eric Rann, he's with me. So he's hearing everything and we're 100% behind it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And, um, see y'all Saturday, every Saturday from 10 to 2 at Dudley Cafe where we speak about issues like this in our communities. Thank you.
Sorry, calling Brian Sullivan.
Uh, hi, my name is Brian Sullivan. Um, my address is 49 Ellison Ave, Mattapan. You know, and, and so I wanted to echo a lot of what's been said, um, and people have really been on point with, uh, their support of Rooted in Roxbury. You know, anyone's watched the marijuana market and watched how it's been, you know, you see it in Forbes. Zine, you see it in these big VC, you know, venture capital, um, venues. And, you know. Clearly you're being steamrolled. So for someone to stand up and have a community owned, community invested and, you know, community located, uh, dispensary is just, it's vital to, you know. A Roxbury that. Due to its location, needs to deal with the fact that it needs to, you know, become what it's become. So it's to me just something that's community based and community supporting and vital in that aspect. And this is what Roxbury is about. Um, you know, it's, it's putting the money where the mouth is. And in terms of it being innovative and progressive, I mean, we all use those words and this is what it means. So I can't support it enough to see this kind of business come to a community that's going to support other businesses. I mean, in terms of being progressive, you can't get any better than that. So that's basically, you know, in terms of a unique commitment, I can't echo what other people have said enough about, this is innovative. You know, you heard what Brian had to say at the beginning of this. And in terms of, uh, innova.
Thank you, Brian. That is time. We appreciate your, uh, testimony. Please feel free to submit any additional testimony in writing. And with that, that is everyone who requested to testify in the chat. Is there anyone else present who has, uh, not testified previously and would like to testify regarding this application? Seeing no one, as a reminder, the, uh, record will be kept open until Tuesday at 5:00 PM. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
I don't have any follow-up questions.
Chair, uh, Commissioner St. Guillen? Any follow-up questions?
I don't have any follow-up.
Commissioner Holmes?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lombos. All right, thank you. And with that, the board will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Give me one moment to pull up the agenda. Calling 617 Therapeutic Healthcare Inc. The proposed license premise is 144 Boden Street, Dorchester. License type is retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Sunday, 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of the initial application was October 10th, 2018. The date of filing with the Inspection Services Department was October 26th, 2018. The date of the community meeting was February 19th, 2019. The presentation team includes Peter DeAgostino, Kai Young Wong, Tom Chung, Richard Gin and Mark Goldberg. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Madam Secretary, we are.
As a reminder, you will have 10 minutes and Jasmine Nguyen will give you notification at the five minute mark and the eight minute mark.
Thank you.
You can go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Secretary and Madam Chair and Commissioners for the opportunity to present for you today. As the secretary mentioned, I'm joined by Owners Rich Gin, Tom Chung and Mark Goldberg, as well as Counsel Ka Wong. If you could go to the next slide, we're going to cover the main elements of our application. Obviously, there's quite a bit of information that we couldn't cover in 10 minutes. I would encourage the board, uh, at their leisure to review our positive impact plan, which addresses a lot of the, uh, engagement that we're going to do to, within the community that we may not be able to get to in detail today. As I said, the operator's rich gin was born and raised in Boston. He currently lives in Fields Corner, right around the corner from this location. And has for the last six years attended Boston Latin High School. It's, uh, next slide. last six years attended Boston Latin High School. It's next slide, Allison. Also, Steve Chang, who has moved to Boston thirty years ago, is a figure in the Boston Chinese community and currently lives in Milton. Tom Chung also joining us today, moved to Boston when he was eight years old, attended Boston Latin Academy, until he and family moved to Quincy, where they still reside today. So these are all very much a Boston-based group of owners and operators who have spent quite a bit of time in these communities. And Mr. Gin still lives in the community today. Next slide, please. Therapeutic Healthcare also is owned by therapeutic holding companies, as the board knows, and they are involved in opening a marijuana cultivation and marijuana product manufacturing facility in the town of Millis. So we just wanted to kind of disclose that, other interest in cannabis. That entity, or excuse me, that location has already received its host community agreement and special permit from the town of Millis, as well as its provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission. Next slide, please. So this is the location we're talking about, one-four-four Bowden Street. And so this angle isn't great, and I apologize for that. It's the space just to the left of the green awning, where you see the pulled-down security gate where the blue sign is. It's that, it's that location right in the middle. For the folks that are familiar with the area, it's the barber shop next to the Over Twenty-One store. Next slide, please. Getting into our diversity and inclusion plan, I think it's important to note that this company is 100% minority-owned. It's comprised of Asian, Hispanic, and LGBTQ owners. So it's something they're certainly very proud of. The goals relative to our diversity inclusion, really, you know, I could read you the slide, but the summary is that it's really to provide an opportunity to people who want to be into this industry that would maybe otherwise be prevented from doing so. So it's really about reducing the barriers to entry for those individuals. And our goals really speak to that as you read through them. And how, and how we're going to do that really starts, if you would go to the next slide, how we're going to do that is through these different programs. So our employment opportunities, really, we're working with the community groups to advertise these jobs, and specifically Main Streets, Bowden, Geneva Main Streets, a great resource for the company. This company will have approximately ten people per shift, with a total of employees of approximately twenty to thirty, just based on the needs. And we're anticipating approximately ten full-time and ten part-time individuals. Some of the other things we talked about in our Positive Impact Plan that we go into more detail is the career mentorship, and that's really taking people from the community, from the neighborhood, and bringing them into the industry and allowing them to progress throughout the industry because of our other location in Millis. So somebody wants to get into cultivation, manufacturing, wants to grow in the industry, six-one-seven provides that opportunity for them through that mentorship. Also, the career tracks is another element of our Positive Impact Plan, which really talks about advancement of local hires by promoting from within. And we get into more, a little bit more there on the next slide. And then finally, our vendor opportunity program is really about working with local Boston-based vendors. As an example, Guardian Security Advisors is our security team. That's a Boston-based minority and woman-owned business right here in Boston. They'll be handling our security. Joe Harris, former superintendent for the city of Boston, is one of the folks that works at that company as well. And he's helping with our security needs for the neighborhood, of which he worked in as a police officer for many years. If you could go to the next slide. We get into a little bit the measurements for each program, employment opportunities, posting of the jobs, obviously, all the postings within the mayor's office of returning citizens, bus operation exit, so on and so forth. We give a little more detail about how we're going to do the career mentorship. There's very specific metricses here. So after six months of employment, the top 10% of the staff would be considered in the program. After you go beyond that, one year of employment is the top 50%. And then after somebody's been there for two years, anybody would be eligible for the career mentorship program. So it's very much like a vested employee in any other company. Talks about our career track, thank you, ma'am. Talks about the career tracks and the vendor opportunity program, which, beyond just working with local vendors, we also talked about dedicated shelf space for other minority and equity cannabis businesses to host their products in our store. So it gives people that are in other parts of the city an opportunity to be in this part of the city with us. So we think that's important. Next slide, please. Just breaking down the goals maybe more specifically, I'll hit the high notes here. Seventy-five percent Boston residents, forty percent women, seventy-five percent people of color. The company intends to meet or exceed the Boston jobs and living wage ordinance. The minimum wage now is currently set at sixteen dollars an hour, which is just above the, what the ordinance requires. Certainly, health insurance, paid time off, the standard benefits that you would expect to see. And for recruitment of these folks, and specifically for employment of individuals with disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, we'll use the resources of the mayor's office of returning citizens, Mass Hire, Boston's Operation Exit Program, and specifically the Cannabis Control Commission's Social Equity Program participants, which is a great resource for the company. Next slide, please. We've received our letter of non-opposition from our district council, Andrew Campbell. We've also received letters of support from the Cape Verdean Association of Boston, the Bowden, Geneva Main Streets. We've received non-opposition from Meeting House Hill Civic Association, as well as receiving forty-eight signatures of support through a local petition. I think it's important to note to the board, those were direct to butters. So you say, well, forty-eight doesn't seem like a lot, but it is when we're talking about the people who live and work right there at the actual location. And we thought that was an important distinction. Next slide, please. The safety, security, again, I'll hit some highlights. We're going to begin with two security offers. That's the initial plan. Obviously, we're going to meet all the ID requirements, prevention of divergence, so on and so forth, working with our security consultants. Next slide. For the building, we're going to have the appropriate cameras and alarm systems and proper maintenance of all of those assets to ensure that we are protecting not only the building, but the surrounding neighborhood and community. Next slide, please. Probably the most important, thank you, plan for protecting youth from accessing the product. Obviously, that's done through the company policies, which are all listed at the bottom of the slide, as well as strict dispensing protocols. Most importantly, the neighborhood and community engagement and customer education. Next slide, please. Access to public transportation is probably the most significant here. We have three bus routes. The bus stop is directly in front of the location. We're about half a mile, just over half a mile from the subway and a third of a mile from the commuter rail. We are also in the process of negotiating five parking spaces directly across the street from a minority-owned business. All deliveries of product and money will be handled by a third party, which is currently, we're currently working with Guardian to determine who that will be and how that process will go. And then next slide will be the Q and A. I think I'm just under the ten minutes.
Thank you very much.
Don't make it easy. You don't want to make it easy, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. The ID process, is this with a scanner, or are you going to just be visually identifying people that come in?
I think the ID scanner is really kind of becoming best practice, and we would implement the same type of protocol here. I don't want to speak for the whole industry, certainly, but I think a lot of folks are doing it in the same way. And our security consultants are helping us to identify what the right resource, what the right scanning tools are to ensure that we have valid IDs. But you've heard it talked about by other applicants today. I think, you know, the light checking for the supplemental lights, so you can check the hologram, so on and so forth. Those are becoming very much standard practices in the industry, and we would implement the same level of security at our facility.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner St. Giann, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. And I'm not home, and I'm in a public place right now, which is why I'm wearing my mask, but I hope they can hear me. Thanks so much for your, for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions. One about six-one-seven therapeutic holding company. There's, you listed three, three of the owners, and I'm assuming the other owners are disclosed in your application?
Yes, ma'am. The guidance that we got was on, I assume we're talking about the staff memo. The guidance we got was any ownership greater than 10%. So all the other owners are less than 10%, and those were disclosed during our mutual benefit disclosures to the board.
Great. And are they local as well, or are they?
Yes.
The combination. Okay.
All local, all, you know, the greater Boston area, Quincy, Everett, Milton, things like that.
Great, great. Thank you. And in terms of the building, what's the, is it an ownership lease agreement? What's the?
It's a lease agreement.
It's a lease agreement. You have a letter of interest with the, okay, great.
We actually, I think we have a full lease that we submitted to the board.
Yeah, fully. Okay, great. So totally on board with having a cannabis establishment there.
Yes, and the owner also submitted a letter acknowledging that in our packet to the board.
Okay, great.
A separate letter acknowledging that.
Excellent. And then the last one would be, what I've been asking is if people have been in contact with USC W fourteen forty-five or open to a labor peace agreement.
So we learned about them today, and we're glad to know they're out there. We certainly would love to speak to them. And the gentleman, I can save him the time if he wants to privately message me. I'm happy to, you know, initiate the conversation so we can start learning about what they're doing in the industry.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. I just needed a little clarification on vendors selling other merchandise in your, in your establishment. I don't quite understand what that is.
So what that means is, when you look at a retail location, like any retail location, there's only so much shelf space. You can only carry so many products, if you will, whether it be, you know, how much shelf space Budweiser gets or Snickers gets. And so what we proposed in our Positive Impact Plan was to dedicate some of our shelf space specifically for other social equity applicants in the local area. Now, obviously, notwithstanding the half-mile buffer, they may not be very close to us, but other applicants in the city of Boston who maybe have cultivation, product manufacturing, they would be able to sell in our store. So just like any cannabis business, we'll have our own products, but we'll have other people's products. What we've, the distinction that we're making there, Commissioners, we're saying, we're not going to just carry anybody else's products. We're specifically going to try to carry other social equity applicants' products in our store. So it really gives those applicants almost another outlet to sell their products beyond their, beyond their own outlet that they may have.
So, excuse me, is this other marijuana products? Are they?
Yes.
Accessories?
Yes, ma'am. It'd be other cannabis, other cannabis businesses.
Okay, I don't know if I'm naive, but wouldn't that be their circumventing the whole licensing process by selling in your store?
No, any retail, any retail cannabis establishment, they would have cannabis product that they're selling.
Okay.
And so we-
And see, I'm not very first thought.
That's okay. Yeah, no. So, so we would certainly sell our own products there through our Millis cultivation, but like any retailer, whether it be in Boston or anywhere else, they would have-
Oh, okay. I understand now. I'm sorry. I understand. You have your own grower, growing facility, but you would use somebody else's and sell it in your store?
Correct. And specifically, oh, everybody's going to use somebody else's, right? You're going to carry an array of products, if you will. What six-one-seven's doing, maybe a little bit differently, is we're dedicating some of that other products and holding it specifically for our fellow social equity applicants throughout the city.
Okay, I understand. I'm sorry. I misunderstood it, but I understand now. Okay.
I appreciate the question.
Commissioner, I had the same questions too. Commissioner Lombos had the same question too.
I'm sorry. Ten minutes is quick. Ten minutes is quick. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. Are you extending all your, in terms of your diversity plan and employment plan, that's, is that the same for also, same thing in Millis?
It is. Yes, it is. And so, Commissioner, in our Positive Impact Plan, we go into much more detail than certainly we were able to during tonight's presentation. But the, really, the short version is that we understand the barriers to entry in this industry for many folks in and around specifically the Bowden, Geneva neighborhood. And so it's our hope that those folks will come and work in this business because we're close to them. And for people that want to stay and grow in this industry, it's just another avenue to promote them within the industry so they can learn from us. They may go to our Millis location to continue to, you know, learn about cultivation or product manufacturing. So it really is a company-wide initiative that encapsulates the absolute idea that they don't just stay at the store in Dorchester, but they can actually go beyond that and do many more things in the industry. And, you know, to the extent that they could then learn from that and do it themselves later in life. So yes, it absolutely includes all the resources the company has. It's not limited just to that store.
That's sort of the underlying plan for what you call your mentorship program?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Whereas, and learn the business, and how are you incentivizing that?
So in our plan, what we lay out is that people will get biannual reviews to kind of determine what their interest level is in doing that and what our ability to meet their interests are. So the first step is really those biannual reviews, say, hey, where, where is everybody, you know, the employee in the company? And then if you look back, and I apologize, I don't have the slide in front of me, I will pull it up quickly. The metrics that we put around that is that in the first six months of employment, 10%, the top 10% of the employees would be entered into the mentorship program, excuse me. It's on slide eight, Commissioner. So in the first six months, it's the top 10% of the staff would be entered into the career mentorship. After one year of employment, our goal would be to get 50% of the staff involved in the mentorship program. And then after the two-year anniversary of somebody working there, anybody that's at the company for two years or greater would have, 100% of those people would be in some level of the mentorship program. So those are the metricses we put around measuring success. Are we getting that level of participation? So that's the hope.
You're also right on that corner where Walgreens gets closed down, right?
Yes, sir. Correct. We couldn't afford Walgreens.
You lost a lot of traffic.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And a question from Commissioner Lombos. Could you please clarify the proposed ten full-time employees and ten part-time? What's the thinking behind that? Is there a reason that it wasn't fifteen full-time, you know, given the fact that full-time usually comes with benefits?
Maybe we should be more thoughtful about it. I think we, when we thought of the ten and ten split, was just based on availability of people. So if we could get fifteen full-time employees, and that was enough to meet the needs of the company based on shifts, that would certainly be possible. I think why we thought ten full-time, it's a mix of jobs, right? So we have some people working on the floor. We have some people working in the back of the business. We have security folks, so on and so forth. But you end up somewhere, given the size of the store, about ten to twelve employees per shift. So if you went to twenty full-time employees, that would have us potentially over what our actual demand would be. So certainly, as many full-time employees as we could reasonably hire, we just thought the ten-ten split would probably be more realistic as to how it would work out.
And Commissioner Lombos will let me know if she has any follow-up questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
With that, we are going to move to public testimony. As a reminder, you will be limited to two minutes and limited to the application at hand. When I call you, please unmute yourselves and state your full name, if you've not already provided it, your address, and your affiliation, if any. We will begin with elected officials and their representatives. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify?
Ladies, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, my name is Chantel Palima-Barboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor held a community process for this proposal back in February nineteen of two thousand and nineteen. While the applicant received some support from the community, there are significant concerns in regards to the location and parking, which is detailed further in the Greater Bowden, Geneva Neighborhood Association's letter. I also want to make note that the applicant did not go back to Greater Bowden, Geneva Neighborhood Association to address such concerns. So the mayor's office strongly recommends that the applicant does a better job addressing these concerns and keeping the communication lines open. Thank you.
Chantel, so does the, does your office have a position one way or another, or they would like them to continue to work with you?
We would like to refer to the board and make sure that the applicant continues to work with the community to address the concerns moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or individuals representing elected officials who wish to testify? Seeing none, we will turn to the general public. Seeing none, we will turn to the general public testimony. As a reminder, please use the chat function to state your name and address if you wish to testify. Questions or testimony put into the chat will not be considered. Calling Jonathan Martins.
Hello. Short and sweet this time. Jonathan Martins, 179 Pleasant Street, Attleboro, from Local UFCW 1445. I sent over my information, and once we get talking, our support will come, hopefully. Dale signed an LPA. We'll see what happens. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the chat. Is there anyone else present who wishes to testify regarding this application?
Yes, I would.
Please state your name, your address, and affiliation, if any, sir.
I'm Anthony Richardson. I own the two properties behind the Walgreens. And my concern is the parking. My concern is the security. And my concern is the cleanliness as well. So I want to know, like, the last time we did meet at the Holland School, none of that stuff was addressed.
Okay, so are you, just to be clear for the record, are you speaking in opposition? Or are you stating you simply would like to continue working with the applicant to get clarity on these issues?
Right. I just want to learn, I want to know more information about it because I just found out about it just today, about the Zoom meeting. I had no letters sent to the house or anything like that, any information at all. So I just jumped on just like the last 10 minutes. So like, there was no notification to anybody in these neighborhoods at all, on Blakeville Street as well.
Okay, and if you want to put your contact information in the chat, we will make sure that you're connected to the applicant. Again, the record remains open until Tuesday, the 17th at 5:00 p.m., so we will continue working with you. All right. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify regarding this application?
I would.
Please state your full name, address, and affiliation, if any.
Tanya Anderson, and I am the Executive Director for Bowdoin, Geneva Main Streets. We, so the board, we did hear a presentation a while ago, and we, the board voted, and we gave them a lot of support because we thought it was a great idea, great thoughts, great, great idea, great presentation. However, there has been zero follow-up. So the statement that they've been working with Bowdoin, Geneva Main Streets, that is absolutely inaccurate. I would love to understand the community benefits, the mentorship, the job opportunity or career opportunities. I would love to understand that better. I have not seen it other than the more brief presentation that they presented to the board. But we have not discussed this in length. We don't understand how it's going to benefit anyone in the community yet.
Tanya, this board doesn't take into consideration community benefits at all. I would suggest that this team reaches out to you tomorrow to continue those conversations. It's not enough purview to consider things like community benefits?
I think, I think two concerns. So the other part of what I said was that they stated specifically that they were working with me for, in terms of career or mentorship or any of those job opportunities, and they're not. That's inaccurate.
Okay. I was just going to suggest, again, like, I think in everyone's interest that Pete's team connects with, you know, your group. And I actually, if there's no, I don't know if there's anyone else, I have a follow-up question based on Tanya's question after people in the public finish testifying.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify regarding this matter? Oh, I'm sorry. We just had someone in the chat. No, I'm sorry, Anthony Richardson, that was, you just put that in. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify regarding this matter? We'll now return to questions and comments from each of the Chairwoman and the Commissioners. Chairwoman Joyce?
Mr. D'Agostino, just quickly, or, you know, within, in a couple, in a minute, could you tell us what you are doing about the parking situation?
Yeah, so thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll be as brief as I can. We are currently in negotiations with a company that is directly across the street from the Bowdoin, Geneva intersection for five parking spaces. As you know from our application date, we've been holding this property for over two years now. So we have not formally entered into an agreement with them, as you can imagine, given the cost. But that was in direct response to the neighbors' concerns around parking. This area is highly transient. As you know, there's a high level of public transportation here. So, but in direct response to the neighbors' concerns, that was the initiative we undertook, was to try to secure at least five off-street parking spaces. And that effort's ongoing. I assume if we were to move forward with the license, that would facilitate us being able to finalize that. And then to the Bowdoin, Geneva Main Streets, I will say that we will follow up with them directly tomorrow just to address that for the board. They were instrumental and have seen our positive impact plan, which has not changed since we last presented it to them, and it's the same plan that we presented to the board. However, as you know, we have, this process in Boston has gone on for some time. So we certainly owe them a follow-up, and we will certainly do that tomorrow to ensure that they have the most current information. But just for clarity, maybe for the purposes of the public record, what we presented to them some time ago has not changed from what we presented to the board in our detailed seminar.
And it is true. The process was moving forward under the Office of Emerging Industries. And then when the City Council issued their ordinance, there was a period of time when there wasn't a lot of movement on these applications in the city. And that's why this board is really trying to get through that backlog as quickly as possible. So I don't want to speak to the applicant or for the community group, but that could be one reason why there has been this lapse in communication. But it sounds like the applicant is willing to continue conversations with them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
I do not. Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes?
No, no, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos has requested that the applicant submit supplemental information to describe how you're addressing the community concerns in addition to continuing your conversations with them.
We will certainly get that over to you.
All right. As a reminder, the record is kept open until Tuesday, the 17th at 5:00 p.m. The board will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you again, everybody. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and Secretary. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. Now move to the two items that are being considered on reconsideration. If you just give me a moment to pull this up, please note that each of the applicants on reconsideration will be given eight minutes to make a presentation. There will then be questions from the Chairwoman and the Commissioners. It's important to note that public testimony will not be taken at this hearing. Individuals are able to submit testimony in writing leading up to the deadline that we've already discussed, but we will not be opening this back up this evening for additional public testimony. Calling Suns Mask Inc. has requested reconsideration for its application for a co-located recreational cannabis dispensary, medical dispensary, and manufacturing license to be exercised at 931 Hyde Park Avenue in Hyde Park. The applicant is a non-equity applicant. There is also a buffer zone conflict with an existing cannabis establishment. And the applicant has submitted the requisite buffer zone statement pursuant to the board's rules and regulations. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am secretary. Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Ross again. And just a second, just to say thank you very much. I recognize what a long day this is for you, for staff, for members of the commission, and just thank you. I'm sorry to be adding to it, and thank you for your service.
And that's why, Counselor, we do hold everyone to their time, so I hope you understand it. We're not trying to be disrespectful. We're trying to let everyone have an opportunity to testify.
I do. I totally do. But seriously, it's a long day for all of you, so thank you. So I'm Mike Ross, and I'm going to deliver.
Before we begin, I just want, if Jasmine Nguyen could give you notification at the four-minute mark and at the seven-minute mark, please.
Okay. So I'm going to give the presentation because we only have eight minutes, and the company's asked me, given the time, we have to do so. So to begin, I want to say that Suns Mask and its parent company, Harvest, has heard the board. We listened to your comments, and we made changes to our plan that reflect those comments. One of the biggest changes we made is that we will be partnering with the union, UFCW Local 1445. We believe that this partnership will make Suns Mask a model for Boston. The plan is to do something completely unique at this site, to take a building that previously housed a manufacturing company that has since closed and create 100 new high-paying union jobs by bringing medical, retail, and product manufacturing to this cannabis establishment in Hyde Park. The next slide, please. Suns Mask will now partner with, and just, yeah, next slide, if you might.
Just give me one moment.
Okay, sure. Okay, great. So Suns Mask will now partner with UFCW 1445 to operate this facility. Its team will include Hyde Park resident Larry Mays, who you met in September, who also has an ownership interest in the company. In addition, Suns Mask is provisionally licensed for cultivation, for growing, in Deerfield, Mass. And an affiliated entity is licensed in Worcester. It's worth mentioning that the parent company, Harvest, has a board of directors that is comprised of 50% Black or Latina individuals, and women comprise 50% of the executive management positions. The company has 39 dispensaries and 12 cultivation and processing facilities across seven states. It has never received a penalty or fine at any of those locations, and they've never had a license suspended or placed on probation at any of those locations. Next slide, please. In terms of diversity and inclusion goals, together with the union, Suns Mask will seek to meet or be the rates of the other approved applicants, namely, a minimum of 75% Boston residents, 60% people of color, and 50% women. In addition, they will ensure that their contractors exceed 50% of MWBE businesses. And they will partner with the union and others to meet their goals of hiring LGBTQ+ disabled and immigrant populations. Next slide, please. The programs Suns Mask will rely on to meet or to exceed its goals will be through its partners, UFCW, Justice Resource Institute, Union of Minority Neighborhoods, and other groups, as well as Harvest's existing infrastructure to train and promote employees. To meet or exceed its contract, excuse me, contracting goals, most significantly, it will now hire Janey Construction to build out the Hyde Park facility. And this will clearly represent its most significant spend item. Janey Construction is a minority-owned business enterprise. Next slide, please. To ensure that the company is hitting the goals that it is committing to, it will make quarterly updates to the board. And if for some unlikely reason that it falls below these goals, it will now pay $1,000 per percentage point it is off towards a relevant nonprofit working in this space. Next slide, please.
Four-minute warning.
When Suns Mask's employment plan is viewed across all other applicants that have been approved by the board, as shown here in orange, it is competitive. Thanks to the feedback from the board, it is now substantially leading in the area of hourly wage at $1,850 minimum per hour. The benefits include full Blue Cross Blue Shield, insurance, vision, dental, 401K, stock options, and pension after vesting. In addition, it will look to the union and to other partners to hit a new goal of ensuring that 5% of its employees have previously had a drug arrest or conviction. Next slide, please. Again, the plan is to work with the union and partners to ensure that the company meets or exceeds the hiring goals just mentioned. In addition, there will be onsite multilingual job fairs and advertisement for employment in newspapers that reach these target populations. The company has long practiced a feedback loop to get anonymous input from its employees, and will continue to do so here. Also, as mentioned, the company is pleased to have entered into an LPA, Labor Peace Agreement, with UFCW 1445, and looks forward to working with them. Next slide, please. Worth mentioning, we've received over 249 letters of support, many from long-term residents of Hyde Park, and have a letter of non-opposition from Counselor Roy. Next slide, please. And we've also have the support of the Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance regarding the proposed medical dispensary. Cannabis patients heavily rely on access to medical dispensaries for lower costs and certain products that are only available to patients and not to the general adult population. This map shows the number of medical licenses that have been approved to date in Boston.
Two-minute warning.
It is important to continue to permit medical alongside adult use. You can see it in this map. There's only 25% or just below, and Suns Mask will offer both. Next slide, please. Suns Mask has engaged Kroll Security, a plan of which has been submitted ahead of this to the board. Kroll's managing partner in Boston is former BPD Superintendent Chief Dan Linsky, a lifelong resident of Hyde Park. Next slide, please. Access to the site by public transit is robust, and in fact, directly in front of the building is an MBTA bus stop. Next slide, please. There is an abundance of riches when it comes to off-street parking with 34 spaces, as well as off-street loading. In the event that they need it, the company is prepared to have its employees park in nearby ancillary lots. Next slide, please. The intent of the 3,000-square-foot community space at the front of the building was to create a different front door to the neighborhood. It will be an ideal location for the union to hold its trainings, apprenticeship programs, and job fairs. Suns Mask has committed to make it available for appropriate community uses. Again, we thank the board for its comments. We believe that this is a stronger application because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't. I want to say thank you very much for your presentation tonight and for your written materials. They were very helpful.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner St. Jean, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions. Just thank you for taking the time to update the application and really listening to what the Commissioner's concerns were. Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes?
No questions.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for addressing the specific concerns we had. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Lombos also thanks you and says that this is a stronger application.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That the board will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much. Calling Dragon Vapors LLC has requested reconsideration for its application for a recreational cannabis retail dispenser license to be exercised at 354 to 358 Chestnut Hill Avenue in Alston Brighton. The applicant is a non-equity applicant. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Good evening.
Right. And as stated regarding the previous application, as the same, you will be given eight minutes. Public testimony will not be taken this evening. And Ms. Jasmine Nguyen in this office will advise when you have four minutes and the seven-minute mark.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and the Cannabis Board. Thank you again for taking time to hear our application. My name is Jonathan Lau, and I represent the Plug and Dragon Vapors LLC. My parents are immigrants from Hong Kong and China. I reside less than one mile from the proposed location for the last 35 years. As a young child, I would go to Pinot's Pizza for slices weekly. I still go there to this day. I started the vape shop to help adults live a happier and healthier life. I have over six years of experience with 21-plus products, and have had no violations at any of my two locations within the college zones. I had one location in Oak Square and then the Cleveland Circle location. Because we are in a college area, we have always been very, very strict on checking IDs. Our mission at the Plug is to offer a safe and friendly place where adults can access recreational marijuana. I believe that diversity and equity starts with 100% minority ownership. I'll turn things over to my attorney, Christopher Ray.
Thanks, John. If we could go ahead to slide number four. So I want to thank the board for agreeing to re-
Thanks, John. If we could go ahead to slide number four. So I want to thank the board for agreeing to rehear our application. I'm going to go through some of this material again, but I want to call particular attention to some of the items that we have updated and changed in response to the feedback that we've received from the board and from the community. So to briefly recap this location, Mr. Lau's store is located sort of at the nexus of three different Green Line MBTA stops, all ADA accessible. There are a couple of hundred on-street parking spaces that we intend to make use of for our space, and the space itself is ADA compliant. That has long been a mission of the vape shop. Now, you know, one of the pieces that we heard from this board and from the public are concerns about lines forming outside the store, about foot traffic, that kind of thing. So one of the pieces that we've added to our application, that you'll see referenced in our materials, is we have entered into an agreement with a service called Flow Hub, which is a well-prudentialized service that allows for online order ahead and in-store pickup for cannabis products, which we will be using exclusively during the tendency of the COVID-19 crisis. And going forward after that, that will be our preferred means of making sales to any customers. Next slide, please. So in our first presentation, you know, you heard a little bit about our community support. The petition that we have with over 800 signatures from neighbors and members of the community. We've highlighted on this map here, direct neighbors and abutters of Mr. Lau, business owners, community leaders, who have written to this board and to the mayor's office in support. We also have a letter of non-opposition from Counselor Braden's office. And, you know, that is one piece that we've added that I want to call your attention to, is we have since finally gotten into an agreement with our community partner, the Boston Chinese Freemasons Association, whose athletic club is going to be the beneficiary of 3% of the profits of the vape shop. You know, we feel that that was a piece that was in negotiation at the time of our first presentation, which we're now proud to say is a formal agreement in place between us and them. So just wanted to call your attention to that. So if you could go to the next slide, you know, one piece of this that was the theme of our first presentation that continues to be the case is that Mr. Lau's operation is self-funded. He is the sole investor. He is the sole entry on the cap table of the company. There is no outside funding with this sole exception. And I wanted to call your attention to it. The Town of Brookline has set aside a racial equity fund, much along the lines of how the city of Boston has set aside certain funds for the development of minority-owned businesses. Mr. Lau has been told that he is eligible for this equity development fund, which I understand is going to be a warrant article to be decided sometime next week, I believe. And that really is the sole source of outside funding, Mr. Lau and Joyce.
Four-minute warning.
Thank you. And we believe that this, this really showcases the support that he has from his, his community. And the reason that he's earned the support is because, as he said, he is a son of Brookline. You know, he, he's earned the trust and support of his neighbor and his community. And one of the other pieces that we've added is we've retained the services of an outside security consultant, who I'd like to turn it over to now. If you could please jump ahead to slide, slide number nine, and I'll turn it over to Aday to talk a little bit about his experience and what he's doing with the location.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. First, I would like to recognize all members of the board and the project manager, Sister Jasmine, for your time and patience. It's been a long day. My name is Adenie Genesi. I'm originally from Nigeria, but I'm a proud Brookline resident now. I'm the president of the Brookline Village Diversity Club. I'm also the CEO of Candice Beast Consulting. Retired from the Nigerian Air Force, Senior First Officer, and I've been in security operations for 12 years. And I'm currently the Ed Security Leader at Century Medical, the flagship dispensary located in Brookline. I lead a staff of aid security associates, and I implemented, and I'm responsible for the daily logistical operation from a security perspective. ID checks, inventory delivery, theft and diversion, fire and medical protocols, all in accordance with the State and CCC Regulation. I'm also an experienced Aviator, certified as an FAA commercial airplane pilot, helicopters, and drones. As a minority business owner, it's an honor to work with another local minority business owner. The growth of cannabis industry offers us huge opportunities. Now, in reference to the Plug Dispensary for security operations, all in accordance with the SCC regulations for marijuana establishments, we'll be running a minimum of 25 stamp recording cameras.
Two-minute warning.
Thank you. 24/7/365 leaving of blind spots inside and outside the building. And during busy times, we'll be using a new innovative security method as a certified FAA drone pilot in launching drones for Overwatch, just to monitor things like consumptions, diversion, and any suspicious activities. Footage will be kept for 90 days as per regulation. And for outside, we'll be placing visible, no consumption, loitering, or public urinations. We've had issues with dispensaries like NADA in the Brookline community. To be placed outside the building, as well as inside the building, so our employees will be trained on what to do in the event of theft or diversion of products by customers, like filing the mandatory reports with the necessary authorities and CCC, as well as preventive protocols put in place, like informing the detailed police officer we'll have on site about any occurrences. Also integrated in our security protocol is a little bit of community engagement where we have the security every hour, do a rotation just to pick up the trash around the premises. We'll be running a three-ID checkpoint, using the ID scan, which is tied to flow up using a software, the NUG, confirming reservation from outside at the first security checkpoint before they get in the building, at the lobby, and also at the POS agent. Using the reserve ahead will make us avoid lines, and also we'll be having key program doors to restrict access all across the building. The front side of the building will be covered with three meters, frost-shielding windows and the door to restrict visual access from outside. So nobody from the street can tell what is going on inside. And every six months, we'll be running recurrent training on the CCC and state regulations to update our security protocols and employees in order to keep current with the regulations. And also, one way to add, to tackle our parking issues, just to inform customers.
That is your time, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Mr. Lau, for the IDing of your customers that are coming in person, I guess, and also, I'm not sure how you do it online, but I think the app probably deals with that. Because of your location and the proximity to Boston College, would you be willing to commit only having a photo ID as a backup?
Yeah, of course. Um, as of right now, operating a 21-plus establishment right now, so close to the vicinity, and I have been for the last five or six years, I have been very, very strict. We have a big problem in any kind of college area with fake IDs. You could go online as a minor and order fake IDs. They probably cost $35. You wait two weeks. I've, I've become an expert at, at telling which ones are real, which ones. Anything that I see that's even iffy, I require another picture ID. And that picture ID has to have another requirement, which is the birth date on there. If they just give me a school ID with no birthday, that doesn't, that doesn't really do me any good. So we are, we will definitely abide by a photo ID requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Just to chime in a little bit more on that, with us using the NUG, which is, is a ID scanner and checker that also keeps it on file, deterrent for ID, fake IDs, but on the side, I've, even before I apply for the marijuana license, another way of using, you can use a blacklight to also check for ID holograms. A lot of the newer holograms that they print out with the laser printers cannot, cannot mimic the kind of holograms that, for instance, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts uses. So we will combine the ID scanner along with a blacklight ID checker, just to make sure that no, that there's no, that there's no minors getting in and no one, everyone's saying who they say they are. That's the only way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Sankey, and do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have any follow-up questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Not so much a question, maybe just a suggestion. I know in his security plan, he said that they would, you know, they would have higher security on holidays and busy days. But I would impress on you to have at least one security guard there at all times. I think you should. I don't think just holidays and high-traffic days is sufficient, particularly with the neighborhood, you know, right near BC and, and all that.
Um, I, I think Alex can probably chime in on, on the security, but my understanding when I was consulting with Alex with the security was that there would be at least two personnel on the floor, one and one outside, and also one would be downstairs in the security room viewing the live footage.
Awesome.
There must have been, there might have been some misunderstanding there. On, on holidays, the floor would probably be beefed up to four or five security persons on the floor.
Got you. Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I'm good at this time.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lombos has stated she does not have any questions either, so the board will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners, for hanging in there with us. And this concludes today's hearing before the Cannabis Board for the City of Boston.
Thank you for everyone's time. Have a wonderful.
Thank you.
Excellent.